We will start with the pledge, so join me, please stand. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We are meeting together but broadcasting remotely this morning and welcome all those who are participating by watching through YouTube. As a reminder, we welcome public comment and have provided a mechanism for you to make public comment by leaving voice messages to be played to the board and the public during our broadcast. If you wish to speak at a future meeting, please go to our public participation page on www.lbschools.net, which will give you more information about how to give public comment. As a reminder, in conformance with the Brown Act, when we hear testimony on an item that is not listed on the agenda, a full discussion of that topic would have to be delayed until such time as the item can be publicly posted in advance as a regular agenda item. On the agenda, we have public testimony for items both listed and not listed on the agenda, but we have none, is what I'm understanding. So we will go right to student data and what we know about student progress.
Thank you, Mrs. Craygood. So actually, I'm going to start us off this morning with a little introduction and a framing of these couple of days, and then I will turn over to Mr. Brown for the data presentation. So I want to start just by framing the day around excellence and equity in our work across the district. Tremendous work has gone into thinking about today's and tomorrow's workshop sessions as a means of teaching, as a means of discussing and thinking about both the current work of our district as well as that that we aspire to do in the years to come. And so in thinking about excellence and equity, our thinking is to always think about these two things together. So you're going to hear presentations in the next day and a half that are around excellence, the standards of excellence in classrooms, the standards of excellence in business practices, combined, always combined, that ampersand, with equity and how we're approaching things for students in a differentiated manner and how we're thinking about our work across the district in terms of differentiated approaches. So excellence and equity, together, they mean a lot to us. And I want to remind everybody of this aspirational definition of equity in Long Beach Unified. Much time was spent over the last year thinking about how we want to define equity in Long Beach. The term equity is not new to us. It's something that we have worked very hard to close achievement gaps, to change the opportunities that exist for students across the district. And so that led us to a place of being ready to redefine, in an aspirational way, what we mean by equity in Long Beach Unified School District. And I'm just gonna, I'm gonna take a moment. I'm just gonna read this for us. So we center ourselves around this definition and then tell you a couple other things about it. So equity defined in LBSD. Equity is our moral imperative to create a student-centered and anti-racist school experience that guarantees academic achievement, student agency, advancement, and a sense of belonging for all. We achieve this imperative by eliminating individual and institutionally biased or racist practices. Diversity, including race, culture, ethnicity, gender, gender identity and/or expression, sexual orientation, socioeconomic status, religion, ability level, age, citizen status, language, and an openness to other identifiers is viewed as an asset to a dynamic learning experience. Our work is driven by consideration of those who are being left out in traditional school practices and operations. With all students in mind, we uplift groups of students that have been historically marginalized. We amplify the voices of our students and embrace our community as true partners in education. The results create academic, social, and emotional growth. And I start with that because that is the most important thing to us. We center our students and we think about what equity, what we aspire to have equity mean in Long Beach Unified. So we are aiming to move from a definition to places that represent this definition in all that we do. This definition has been critical. It is part of the work of the equity leadership teams. It is part of the policy that will be proposed to you by the equity leadership team and participants. That includes stakeholders from our community and students and staff who have been working with Dr. Brown over the last eight months. And then you have a document on your desk that represents our initiatives related to excellence and equity this year. And so this is a colorful graphic of those initiatives. And many of them, actually, almost all of them, between today and tomorrow evening, you're going to hear something about. They are initiatives that represent every different aspect, every department, every aspect of our work in the district. They do not live in one place. They live in every single thing that we do in the district. There is a shared responsibility and an empowerment of departments and leaders and teachers to live out the work of excellence and equity. And so this document, which is also available on our website, translated into English, or in English, translated into Spanish and Kumai as well, is a one-pager that you have. This is just supposed to be an image. Obviously, you can't read this, but it describes in particular the connection to my superintendent goals and then the overarching goal of that initiative, the lead department, and then things that we are really looking at as one-year markers to success in the areas that are described. And so over the course of this day and a half, you're going to hear about student voice and participation. You're going to hear about support and supervision of principals. You'll hear about social-emotional learning, community engagement, curriculum and professional development, budget engagement, workforce diversity and human resource practices, and metrics and opportunity gaps. And so I'll just encourage you to leave this front and center for you so that when you're starting to formulate, what is this work? How is it actually operationalized in the district? You're gonna get a lot of information about how things are operationalized in Long Beach Unified to center both excellence and equity together. And I'm hopeful that that will help to frame up the way we're thinking about these days. And also just to acknowledge, this is an extraordinary time. This is a time that our staff, and I mean every person in Long Beach Unified School District, has worked harder than ever, has had to deal with things that they never even could have imagined a year ago. And so as we come on this side of what I've called the arc of the pandemic with so much hope about what's to come, I just want you to think about that juxtaposition between managing what's happening right now, being good decision-makers, good caretakers of our children and our adults, but also at the same time, incredible work has gone on that I'm very proud of, led by every person in this room, in their teams and in their divisions, to think about the future and what the future of this district will be post-pandemic. And so I offer that to you as kind of a framing of the day and just to center the importance of this. You'll hear things about right now, but keep pulling back and thinking about what that means for the future of our district. And so I'll take any questions that you'd like to ask before I leave the podium because you won't see me back up here for a while. Anything you want to ask or anything that you'd like to just offer related to that perspective that you want colleagues to be thinking about or us to be thinking about, open it up to the board. Ready to go? All right, so our first presentation, I'm pleased to welcome Mr. Chris Brown, Assistant Superintendent of the Research Office, to take you on a journey around students' experiences. And as he's coming up, I'll also share that today is structured around academics and teaching and learning, and that's our day will be spent in that space. And tomorrow, business practices and the business of the district. In this presentation, in the next few hours, we'll be joined by multiple leaders from the room, Dr. Simon. We will have principals and others joining us for presentations. And so I'm super proud of the work that you will get to see today and look forward to hearing your perspective and engaging with us.
Morning, everybody. Nothing like starting two days with a really dense packet of data slides to look at to really give us a focus to start our work. We do have a lot of data to go over. We're gonna center our work around our students today and really getting a snapshot of their progress so far for the year. But before I start, I'd really like to take a moment just to thank the research team. They worked really hard to sift through what would have been 400 slides of data and trying to get down to, you know, the 40 slides that are illustrative of the kinds of things that we're looking at to be able to provide information for our sites, the kinds of data that we're looking at as indicators of what our students are accomplishing this year. So specifically, Hamina Lalani and Jody Fender in the Research Office worked for the last couple of weeks to really pull the data together, to spend a lot of time back checking to make sure that the data was accurate and that we were sharing the most up-to-date information that we had moving forward. So as we start this year, I am gonna focus a little bit on the change between last year and this year in terms of data metrics, but that's not really how I want to frame the presentation moving forward. It's really looking at the academic experience of students in 2021 and specifically at the first semester and up until the first week of March. And so we're not gonna use terms like learning loss because that's not really what this is about. This is about the current experience and how do we find out where our students' needs are now so that as they come back to school, we can provide the support they need to grow? And as we really move into the next year, knowing what our student interventions should be, knowing how our teachers can best support our students, really helps our teachers build those relationships, right? Knowing student needs makes that warm demand or action a lot easier for teachers. So we really want to give them a good snapshot of what their students are coming with and what their students need support in before they get to them. And so that's the lens I want you to think of as we go through data. Because we're gonna show you exactly what's going on right now, but think about, so what does this mean for moving forward? What does this mean for supporting our staff? And we'll start big and then we'll move small, right? So we'll start with aggregated measures, things that are more traditional metrics of student progress through a year, things that end up in the newspapers, things that end up on the California dashboards, those types of things. And then we'll get into more granular pieces of data moving forward. And so we'll save some time for questions at the end. And believe me, there's far more data than I gave you in the slides. And some of the slides I'm gonna skip through pretty quickly. They're just there for your reference. So if you have specific questions, we'll get to them moving forward. So the first one, we're gonna start with high school. We're gonna look at on-track for graduation and on-track for A through G. And just as a point of reference, those two things are different. Remember, graduation is just the California or the Long Beach Unified requirements to earn a high school diploma, whereas A through G are the course sequences required to be qualified to attend a Cal State or University of California school after graduation. And so when we look across the years, we see that there is, as expected, a what I'm gonna call COVID impact on our student progress. But you'll see, one of the themes that I'm gonna talk about a lot today is it's not equitably distributed. Every person, every student is not experiencing that impact the same. For example, if you look right now, our seniors are actually 1% ahead of A through G than they were at this exact point last year. So this is data from March 13th of last year versus March 10th of this year, right? So we're not talking about where they ended in June. We're talking about where they were last year versus where they are this year. So seniors are actually a little ahead. Conversely, our freshmen are a little more off-track than they were last year. So again, that helps us understand that as we work with our freshmen coming back, there's some work to do on getting them on track for A through G. The benefit there, of course, is we have some time with our freshmen, right? They're not leaving us right away, so we can support them and get them back to where they need to be. And of course, we can break this data down other ways, right? We can look at it by special populations. We can look at it by race and ethnicity. We can slice it a lot of ways, and you'll see throughout the presentation day that I sliced the data differently at different times, again, just to be illustrative of the way we're looking at it, not necessarily to show every possible way that we actually have available to the board at the moment. So again, same deal. This is March 13th last year, the day we went to remote learning versus March 10th of this year was when we did these data, these most accurate data polls. And you'll see that for grad rate, it's a pretty consistent between 4% and 9% gap from last year to this year across the group. Some groups a little more, some groups a little less, but it's not wildly different across groups. And for meeting A through G, it's also about 4% to 9%. And that's actually pretty positive because A through G is our more rigorous course sequence than graduation. It requires extra science courses. It requires language courses, things like that. So the fact that the decline is about the same is actually a positive and shows the hard work that our high schools have been doing to keep their students moving forward during this time in remote learning. And again, like I said, we'll break it down differently through the different metrics, but we could do the same thing with special populations. And you'll see that when we look at our special populations, like ELs, Gate students or homeless and foster students or low SES students or special education students, it's about a 6% to 10% drop depending on the group for graduation, on-track to graduate. And again, that doesn't mean these kids won't graduate. Many, most of these students will graduate. It just means that there's some intervention to be done moving through the spring to make sure we get them there. And then same with A through G, it's a 4% to 9% decline. And we really are actually pretty pleased that the trend is the same for across the groups. It's about a 4% to 9% decline. It's not, you know, you're not seeing 2% and 20% somewhere. And it's the same across your special populations, across your ethnic subgroups, et cetera. So that was high school aggregate measures, and we'll get back to other high school measures in a minute. But if you move into middle school K, one of the big aggregate measures that we use is high school readiness, right? So if we think about A through G as college readiness, right? Then we have to have a way of looking at students, are you high school ready? So high school readiness is our aggregate measure for MSK. And it's a little different this year in COVID. Attendance is a big part of that, and attendance has been removed from that calculation this year because it's not, it's not a factor that, you know, there was a lot of control over at the schools. And actually, attendance hasn't been hugely impactful on high school readiness anyways this year. We ran it both ways. But here you'll see that the change from last year is a little bit different than it was in the high school level, right? So we're running between about a 14% to 19% gap from last year to this year in high school readiness. Now, that's across all grade levels. You'll see that some grade levels are a little bigger gap than others. And actually, again, like the seniors that were not, the eighth grade is actually the smallest gap, which is good because they're the ones who are about to go to high school. But it does have some implications for what we think about in terms of, what are we gonna design next year for incoming ninth graders to make sure that we help them, knowing that there was a few more of them who are gonna come into our high schools not necessarily meeting that high school readiness benchmark that we set as a district? So we know the ninth graders are gonna come that way, so we can take action to intervene during the summer, provide enrichment, provide extensions, and then through the fall of next year to get them on track, right? It's not a reason to panic. It's just a thing to be aware of so that we can make sure we plan accordingly. Again, when you do the special subgroups for high school readiness and middle school, again, this was March last year to March this year again, so trying to make sure we're comparing apples to apples in terms of timeline. It's about 16% to 23% depending on the groups. And I'm sure that, you know, we can talk more about these as we move forward. But so now, as we think about, okay, our eighth grader's coming in, we need to make interventions. And if we know it's an eighth grade student who happens to be an EL or ARFAB student, we really have to make sure that we're aware of that and we hit the ground running with identifying those students and designing interventions for them and getting them extended so that, you know, they can catch up right away. So that's the kind of forward-thinking planning of that. And really, the plan would be to help teachers know who those students are in their classes, who are coming to them, that need that extra support, right? So we think about, there's a lot of work that's going to need to be done around relationship building and re-establishing that face-to-face connection with teachers and students. And so helping our teachers understand what exactly each student is needing in their classroom will help support that, which we know, research has shown across the nation, that the stronger that relationship gets built earlier, the more growth the student's gonna show through the year anyways, right? So we want to make sure we focus on getting that relationship growth with our teachers. But we asked a question. We said, so high school readiness is an aggregate metric. It covers a lot of things. So the question that was asked in my office was, what thing, what indicator is actually most impacting high school readiness? You know, because we took attendance out. And so what's still in there is things like discipline, GPA, grade in English, grade in math. And so we looked at it, and it's actually, if you look, GPA, that's the biggest impact as opposed to, say, math grade or ELA grade. So that tells us that it's, you know, a DF rate or students who are getting more Cs than normal, right? And we'll talk about DF and we'll talk about grades towards the middle end of the presentation. But this, again, gives us that little extra insight. It's not just general high school readiness that we have to focus on, right? It's student grades that seem to be the one that's the biggest impact. So that tells us a little bit more information moving forward about how to help those students. And now we start asking future questions that I don't have the answers to yet today, but we will, which is, which grades, right? So we're starting to run studies on what grade fall is causing this GPA to be. Is it A's going to B's? Is it C's going to D's? Is it in science classes? Is it in elective courses? Like which courses are the ones doing it so that we know exactly where we can target? And tentatively, the beginning indicators is it's probably not the same for every kid. It's gonna be one of those things where there's not a, well, it's the elective for seventh grade that really did this. It's just not gonna be that way. We're starting to see that there's the, that once you start to get granular, the trends go away. And we're seeing far more spread than we normally would see, I think. And so that tells us that each student's gonna have a different set of needs coming in, right? And we're really gonna have to think about student by student, what is the impact that this COVID year had on the student experience for each student? And what do we need to provide moving forward? So this is how we started aggregate and we're drilling down to try and find exactly where they are. And then we'll provide that information to sites and to teachers before next year so that when the teachers come into school, they have their class list and they can see exactly what every student's needs are moving into their year. If you move to K5, the aggregate metrics, we don't have a high school or middle school readiness metric in K5, but we do have achievement reports. And one of the things that the Research Office worked on this year and the data team specifically is they were tasked with looking at non-traditional sources of data. So we always have achievement reports, but it's not something that we've generally mined to present to the board, that we've generally mined to provide profile data for teachers moving forward because we have all of our assessment datas and S-BAC and all those other things that we don't have this year, right? So a lot of our traditional indicators of student progress are not what we're looking at. So the team spent a lot of time looking at achievement reports, and then later we'll talk about some other things that they, at a depth that they haven't done in the past, to really try and, again, paint a picture of what's going on with our students and what's the experience during COVID look like. And so they looked at, on the achievement reports, how many students were on level or above level, approaching level or below level for the achievement reports? And again, we compared last year to this year for the first semester's achievement report. So end of January was the timeline of when these were pulled. And so you could see, obviously, as expected, right, it's a COVID year. We know that there was gonna be some changes. As expected, we have some students, more students in some areas who are below level and less students above level. But again, one of the things I really want to point out is it's not the same for everybody. So I'll draw your attention to kindergarten for a minute. The change in kindergarten students this year versus kindergarten students last year is not, at this moment, as of the end of January, a huge change. It's not massive. Whereas if you look, say, at fifth grade students, you'll see that the impact of the COVID year seems to have been a little bit. Now, these are different students. So this is fifth grade students this year versus fifth grade students last year. So we know it's not the exact same student, so there are some limitations to this data that we want to be aware of, right? Which is why I really focus on, we have to look student by student as we get farther down the road. But it does tell us something about that not every grade level was impacted the same way by the COVID experience, at least in terms of achievement reports. And other things, what you'll start to see is that other areas, the impact is different and affects different grades or different groups differently. And there really isn't a one thing you can say, well, we know all kids felt it this way. It's just not, it's not showing up that way. But you can see here that we have still a lot of our students who are performing on or above level, right? I mean, it's not disastrous. It's not nobody is learning. A lot of our students are learning. Our teachers are doing really great work and they're pushing really hard with our kids, given the virtual environment that they're learning. And a lot of our kids are performing very well. So, you know, there is some good signs to be taken from that. So then for the board, we wanted to break it down and show you sort of how different groups are impacting. The numbers you see to the right are the change in the percentage of students who are on or above level. So that percentage you see to the right is thinking just on or above level last year versus this year. So you can see that overall, for our students, it's about a 14% decline. Again, some of those students are now in middle school, so it's not the exact same students, not apples to apples, but it's close. And then you can see how the groups go, but it's pretty tightly spaced if you think about that. Like numerically, it's about, you know, it's an 11% to 17% decline depending on the group. Again, you don't have wild swings in variation. It seems like the drop in students on or above level due to COVID is about the same. So then we thought, well, is it the same in every area? So we looked at things like, how about foundational reading versus informational, right? And it's not the same, right? So what we'll see as we get into further data is that there are some things that students are performing just as well, if not better, this year, and some things that they're not, right? And that helps us. It's not like we have to create interventions to help students grow in every single area that they were experiencing during this year. There are specific areas that are gonna need support and specific areas that they're ready to go. They're ready to move on, and we can keep pushing forward next year with our students and in the spring. So that's why we do this, right, is to find that student progress to know where to push and where we can just continue our normal patterns of high-quality instruction. So again, you start to see a little bit more, but again, I point out to kinders here, the drop in kinders is almost negligible, right? And then again, same thing, you see, fifth grade seems to be a little more impacted here by the COVID virtual experience. So one of the things we looked at then was, well, now let's look at apples to apples. Let's look at students, and let's talk about students who moved up or down. And the reality is, we did have students who moved up. So they ran an analysis of the students. They looked at how many students moved down a level from where they scored last year, stayed the same from where they scored last year, or moved up. And that's why you'll notice in the slide, there are no kindergarten students because they don't have scores for last year, right? So these are looking at year-over-year scores. Again, it's COVID year, nothing new, but we do have a fair number of students who have moved up levels between last year and this year. Students are growing. Students are making progress, even in the COVID year, right? So I know we hear lots of things in the news about student growth, but student growth is happening. And at least in Long Beach, it's happening. And it's happening in every grade level for every subgroup. We always want more. We've wanted more even in non-COVID years. We're always gonna want more growth for our students. That's why we're here. But it is happening. So you can see that we start to have some changes. And, you know, I picked on fifth grade a minute ago, but when you look at it this way, it's actually our current third graders that maybe raise an eyebrow for a second. A few more third graders moved down than any other grade. So again, that tells you, let's look at next year's fourth graders. Let's find those students who moved down year-over-year, and let's make sure we provide the support so the patterns don't really change. And there's not much I'm gonna say here, other than you can see the same data for writing across the grade levels, and you see very similar patterns between kinder and fifth. And then we did the same data analysis, looking at writing to your change overall. So again, grade three, but not hugely different. The differences are 1% or 2% across each grade. And then we looked at math, and math we thought was very interesting, so I wanted to touch on it just for a moment. Math, students, we have a lot of students performing on or above level in math, a lot. Now, we had some bigger differences between last year and this year than we did in ELA and writing, but we still have more students scoring on or above level in math. So when we know math is a focus sort of statewide on students and we see data like this in a COVID year where nearly half to more than half of our students in every grade level are on or above standard, that's a good place to start next year from, right? Comparatively to where we, you know, could be if you believe everything you hear about math performance in the state of California. Comparatively to where we, we, you know, could be if you, if you believe everything you hear about math performance in the state of California, K-12 education. So that's a good spot to be in for us in terms of math students on level. We do know that our students obviously were impacted by COVID. We know that COVID is going to affect how they grow in terms of the, the way they experienced K-12 education, the way they experienced everything in life, right? So we did see a lot of students have some drop, but, um, the beauty of, of K-five students is we've got a lot of time. We can work with this. We can get them to where they need to be and, and the fact that so many of them are on or above level and, and so many of them are still growing. I'm very positive that we can get everything we need for these students. So they can be high school ready when they come out of middle school. And the last thing we looked at is something that I don't know if we've talked about deeply before. It was sort of a new metric and again, very subjective, but we looked at the achievement report and how many students were, um, labeled as possible for retention. Now this does not mean all of these students will be retained, very, very few of these students will be retained. This is that sort of warning because this is as of first semester. And if you have a student that, that you're maybe working with through the second semester, you want to make sure that you, you put everything out there for parents to know right away. So the teachers indicate possible retention and they'll work all spring to, to make sure they don't. But here's what we start to see year over year. You'll see that, that in some groups, as we would probably expect due to the, the world we live in right now, there's a few more students being indicated as, as possibly for being retained, although Kinder is exactly the same as it was. Grade two is a little more, but, but grade three is actually far less than it was at this point last year. So, you know, it goes to that show when I said there's no overall trend, you know, just to, you know, three minutes ago, you heard me talk about in a few of our metrics, grade three was a grade that made us raise our eyebrows for a second about students who had declined between second grade and third grade on their, um, achievement reports. But then when you look at this, far fewer of them are in danger of being retained. So that's evidence of, of some other progress that they're showing that wasn't measured on those, those levels of the achievement report. So, so that really speaks to that need to get to the student level and get more granular with their data and figure out what are the individual needs of students and how do we move forward from there? Cause we can't just say, well, all third grade students need X or all fifth grade students need Y. That's just not what the data is supporting. And then we look by special populations, you can see that for our special ed students, it's exactly the same as it was last year, which is positive. And homeless foster, it's a little more, um, which if you think about what COVID has done with families and living situations, is probably not super surprising, but it gives us an, an indicator of something we need to work on for the spring semester with those kids. The other thing we looked at that we don't necessarily always talk about, and this is again, very subjective and we'll talk through it. We talked about at promise flags. So as a, as a point of background, um, are, there, there's multiple indicators for our students that, that we flag them as, as, um, things to follow up on for students. And there are things like, do they have an F in one or more classes? Are they off track? Do they have a GPA below 2.0? Do they have poor attendance? Have they been suspended? How's their S back score, their PSAT scores? Are they not meeting standards? So there's a lot of different flags. There's, uh, I believe 29 different indicators that we have right now. The student, so a student can have one flag, a student could have no flags, a student could have 29 flags if they have all the indicators. We, I don't, don't think we have any student with 29 flags, but you see the idea. So students could have flags. So we looked at that. And then when we look at those flags, if a student has, um, one to two flags, they're, they're, they're tagged as a caution, right? They've got one or two of the things that we need to work on. If they've got three or four flags, they're high, uh, in the at promise category. And if they've got five or more flags, they're severe. So we looked at what's the change year over year in the number of flags? Right? How many of our students had flags last year in these categories, right? Zero, one to two, um, three to four, or five or more. And then how many students have those same flags this year? So you can see like for all students, slight change. So, so 48% of our students last year had no flags, 44% currently have no flags. So again, the, the biggest group is the group who have none of these indicators, who are making progress, who are doing really well and who are ready to move on to the next level as, as far as these indicators go. And then in the severe group, you can see we went from, from five to eight percent. So marginal small growth in the number of students who have five or more flags. But again, that, that made us ask the question, which flags? Right? There's, there's 29 of them, which one? So I, I can tell you that, that the biggest flag is having an F grade. That's the one, right? So, so there's 40,000 students that are represented as having flags, but 18,500 of them, it's having an F in one class. So that's the biggest thing. If we, you know, work on that with students, we could change this indicator greatly. Second was, uh, A through G for high school. And then very positively, because one of the flags is discipline. There's only six kids right now who have flags for discipline this year in the entire district. That's fabulous. That's amazing. That's great news, right? So we have some really good things to stay, to keep going with, and then some areas where we need to work. So we know that it's, um, grades that is causing the biggest change in, in at risk factors or at promise factors. So since I talked about GPA being the biggest impact on, uh, high school readiness, and I talked about grades being the biggest impact on, uh, at promise flags, we should probably dig into grades just a little bit. And I think I've presented this, this will be the third time this year that you guys have seen DF rate data. And, and it's not wildly different than the first two times. So we'll go through pretty quickly, but this is the semester update for DF rate data and its impact on GPA. So as a point of clarification, there are two ways to look at DF data. And we'll look at both. So the first way is how many students have one or more D or F grades? Right? And in that case, a student counts one time whether they have one D or if they have five Ds. It's just how many students out of the total number of students. The other way to look at it is how many grades are D and F out of the total number of grades? And we have far more grades than we have students, right? So when we pull the data, we have 300 and something thousand grades that are analyzed for our secondary students, grades six through 12. So that's the two things. So when we look at this, this slide here, these are the grade distribution. So these are the percentage of total grades. So you could have a kid with one D, you could have another kid with five Ds and that changes that percentage of grades. So you can see that, that for first semester last year, at the end of, of the fall, so late January 2020, about 6% of the total grades were Fs and about 8% were Ds. Same point this year, we've got a, a 9% growth in Fs and a 5% growth in Ds. So for grades. And then you can see that, that the Cs stayed about the same. We have about 1% less Cs, 6% less Bs and 6% less As. So the D and F rate increased from 14 to 28%. And, and we talked about that other metric, the percentage of students with one or more DRF. Last year was 37% of students, this year it's 48% of students finishing the first semester with the DRF, which makes sense if we talk about GPA was the biggest impact on high school readiness. It's the biggest impact on at promise flags. And this is where you see it. It's, it's the, the growth in DNF grades is where you see that, that biggest change. So of course we can break this down by special subgroups. We can break this down by race, ethnicity. We can break it down by school side or anything else, um, that we, that we want. And so when we start to look at it, um, and this is the same slide, slide that I showed you guys last time, just updated for the semester. You can see that, that the groups are, you know, nine to, to 15% changes. In terms of students with one or more DNF. So overall we had an 11% growth, right? In the students with one or more DRF. You can see that, that for African-Americans, the growth was 9%. For, um, Latinx students, 13%, Pacific Islanders, 15, white students, nine. So you can see the, the, the gaps. There are some gaps between who is impacted by the, the COVID virtual learning environment and, and who was less impacted. Interesting, nobody was not impacted, right? Everybody was impacted by the COVID environment. And we can do the same thing again for our special populations. Or sorry, we could do the same thing for percent of grades. So this is interesting and I'll probably go back and forth here for a second. So I'll point out that this is how many of the grades earned by students in that group were DNF versus how many of the students in that group had a DRF grade. Remember we talked about the two different ways. So if we look at something like, um, our Asian subpopulation, so we go back a slide. There was a 9% growth in students with a DRF. And there was an 8% growth in the numbers of Ds and Fs. What that really tells me, tells me is that you're not seeing students with DNF getting far more Ds and Fs. You're seeing more students with one DRF, right? So we added students that had a DRF. And, and so we have more students getting one. What we don't have is the same students who are getting one now getting five, right? And that's an interesting point, right? That's a very good point to think about. It's, it's not suddenly students are failing every class. It's, we have a few more students failing a class. And those are two very different things in terms of how you're going to intervene moving forward. Now you have more students to intervene with, but you're not intervening in every single course that they take. And we can do it in the same, same breakdown for our students, uh, with special populations. So we look at the percent of students with one or more DRF and the change year over year. And we see again, very similar changes that we saw in the other groups. It's about 11 to 14% uh, increase due to COVID in that experience for getting a DRF for students. And when we do it by the percent of grades, we see very similar patterns. So again, it goes to tell us that it's not a bunch of students getting a bunch more Ds or Fs. Our students who are already struggling, now struggling far more. It's, um, more students who are getting at least one DRF. Then we asked the question about what about middle school versus high school? And, and so where's the change? So you'll see that, that, um, in, in middle school, the impact was a little bit bigger in terms of Ds or Fs than it was in high school for this year. So that COVID environment seems to be impacting our middle school students a little more strongly than it was impacting our high school students, which i- in our conversations with districts around the country, what they've shown is that the younger the student, the more likely the virtual learning environment was harder for them to deal with. So that is a trend that we are seeing nationwide and it shows up for us too, right? Our high school students were able to not be as negatively impacted. They seem to be able to adapt a little bit stronger than our middle school and elementary school students were. And that's just a, a function of maturity and age and the ability to have different learning environments and having experienced different learning environments as you get closer to that, you know, 18 years old versus an eight-year-old, right? Or a 10-year-old. So, uh, this is very much in line with what we're seeing from districts nationwide. This is not a trend that is unique to Long Beach. But it, the trend holds true across the number of grades and the number of students with, with a DRF grade. So it's for middle and high school. So then we asked a question. We said, what about the students who had or did not have Ds or Fs last year? And this slide's ugly on your page and I apologize because there's a lot of data on it. So I'll try and walk through it for you. So we looked at students who had one or more, so, so we just looked at students who had a DRF in 2019 or fall of 19. So January of 2020, before, um, the pandemic really started impacting our world. And then we looked at where they are now. So, um, there was 41% of African-American students had a DRF in fall of 2019 and now it's 46. So the gray bar is 2019 or 2020 DRF rate. Blue bar is current. So you can see the students who did and then how many students, uh, how many Ds or Fs still they do, so they have now. And then we did the same thing for students with no Ds or Fs. So you can see, these are students who did not have. So we had 1,582 African-American students who did not have a DRF at that point last year and 15% of them now have a DRF this year. And that goes again, to that point of it's not a growth necessarily in the number of grades. It's a growth in, in kids who have never gotten a DRF or didn't get one last year, getting them this year. But we looked to see, did some groups get more impacted than other groups? And, and the, uh, results are on the board. You can see that, that certain subgroups, uh, more students fell into the DF category this year than in other subgroups. It's also interesting to think about the number of Fs too. So one of the things we looked at is we talk about DF, but the question I asked is, is especially for high school, D can get you to a diploma, D is graduating, D is passing the course. It's not A through G, but you can pass and move forward with a D, but an F you can't. So we looked at some information and what we saw is that of these DFs now, 65% of them are Fs for the students who had a DRF last year. And for the kids who had no DRFs, 48% of them are Fs. So that means 52% are Ds. So, so most of the students who had no Ds or Fs last year have fallen to Ds, but most of the students who have Ds or Fs last year have fallen to an F in that one grade. Now again, it looks like it's about one grade for, you know, about the same number of grades as it was last year. But, but that's an interesting point because it tells us if we can look at those students, we know who those students are, we now know which classes they're not passing entirely and we can intervene and, and create the proper summer programs, the proper core sequences, the proper scheduling for next year to make sure they get the, the courses they need to get on track to graduate, to get on track for high school readiness, to get on track for, um, all their post-secondary options. And, and for most of these students, we have plenty of time to do that, which is excellent. Told you it's a dense, dense, dense piece of data and we could have gone with way more. So, uh, let me know if you're ready to tap out and I'll, uh, take questions. But we can talk about FERSA for a minute. So foundational reading skills, this was a TK through two assessment. It looks at, um, a couple of different areas. And, and one of the things I'll talk about this year is that we have some lower testing rates, um, probably for good reason. So we'll talk about them in a minute. Before I talk about this, I'm just going to give you a, it's in box plots because it's the only way we could think to show change year over year and to really show how the change is not impacting everybody the same way. So when you see these box plots, this is the way they look at. So the, the line on the bottom from the blue box to the little square on the bottom, that's the fifth to 25th percentile. So that's the bottom quartile. The, the light blue shaded region is the middle 50th, the middle two quartile. So the 25 to 50th and the 50th to 75th percentile of students in terms of scores, right? In terms of where they score relationally to everyone else. And then the, the little line at the top to the top box is the top quartile of students, right? 75th to 95th percentile. The line, the little gray line is the mean and then the diamond is the median. And it's important because we'll see how mean and median change year over year, which tells us how the scores are changing year over year. And I'm, we, we could have done 50 slides on this. We'll do a couple just to show you what we're looking at. But, but with all of it, there are some limitations. And one of the limitations is when we look at the types of things versus tests, there's been differential testing, uh, percentages. So, so this is again, March to March. But we look at like uppercase letter names. Last year at this time, 92% of students have been tested. This year it's 80% of students who have been tested, right? And then we move all the way down to phonemes and segmenting, 73% last year, 35% this year. And we think a lot of that is because if a student's not ready to test, they don't test them. There's no benefit to testing a student who's not ready to be tested. So it shows that there, there should, there could be some delay in progress in terms of just moving through content due to COVID, right? Due to the, the, the challenges with teaching in that environment. So again, our teachers are working as hard as they possibly can. This is just one of those impacts that in the student experience, they, they've been tested less because A, we've said testing is less important to us this year. We really want to focus on other things and B, um, we haven't gotten there. So that being said, we'll just take a look at kindergarten and you start to see year over year, some, I think I have a laser, it doesn't, some changes. And I'm not going to talk about this slide because I'm just going to break out two examples of it, just to show you what I'm talking about here. But this gives you just for your own reference, sort of all the different little skills. But if we go to the next slide. Maybe you'll see that like for uppercase letter names, for example, now we know again, fewer students have been tested. But you'll notice the top and the median hasn't really changed. So students, the, the top quartile students are scoring about the same as they did. And, but you'll notice, and, and actually the bottom 5% are really close to where they were. But what you'll notice is there's a little more spread in the fifth, middle two quartiles. And really it's that third, that second, uh, called the second quartile has dropped a little bit, right? So what it tells us is students who know it, still know it. Students who are, are, there's a lot of students who are making growth, just as many students as last year. But the students who are a little bit behind are a little bit farther behind than they were last year. Right? So that, that spread of scores is a little bit bigger. It's not quite as tight as opposed to say syllables, where the students this year and last year are scoring very, very, very similarly, right? You've got a range of say, you know, zero to, uh, almost 80 something for the bottom quartile. And then the top three quartiles are clustered all towards the top, right? So this shows us that moving forward into next year, this is not an area of focus. We need to keep doing what we're always doing here, but this is not an area of focus because students are scoring about the same as they were last year. They're making great progress and not only they're scoring the same, because remember I told you comparisons, not all that matters. They've got this, right? They're scoring really, really well on this. Students are doing great. The, the teachers have made good progress here. So again, that's why we look at these things. We can start to build out what's the individual specific skillset that we have to work on with our students. And we can do the same thing for grade one and grade two. So again, I included these slides in your, in your slide deck, um, for your reference. So you can see where those, those are falling out in terms of where are there some changes and where are there not some changes? You know, um, so like for grade one, you see a, uh, you know, not much of a change in high frequency words, blending phonemes. There's a little bit of a change, right? So that, that So that that middle quartile has a little bit of work to do in blending phonemes. So so again, that's just an area of focus for those students for next year. And what we're really going to work on is identifying who are those students in that gray bar who are scoring a little bit lower than we would like, so that we can identify them and we know how to support them moving forward, right? So we will be able to give that information to sites and to teachers. Here's the 15 kids that we're talking about for your classroom or the five kids for your classroom that might need a little bit of extra support with the blending phonemes, right? So that it's, we can give them something very targeted to work on with their students when they walk in and not just, hey, their first of scores were here, right? And again, for your benefit, you can see that like long vowel diagrams, almost no change from last year at this time. And then I included again for you, grade two, in case you had questions about how grades one, two were doing. And so that Mr. Moskowitz could see it and I'm sure send me a ton of questions moving forward, which will be great. We also looked at another assessment we give and this assessment's not given everywhere and it's not given to every student. So take that data for what it's worth. But but our students actually in a literacy assessment, the Lexi Rapid assessment are actually scoring slightly higher than they did last year at this time. So again, not everywhere and it's not an assessment we're going to keep using moving forward forever. So I'm not going to spend a lot of time talking about it. But I did want to show that that we have students, a lot of students who are making growth and and some of our students are making more growth in the past. So it's, you know, our teachers are doing a lot of work trying to provide the best instruction they can given the limited, you know, limitations put on them by the COVID world. So I point all this out to show that there's a lot of data and there's a lot of ways to understand student progress. And we know that COVID has impacted the student student experience. And we know that student growth has been under COVID, less than we would like. We also know that we can really target and identify where we need to support students moving forward. So the next step for the research office, and the next time you hear from me, is really we're starting to work closely with the level offices and the schools. And we really want to build school and student level profiles that we can give to administrators and teachers where they will actually have an idea of exactly what their students need for next year in terms of progress, based on what data we have. Now, we do not have exhaustive data. We don't have everything we could possibly know about every kid. We haven't tested them 20 times this year for good reason, right? We didn't think that was good for kids and I still don't believe that's good for kids to test them all the time in a year like this. So you know, there'll be a lot of work in terms of of talking to students and building those relationships. But the more we can give teachers out the front without making them try and dig or them trying to diagnose when they first get kids, the the more we can help them make extra growth next year, right? So that we can be back to where we're used to being in terms of a district, which is our students succeeding at very high levels. So these are our next steps. And and that's the end of your day today. But I always save this slide for the end. So if there are data questions and I have the ability to answer them, I will. If I don't have the ability to answer them, I will get you the answer as soon as I do. So any questions on data?
So I did have one question. And first I wanted to preface my statement by saying, as overwhelming as these numbers may be, this was fantastic. I'm glad that you put this together for us because it really was a breakdown of the aggregate of our student performance. And so this is good captured information. One of the questions that came up for me as I've attempted to absorb as much of this information as possible is earlier you were talking about the achievement report for reading for the second year change. It was this here. And you kept using the term scores, but I didn't know what the measurable factor for that was. Is that?
So the score we were using is is really just are the student, the percentage of students who are indicated by their teacher to be at level, above level or below level. So it's a, it's a, and Brian, you can feel free to jump in here if I misspeak. But it's a subjective score.
Okay.
Where teachers use the the entirety of the work they've done with students to that point to to say, yes, they're on level for this grade in reading, writing, math. Am I missing something? And then they they tag that.
Okay.
I would add too, that in addition to the subjective aspect, there are certain assessments that are used to qualify a student for the score. So the score one, two, three or four, there's a series of assessments and things that our district guides teachers in using that then help them to get to that score. So there is absolutely a subjective aspect and there's a, there's a data driven aspect of it.
And we can bring an example to a, you know, in a, in a future update.
That would be great. Thank you.
Yeah. Mr. Otto?
So I'm not sure I understand the questions I wrote down, so bear with me for a minute here. Is there a high school or middle school readiness metric where we say, this is what we're after? This is what we're looking for or is it, we just, do we just have data?
So there is a high school readiness index.
Okay.
It's a score and it's a composite score using GPA, ELA grade, math grade, attendance data, S back scores when we have them, which we do not have them currently because their S back was not given. So it's a, it's a composite score. It's an index score. This year, the index is is different because we don't have ELA and math S back scores or accountability scores from the spring of last year because the tests weren't given in the spring last year. So it's really just ELA grade, math grade and GPA for the student. That that's the heaviest factors impacting the high school readiness index. For for high school, there is no college readiness index. We use the A through G course sequence completion as our college readiness index. And you know, Dr. Camarino can jump in if I if I misspeak here. But the the UCs and the Cal State schools require students to complete an A through G sequence of courses, which is above and beyond what is required for graduation in order to be eligible to attend those universities. So we monitor how our students are doing with completion of that courses, of those courses. And so we have an on track indicator. So students can be either on track, which means they're taking the right courses, they're passing the right courses. And as long as they continue doing so, they will be considered A through G completed. Or they're not on track. And then the counselors have a way of looking at why? Did they, did they miss an English course or was it a math course? Or what specifically has thrown them off track? But there is not an index score. It's just a, you either are on track or not on track for the A through G, which is the college indicator that we use.
And what's the relationship? This is not a data question, especially this year because you don't have it. But in your opinion, the relationship between attendance and loss of learning?
Well, I would say that that's a interesting question. So I I'm going to, I'm going to shy away from the words learning loss. I would argue that it maybe it's instruction loss and we think about moving forward. Because if a kid's not attending, they're just missing out on instruction.
That's really fair.
I I would say that that previous to COVID, the link between the two is very strong. We know very much that that students who don't attend school for whatever reason tend to achieve at lower levels academically, including if they've been excluded from school due to discipline, like suspensions, right? So we've worked really hard as a district to lower our suspension rates and find other ways to work with students rather than removing them from school. Because when they miss school for any reason, it does not do anything good for them academically. COVID year, it's interesting that the attendance data is really different. What we're seeing is we're seeing that the attendance is not overall for the district, very different. Kids are able to attend school because the definition of attendance has changed at the state level. Now we, I had shown you guys last time, there are differential impacts, right? Certain subgroups and certain areas of the city where the attendance is a little more impacted than in other areas. But but what we're seeing is that the achievement impacts of COVID seem to be happening across the system regardless of attendance. So the the link doesn't seem to be as strong as it was in the past. It seems like the impact of COVID is overriding just just an attendance impact. It's not just attendance, it's something more.
And and I mean, I, one of my epiphanies about attendance was I went to a class at an elementary school and was talking to the principal and I'd heard that, you know, people weren't there and all that. And he said, hey, come here. And we walked into a classroom and he said, all right, kids, turn on your cameras. And all of a sudden, instead of five, there were 20. And so I meant, they were there, they were attending, but I mean, so how you measure it is, I I understand. It just, the whole thing changed.
Yeah.
Because of that. And the third question, how do you measure possible retention?
So I can tell you how we measured it in the research office. I will allow someone from the elementary office to maybe speak on the how they measure possible retention. We looked at just the number of students who had it indicated on their achievement report. So the teacher indicates on the achievement report, this student is, you know, will possibly be retained. Now, how the teacher made that determination, I would defer to my elementary school colleagues to to determine how a teacher makes that determination. But we just looked at how many of them were tagged that way. So we know how many were tagged last year at this time and how many students were tagged this year at the time. So that's an indicator we always, it's a, it's a warning to to families and it's a, you know, an indicator that we need to work with the students in the spring. And and far more students are tagged in the fall than who are actually retained in the spring, right? It's sort of like a, hey, we got to get going on this together and work on this. So so it's not a tag in the fall guarantees retention in the spring by any stretch of the imagination. But I don't know if elementary wants to speak to that at all.
I guess the only thing I would add with retention is we do have a retention policy in our district that is based on students' reading ability and the students' math ability and they have to make a certain level of progress. Of course, when we haven't had students in person, it's a little more challenging. So for the last couple of years, our ed code does allow, state ed code does allow teachers to recommend retention if they feel students are not making adequate progress. So at this point, all that they're indicating on the achievement report is indicating to parents that a child may be in danger of retention. We then put in many levels of intervention from that first semester achievement report until the end of the year. And then we'll we'll reconvene at the end of the year with families to to have a discussion about whether we think they should actually be retained. But it's really at this point, just an indication that it is possible so that we can engage parents in that conversation and so that we can engage students in the intervention.
Yeah. And I mean, the, one of the reasons I asked the question, the world that I'm coming from, which is community colleges, retention is did they enroll? This is obviously completely different and it's, it's not subjective, but it's more subjective than, but I mean, but but good. There's a, there's a good way to to look at it. And I didn't see a promise flag categories in here. Did I miss it or?
No, I I didn't leave, I didn't put all the categories in there. There's 29 of them. If you would like them, I can send you guys a list of what the promise flag categories are.
Okay. What does the increase in one or more D or Fs tell you about about this? I I mean, I start thinking, teachers really don't want to give Fs. They want people to graduate, but now they can't help it because it, I mean, it's, is it, is there a value to it? Or is it just such speculative that you, you don't know?
I I think at this point, it'd be very speculative of me to say why. So I would definitely want to, I think, I think it's going to be varied by student, by teacher. I think there's, there's huge variations into why it's happening. So I I shied away from making an overall trend assessment on that because I don't think I can.
And grading is a huge issue, something that we have attempted, starting a couple of years ago. Dr. Lund, followed by Dr. Kale, followed by Chris Brown, really looking at different ways to address issues of grading. This year, one of the things that our Office of Curriculum, Instruction and Professional Development did is prepared equity centering guidelines for grading as a, as a step into a direction around grading that we hope to spend a couple of years studying because there are, there are a lot of issues around grading. And there's a lot of individual decision making based on, mostly based on course outlines that give guidance to teachers. But then everything from weighting of assignments to the way grades are calculated to different philosophies in a classroom. But something that we're, we're going to be spending some time looking at.
And I mean, what I, what we're interested in, I think at a policy level is, so what do we do with this data? And you know, what, what are the interventions? And why is it that we think that they will be successful? And I I just made a note about something about, I like the Dan and Chip Heath stuff, that stuff about how people succeed and what they said was, the information has to cause the person that gets the data to believe it. They have to care about it and then they have to be able to act on it somehow. And and I think for me anyway, at the policy level, I want to know how we're going to, how we then craft the solutions with this, a lot, this is a great amount of data.
Yeah, that, I think that's one of the reasons we start here for the two days and then we work through the plans with all of the levels and and the district moving forward. So it's a primer for that work for the the next two days.
Thanks very much. It was great.
Dr. Venus?
Yeah, Mr. Otto, and higher ed, retain, higher retention rates are a good thing, right?
Yeah.
So I, I, I do want to express an appreciation for us starting with an equity and excellence framing for our two days and starting off with this data, Chris. And I have an idea that I'd like to share in terms of the last sort of question you asked, Mr. Otto. Okay, how do we act on this, right? If we care, how do we act? And clearly all of us care. And I think for me, it stems to, around the issue and the framing that has been posed for us and that I agree with 100% is equity, right? How do we use an equity lens to interpret and then act on this data? So I want to pose an idea for for my colleagues here and I'd love to hear from staff throughout the next day and a half about this. So if we roll with the premise, Chris, that one of the most important impacts is great to determine, as we're determining high school readiness, but also some of the other data that you presented here. The large question for me is, is it equitable to use grades in how we think around about student success, given two things? One is that those that are most disproportionately impacted by the indicators that our district, quite frankly, didn't come up with, right? That we're using indicators that our educational system is, you know, had put in place, that we're using the same indicator that we used pre-COVID. And that thus, I think it's an unfair, as a district, comparison given that we know that the most disproportionately impacted students are our highest needs, most vulnerable students. So here's the idea that I would pose. And I'm not saying we shouldn't do grades or any of that stuff. I'm just thinking, if we looked at grades, Chris, with all due respect, it's disastrous, right? If we only looked at grades. And I know that you said some students are performing well and that it varies by grade level, et cetera. But I think it's disastrous when we're saying things like, you're not saying as a system or educational system. Less than 4,000 of our Latino students didn't get at least one D R F. All right? That's a really problematic for me place to be at as a public education system when we're counting how many of our 55% of the district. I mean, the big elephant in the room here is, and I brought it up when you made the presentation, I believe in December, Chris, around Latinx academic performance. The big elephant is, it happens to be that our Latinx students make up the majority of our district. So if we deduce from that, that Latinx students are doing really well, then our overall numbers look really good. But when our Latinx students are are suffering and being challenged through no fault of our district, right? Just given the conditions that we had to pivot to and are now pivoting back from, it's a really huge problem for me to think that of the thousands of students, majority of Latinx, that only 4,000, less than 4,000, right? 3893 to be exact, are not getting a D or an F. I think that starts a deficit oriented conversation from like, how do we pull them out, right? How do we not use learning recovery? How do we not use learning loss as the lens? Given that I believe this indicator is super problematic for us to use in this context. So I would pose that more as an idea for us to think through and think about because any data that I look for, look moving forward is skewed for me. Given the context that Dr. Lund, I I remember a really good series of conversations around scale grading. This is in the context of scale grading as well and trying to be more equitable because we knew the inequity and how we constructed our grading systems and tried to address that. Yet even with scale grading, we still see that our most vulnerable populations, two thirds of our district. that our most vulnerable populations, 2/3 of our district are poor. They're the ones that are most struggling. So the acknowledgement of that, I think, is important through the equity framing that Dr. Baker posed this morning, that we cannot come up with equitable intervention, solution, strategies unless we acknowledge that the systems, and by systems, I mean indicators, whether that's test scores or grading, are inequitable, highly inequitable for our most vulnerable populations at this time. So again, I don't, I have a million questions, Chris, but I think my premise is that, right, that how we interpret the data is really going to be based on, is our goal going to be to have less Ds and Fs? Is that the ultimate goal? Yes, by some measure, that should be. But I think only relying on, as the biggest impact, Ds and Fs, in terms of how we think about high school readiness, presents a huge problem for our district, given that 88% of our district are students of color, 67% of our districts are poor, and those are the groups that are disproportionately getting more Ds and Fs than everyone else. So I offer that as a, as something to consider and build on as we think about interventions and acting on it, as Mr. Otto pointed out.
I think that's a great point, too. And it's one of the discussions we had in my office about, because we don't have other indicators this year, that that actually became a larger impact than it normally would be. And to your point, therefore, a more disproportionately impactful aggregator, right? If we think about it, it is one metric that it aggregates up to a larger metric that we look at. And that's one of the reasons we wanted to start breaking down. So the next question we've asked, and we don't have a answer for you or a way to answer, but, but on the data side of the house, is starting to draw lines between, what's the parallel or the linkage between grade and learning? And is there a link between grade and learning? And are there other indicators that are more indicative of learning? And that's some of the work that we're looking at doing in the research office, some of the research that we're looking, it's, it's a challenge this year because we don't have a lot of other learning indicators. But moving forward, we're also working on that as well. What are some other indicators? So your point is very well taken. And it's something that we're looking at in our offices. What other things can we look at for student progress to look at student success? And also to then create interventions based on student need as opposed to student grade, right?
Well, can I say something quickly? One is that it's a democracy, so we can make the decisions that we want to do. And is there a possibility of doing that? Gee, let me think. Maybe we should eliminate the SAT test or the ACT test. That's what they're doing, because they found them inequitable. So there's plenty of, there's movement when, when you understand these things. There are things that were inconceivable a very short time ago, are not only conceivable, but have been done. So it's a good challenge.
And I think it starts with Chris's point, right, that if we don't have a clear understanding of the link between grades and learning, then we're operating with a false premise, right, that just because we have to give grades, doesn't necessarily mean that that's the only way that we understand student success. So I love that we're having those conversations, Chris. And to me, it makes sense to have those conversations now, right? Because it would have been harder to have this conversation a year and a half ago. Yeah, we're getting rid of SATs. We have some folks that think our S-Backs really shouldn't be done right now in the way that they're being done. But I think, again, to me, it's, here's how we anchor equity, right, that the majority of our students, as the data demonstrates, with some exceptions, have been disproportionately negatively impacted if we only use these traditional metrics. So that's the bottom line. Can we think of and have a conversation around, by policy, what else can we use to measure progress, all right, and to determine whether students are succeeding?
And I just had a really quick comment, because I know we're over time and that we have an opportunity to have this conversation later. Thank you, Chris, and to your team for the hard work that you put into this. And I appreciate the honesty with which we're looking at data. That feels more intense than in my years past. So thank you for looking at it with a clear lens. I think, I had questions, and then you got to them at the end, so it's good you didn't take questions in the middle. But I think what happens, what I understand from this is that the data, in many respects, is bearing out the thing that we know to be true, which is some kids were always going to be fine. That some kids in the middle of this pandemic always were going to have the support and the situation that allowed them to continue to succeed and in some cases, do better. That those who rely on us in person to help them do better were going to do the same or more poorly. And that seems to have borne itself out, which is the idea that this pandemic has impacted our communities differently. And so, again, there were people who were always going to be fine, and they're still fine. And I appreciate the conversation of, inherent in the metrics, what do we need to do different that would be more equitable? In metrics that are used at a state level and a national level, how do we in Long Beach address those equity needs specific to our community that we know and that we all advocate for that are important? And as we have those conversations, I always come back to, what does that look like? That we can hold an idea around understanding equity and wanting to get at the core of supporting students who most need our support, and what does that look like? And I know that's a longer-term question. It started with the scaled grading question a few years ago. And I look forward to us having conversations as a group in the next two days and beyond, of really exploring what that could look like for Long Beach in the context of where we are. That we have to continue to move within this system for now, but that, like scaled grading, we can bring in new practices and new metrics that meet those equity goals that we talked about at the beginning. Again, I have nuts and bolts questions that we can get to later, but just wanted to add that.
And the only piece I would add to that before I take away is, on a more meta level in our office, we're having the discussion about, we talk about equity, and we have a lot of ideas about equity. But, but how would we, not measure student progress, but how would we measure district progress towards more equitable practices? And so that's a discussion we're having in our office about what would equity metrics be? And I don't mean equity metrics for kids. I mean equity metrics for us as a system. So that's something, hopefully, you'll hear more from me on in the, in the coming months. Thank you for the time. Sorry I went over. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris, for leading just a great presentation and also for really good discussion. And just when I think about where we started around excellence and equity, and that having to manage the right now and wanting to know a lot about right now, but also thinking about the future, I really appreciate the things that you've called upon for us to think about and that you're, that you're centering. So we are going to take a five-minute recess. And I just want to remind everybody about physical distancing in the room, keeping your mask on. And when you come back, we're going to have the pleasure of hearing from several teams about teaching and learning through a pandemic, a perspective from the field, from elementary, middle, and high school teams. And so take, take a quick break, get some fresh air, and we'll see you at 9:30, 6 minutes to get.
All right. Welcome back from break. So this morning, you heard Dr. Baker set up the day and framed the day with this idea of excellence and equity. And so what we hope to do over the next 90 minutes, myself, Dr. Lund, Dr. Camarino, and our teams from different school sites, we hope to really show you excellence and equity kind of coming to life. And specifically during this time of distance learning, how have we continued to support this agenda of excellence and equity? Later today, you're going to hear from Dr. Cale and her team about how we're looking at equity in our curriculum. I'm going to start off today by sharing an example from an elementary school. And I think you'll see both how this elementary team has supported continued excellence in instruction and also brought in that layer of an equity lens and an equity frame. We think it's important for you to hear from both our principals and our teachers, because they're the ones that are obviously actually implementing our work. Today, I'm going to kick off actually a video that I'm going to share from Nicole Houghton-Chiles, principal at Dooley, and Deanna Neely, a teacher at Dooley. So first, many of you know, and I spoke with Nicole, so she's okay with me saying this. But back in November, Nicole was planning, and her teacher, Deanna, were planning to come to the board workshop to share this presentation live, well, live with all of you. And then we had to postpone the November workshop. And since that time, Ms. Houghton-Chiles has become a pink ribbon warrior, which is, I'm wearing pink in her honor here today. And so she's, she's fighting the good fight. But a couple of weeks ago, she reached out to me and said, you know, I still really want to record the presentation that we were going to present in November. And for her, it's just really important to do so. So she and Ms. Neely did, did record their presentation. And when I watched it this last week, I thought, actually, this is the perfect information for the board and the public to see, because I think it really well represents the excellence that our teachers are continuing to engage in. And specifically at Dooley, how they're bringing equity in to support students, to engage students, to make the instruction more relevant and more engaging for them. So while we're watching this video, it's about 22 minutes long, there's two things I really want you to think about and listen for. One, what does instructional excellence and distance learning look like? And I think that's important, because as we're planning to bring our elementary students back in less than two weeks, we know that we have thousands of students who will continue to be at home in a distance learning environment for various reasons. Parents needed that. Parents chose that. Parents opted for that. For whatever reason, we still have thousands of elementary students who will be engaged in distance learning for the remainder of the year. And we continue to prioritize a really high-quality distance learning program. And so when you hear from Ms. Neely today, the teacher at Dooley, you're going to see how she is using that high-quality instructional excellence to engage students in distance learning, how she has up to this point, and how she'll be able to do so moving forward. But I also want you to listen to how some of our schools are already bringing in this equity lens when they think about curriculum. We have engaged with our principals now for several years around equity and thinking about their own dispositions as an equity leader, how they self-reflect, and how they encourage and move the thinking of others. And so you'll, I also want you to listen to Ms. Houghton-Chiles and her own self-reflection and her own observation, and how she then brought in an equity lens to her school to be more engaging for her students. So without further ado, I will sit back and let you listen to Ms. Houghton-Chiles and Ms. Neely.
Hello, my name is Nicole Houghton-Chiles. I'm the principal at Dooley Elementary School. And I am here with...
Hi, I'm Deanna Neely. I'm a fourth grade teacher at Dooley Elementary.
And at Dooley, we firmly believe that what students read matters. So we would like to share our story with you on the impact of culturally relevant text on our students. So why are we here? We're here to share with you some stories and data from our school about the impact that culturally relevant text has had on our students. In order to share with you our story and where we are now, it's important that we go backwards just a little bit. I promised to bring you to present day, but after I take you on a short journey. So in looking for photos for this presentation, I found this photo. And I realized that my leadership story begins right here with a book. I had no idea the impact that books would have on my leadership. So in this photo, I'm probably five or six years old, and I have a book in my hand. It looks like it's probably Snow White. I can remember, at this age, my mother taking me to the library, what, what seems to me now, like every single weekend. She would say to me, Nikki, you pick out the best books. I'm not sure if I was really picking out the best books, or if that was her way of fostering a love of reading in me. What's interesting is, I don't remember any of the books. I remember two books. I remember Cinderella, and for some reason, I remember it looked like spilled milk. As a matter of fact, I can't recall any books from elementary school, middle school, or high school. When I start to remember books is when I went to college. But these weren't books that the university had me reading. These were books that I picked up myself. These were books that were written by authors who looked like me. I can recall this particular author who wrote a book about an HBCU experience. Well, I was at an HBCU, Langston University. This same author even wrote about a town that no one would know unless they either lived there or went to that university. I was hooked. I wanted to read more books by this author, more books of authors that looked like me. I was reading about people that had experiences like me or not, but in some way, I could relate. I was hooked. So when I became a teacher, I wanted my students to have that same love of reading and to be able to connect with books. Perhaps it wasn't their exact story, but somehow they could see themselves in the story. So as a principal, I still wanted to foster that same love for reading into my students and have students connect with books. But it's a little bit harder as the principal. But I got this opportunity in May of 2019 to attend a one-day conference. The name of the conference was Know My Name, Know My Face, Know My Story. And at this conference, I got to hear Dr. Pedro Noguera speak. What he said on that day wasn't any new information. But on this particular day, I heard it different. What I heard him say was, when we speak of black and brown boys, we speak of deficits. We don't talk about the assets they bring. At that point, I heard a call to action. That action was that I would make sure that I was always modeling, speaking about students as asset-based. The other thing that happened that same year, we were, at that same time, we were able to offer summer programs. And in those summer programs, we were able to design our own curriculum. So the name of our program was the same as the conference, Know My Name, Know My Face, Know My Story. We set up a way to learn student stories by having them write about their lives. But we also set up a way for students to learn other people's stories. And the way we did this was through books. I asked each summer school teacher to come up with a chapter book that they would, that would bring students in in some way. So I actually did start a library with those chapter books that the students had asked for. Those books are on the right side of the bookcases, the shorter bookcase. But I also started a Child's Choices lending library, which consisted of picture, picture books of topics that touched the heart, or characters who mirrored our students, whether that was in what they look like, where they come from, or some shared experience. I started by pulling books from my own kids' bookcases. I asked family and friends. They started giving me books. Teachers started donating books and giving me titles. And this is how the Child's Choices Lending Library was born. But now I had to get books into the classrooms. So I would add in our bulletin each week, a picture of a book, two or three books, and briefly share what it, what they were about. I would also share that same information in our Dooley news broadcast, and I would share this with the students. And I'd say, if you want to hear about this book, tell your teacher to pick it up from the lending library. Conversations with students started changing a bit after this point. I'd go into classrooms and students would tell me, Ms. Charles, you should read this book. What was so funny is, many of those books had come from the lending library. One of my favorite stories is this little lady here, Treasure. Treasure picked up one of the books from the Child's Choices Lending Library by way of her teacher. Her teacher picked up some books, put it on her white, put them on her whiteboard and left them there. Treasure found one of the books from the series Ruby and the Booker Boys. Well, she enjoyed it so much that one day I was off campus and I got a text from her teacher saying, I hope you have the rest of these books, because Treasure has said that she is not reading another book until she gets the rest of the series. So of course, Treasure got the rest of the series the next day. I asked Treasure, what is it about this book that you love so much? And she said, it's purple. And I said, well, Treasure, the rest of the books aren't purple, so tell me more. So she said, well, Ruby has brothers. I have brothers. Ruby has braids. I wear braids. Oh, it hit me right then and there. I knew it before, but it really hit me then, that representation so matters. We were having many success stories like this. We were having different conversations about books and characters. It was beautiful. And then March 13, 2020 happened. But even though we had to leave the campus, our love of reading didn't stop. Mrs. Hall, my assistant principal, and I continued to read to our students. But we did this via YouTube or Instagram. We didn't get much feedback, but we got enough to say that we're going to continue reading to our students. Then we returned in September, and virtually, of course. But in September, we had Canvas. And with Canvas, you can do global announcements. So with these global announcements, we could do read alouds and share these same books with our students, but we can share them with all of our students at one time. And that's exactly what we did. So we started during Latinx Heritage Month. We started by reading books by Frida Kahlo. We read a book by Juan, an author, Juan Felipe Herrera, who tells his story of coming to America not knowing any English, but becoming a poet laureate. We mixed those stories in with all kinds of stories, social, emotional learning. We mixed those stories in with all kinds of stories, social-emotional learning, anything. We just mixed all the stories in, and we just continued to read to our students. We especially picked out books from our Rising Voices kits that I am most appreciative that were purchased for us. We got feedback in different ways. One day, I was at lunch distribution, and one of our fourth-grade students came up to me and said, "Thank you for reading the book about the lady with the eyebrows, Frida Kahlo." Or another time, a teacher shared a message with me, she's a fifth-grade teacher, and it was from a fifth-grade student. And the message was, "Mrs. Charles posted a book today, and you didn't share it with us." Mrs. Neely shared with me that students would perk up and listen when they would hear me read a book. The whole goal is to foster a love for reading in our students, take them into other people's lives and experiences, to learn that we all have a valuable story, and we're all more alike than we are different. Which brings me to Ms. Neely. Ms. Neely's been at Dooley for four years, and I'll just say that when we were on campus, I would walk into her class just to see what she was reading to our students. She finds the most captivating and relevant text that I believe our students will remember for a long time. She found out that engagement increased by using culturally-relevant text, classroom discussions changed, and even ELA unit test results increased by a lot. What's really interesting is, she continued the same work in a virtual setting. I won't tell her story. I'll just say that I'm proud to have Deanna on the team, and proud to have her share her story with you today. So without further ado, I introduce you to Ms. Neely.
Hi, I'm Deanna Neely, and I'm a fourth-grade teacher at Dooley. Thank you so much for taking the time to listen to our story. I'm going to talk a little bit about ways that I've been incorporating culturally-relevant texts into my classroom last year and continuing along this year as well. So something, a bit of a pattern that I've noticed with my students is overwhelmingly, at the beginning of the year, my students do not love reading. Year after year, and this was the same at the last district I worked at as well, students would come into fourth grade, and they would say things like, "I hate reading." Like, they would actually say that. And when it was time to read, or write, or start an ELA lesson, they would moan and groan, and it was sad to see. So it just kind of baffled me. As a kid, I loved reading, so I began searching for the answers as to where this disconnect between my students and enjoying reading came from. So what to do next? How did I engage my students? Well, it started two years ago. I was one of the teachers that was working at that summer school, the summer school class, where we read the novels to students after lunch. I saw firsthand how impactful it was. I mean, I was a little apprehensive about it, because we were spending a half an hour of our day, but the students were so excited to come in every single day after lunch. I mean, it really changed my mind, so much so that I made sure to incorporate daily read-alouds into our class every day. So with our novels, we simultaneously have a read-aloud and a novel study going at the same time. So what that looks like is, part of the ELA lessons that we do during the day incorporate a novel, like they'll read a chapter, answer comprehension questions, and we'll apply whatever standards-based content we're working on. For example, sequencing, putting the events from the chapter in order, things like that, ways to keep the kids engaged, but also reading a different type of text. When we're doing our read-alouds, the children get to pick the book that they read. And that has turned into almost a sacred time in our classroom. It's after lunch, both when we are in person and now during distance learning, and the kids can come in, they can relax, and they listen to a chapter being read to them. Additionally, I supplemented our reading instruction with empowering picture books. So these books have characters that students can relate to, characters that look like them, and characters and situations that they can learn from. So just a couple of examples within my classroom. So the book Next President, we read this around the election time. It's a story about how the presidents are kids. And the main idea is that, right now, there are probably nine or 10 future presidents alive in America. They could be playing basketball, they could be in school, they could be learning art, they could be in fourth grade, just like the students in my class. That really resonated with some of my students. And one little girl actually said, in all seriousness, "Wait, I could be president too." And the fact that in 2020, a child is just realizing that they could be president, that's something that she should have known since the day she was born. And that's why having texts where every single child can see themselves and see, represented in a story, is so important. Another example, around Thanksgiving time, we read No Turkey for Thanksgiving. It's a story about a Vietnamese girl whose family has duck for Thanksgiving instead of turkey. And she's embarrassed to come back to school and tell her classmates that she had duck, because it's not turkey, and she didn't think she was doing Thanksgiving right. So she was really nervous, and after Thanksgiving, when she came back and told her classmates, it turned out that most kids have some kind of special family tradition for Thanksgiving, and they all shared their family traditions. And she felt better, and it was a way for the class to connect. In my class, my own students shared what they have for Thanksgiving, and it was something, just a really poignant moment. So including texts, including culturally-diverse text, and texts where the students can really see themselves and even learn from other people, has been really important, and it's something that any teacher can do and incorporate their ELA content standards on a daily basis. This is an example of utilizing a picture book in distance learning. So this is a book that I read with my class last year in June. It's called Something Happened in Our Town. It's a story of two families, one black and one white, and how they discuss the police shooting of a black man in their community. It was about the families and the children making sense of the event and the traumatic effects it had on the children. It also helped answer some of the questions that they had about how people are treated. So with this book, we, it was a poignant book for the children to read, and it was something that I could tell, one, they were interested in, and two, it really resonated. And I tied this in to a lesson about theme, which was a review for us, and a lesson about the author's purpose of, so why the author wrote the story. And so students analyzed what the possible theme of the text was, and they analyzed why this story was written, and why fourth graders or other students might be reading this text. Reading chapter books was a really important part of our classroom as well. So before school was closed last year, we completed five classroom novel studies. On March 13, when we were frantically packing up backpacks and sending kids home with anything we could think of them needing, I told them to grab their chapter book, and then I handed out the one I was planning to read with them next, even though we had just started the first one, which was Number the Stars. I sent them home with When You Reach Me, because I didn't really know what was going to happen next, and I wanted to at least keep some consistency. So they left, they took their backpacks, and we all know the rest, school didn't open back up. So because I sent them home with their chapter books, they were still able to keep reading. We kept our novel studies going through the end of the school year, and I was able to drop holes off for them sometime in May, and we kept going. I ended up hearing from parents and students that they expressed that they appreciated still continuing reading the chapter books, because it was a level of continuity, and the students just really loved having a chapter book. They would tell me that it made them feel grown up, and they liked reading that. So that added engagement of making sure students actually have access to books that are deeper is really important. One of the books that really resonated with me and really started my class off with Thinking Deeply was Towers Falling. So Towers Falling was the first read-aloud that we did, and we started it on the first week of school, because the goal was to get as much of it read before September 11. Towers Falling is a story that I found really unique, because it's from the perspective of a fifth grader, so similar to them in age, learning about 9/11 for the first time. And for many of these students, 9/11 is just numbers. They don't know what it was, they've just heard it many times, and they know that it's important. So they were learning along with the main character, what 9/11 was, why it was so poignant. And through that story, there were different underlying themes, like the importance of community and friendship, and the students just really resonated with that. So using novels to dig deeper really helped engage my students, and it had a positive effect on their enjoyment of reading, and I heard both from them and their parents that it was something that they really appreciated. So another way that I've tried to engage my students and get them to develop a love for reading is through something our class calls First Chapter Friday. Every Friday, we celebrate First Chapter Friday by reading a book, the first chapter of a book from our classroom library. These are books that, when we're in the classroom and the library is set up, students have access to every single day and can check out whenever they want and read whenever they want. So we read the first chapter, and the students just have to listen. In distance learning, most often, they're writing down the name of the title and the author, so they can go get them from the library. And I even have students who checked out these books from the library. I asked them to share, "Why do you think First Chapter Friday is important for kids? And you can read for yourself on the pink sticky notes." That it's so they can learn about new books, learn about new things, read books they may not have read before, understand different events. The students really enjoy it, and one of the books they enjoyed so much, it actually became our next read-aloud. They remembered it from First Chapter Friday, and they asked if we could vote on it, and it won. So exposing students to books that they may not have picked up, and just sharing with them some fantastic books, really helps to engage that love of reading. When students have access to texts that they want to read, texts that they feel connected to, I saw that their engagement increased. Last year, we had first-grade reading buddies that we read to consistently every week, and consistent inclusion of diverse books supplemented into our instruction. And I saw that my students were growing leaps and bounds. Between their first ELA unit test and their second ELA unit test, their scores increased significantly, and they were, it was obviously that they were more, they were proud and that they were more confident readers. The biggest change that I made in my teaching was that I was intentionally including diverse texts, both picture books and novels, consistently in my everyday classroom instruction.
You were able to see some data from Ms. Neely, from 62 fourth-grade students who, good majority of them said they did not like to read. We believe that represents many of our students, and we wanted to change that narrative. So through our summer school program, through our lending library, through our read-alouds, we were able to change attitudes, change perspectives, change conversations, and build confidence in our students. We believe at Dooley that what students read matters. We know that students want books with characters that represent them, they want books that they can relate to, they want to be read to, and they need to be read to, as you heard in Ms. Neely's presentation. We know that providing our students with diverse text is empowering, impactful, and necessary. In elementary school, these opportunities will lay the foundation for deeper idea-sharing in middle school, high school, and beyond. We thank you for listening to our presentation.
So appreciate that. I know Ms. Houghton-Chiles is probably at home watching right now, so hey, Nicole, hope things are going well. Just really proud of the work that she and her teachers have led at Dooley. I think this is representative of when many of our schools are starting to engage in and trying to find ways to bring in more culturally-relevant text. You may recall, last year, Mr. Steinhauser bought a set of the Rising Voices texts for every school, multiple sets. So all of our schools across our district have these books that represent our students that are actually here in Long Beach. And so we're really proud of that. And again, you'll hear from Dr. Kael and her team on how we're actually trying to bring even more culturally-relevant text into our system, and more importantly, train our teachers on how to use those appropriately in the classroom. So if I don't know if there's a couple of questions, I'm happy to answer before I hand it off to our middle school team. Dr. Benitez.
Thank you, Mr. Moskovitz. I think I just want to highlight one thing from the video. First is, the underlying, I think, theme here is engaging students, right, with representations of themselves. I think as a part of that, particularly is that aligns with our social and emotional learning, that culturally-relevant pedagogy is also about reconciling yourself in our society, right? Whether seeing yourself as an agent of change, making sense of the world through this. So I love that we can see this. I guess my question is, to what extent is this being done across schools, across all grade levels, beyond individual teachers and/or staff at the school really anchoring that work? And the reason I'm asking that is, oftentimes, what we see is representations only during, let's say this month, Women's History Month, Black History Month, all right? We don't often, you know, we don't have, for instance, Disabilities Week or Month. We have it nationally. So, you know, how, what are we doing, I guess, at the elementary school level, to make sure that we're not just anchoring this work around Hispanic Heritage Month, Black History Month, Women's History Month? So, yeah.
Yeah, that's a great question. So as I said, for the last couple of years, we've been engaging, we as an executive team have been engaging our principals around thinking about their own equity dispositions that they need to lead change at their school. So we've really been at that administrative level. What you're going to hear from Dr. Kael is how we are now intentionally shifting that to training teachers on how to utilize texts like this across our system. So I would say, right now, it's been more those teachers and those principals who are interested and have been kind of the for-runners that have been implementing things like you see Ms. Neely implementing. But I would say, my plan would be not just hope, because hope's not a strategy, but the plan would be by this time next year, that every one of our schools has teachers like Ms. Neely, who are implementing texts in a very intentional way to engage students, not just in loving reading, but in seeing themselves, to your point, as agents of change, as where they are in their society, and how their culture and their background is represented in the conversation in the classroom. Okay, thank you for asking that.
I just wanted to comment, I remember being in this room probably two or three years ago, when the work with administrators started around examining their own implicit biases. So I just wanted to state again, for the record, for people who are newer to our conversations around this, that this is work that staff has been working on in different ways that they may not have seen manifest in a classroom, and how I appreciate we are getting to the place where we see it manifesting in a classroom. That day, sitting here and sitting in the back, was pretty incredible to listen to our administrators be really honest with each other and vulnerable with each other around their own learning, their own desire to learn, the need to learn, the fear around learning, and what does that mean for the work that they're doing. And they really led by example. So that is one in my six, seven years of doing this, that's one of those days that I'm so honored to be a part of this system, knowing that there are folks having those hard conversations behind the scenes and now bringing it to fruition. So I'm really, I've been talking with Dr. Kael about her presentation for a couple of months now, to see what that looks like as it plays more openly into classrooms and on school sites. But I want to acknowledge the work that I know our administrators have done themselves and with their staff behind the scenes to lead us to where we are today. So I'm just really grateful for that work. And being in this room and hearing that just reminded me.
Great, thank you. After we're done with the middle and high school presentations, I'm happy to engage in further questions if that may come up. So at this point, I'm going to invite Dr. Lund and his middle school team to come on up, and they'll continue to talk about how we are engaging in excellence and equity at this time.
Thank you, Brian.
Dr. Benitez, I think your question is an appropriate one. I think what you're going to hear from our Stevens team today is, you know, one example of how the work is being implemented at the middle school level. I think when any new change comes into a system, you have a lot of innovation that is occurring at different school sites, with the hope of actually identifying what best practices exist, with the intent of then replicating those best practices. So you'll hear from Stevens today, who will talk specifically about... So you'll hear from Stevens today, who will talk specifically about the really incredible work that they are doing. And then we can share what similar work is occurring at other school sites that is being replicated. I'm going to start off with our motto at the middle and K A level. In order, in order to build relationships and promote deep learning experiences, every minute counts. This motto applies to our virtual environment as much as it does to our in-person environment. Our forty to fifty minutes that we have with students in class is precious. Building relationships and deep learning experiences. Social, emotional learning and high standards for learning. Restorative practices and effective teaching practices. Equity and excellence. The two need to go together. And our teachers and leadership teams have done an amazing job this year addressing these two components. They are reflected in our goals, our action plans, our professional development and in our classrooms across our level. This morning, we're going to lift up the work at Stevens. Principal Megan Traver and teacher leader Eric Kabakungan are here to share the powerful work that they have engaged in with their team at Stevens, which includes a larger team. Chelsea Spiller, Karen Carter, Jessica Bena, Abigail Hernandez, Jose Magallanes, Darren Evans. Their presentation this morning is going to showcase the amazing equity component of their work. Although they would gladly answer any questions that you also may have about the excellence in teaching aspect of their work. So I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Traver and Mr. Kabakungan.
Hi, good morning, everyone. It's, it's great to be with you this morning. Can you hear me okay? Okay, thank you. First of all, I just want to say thank you for inviting us. It's a real honor to be here and I really want to say thank you for all your hard work. I know it's been a really challenging year and you have done a great job and I really appreciate working in this amazing district, so thank you. Almost got teared up. Okay, so, oh, I need to click. Alright, so we, I was kind of thinking about what is the purpose of our presentation this morning? And I think the core of our purpose, I mean, we're really hoping to encourage others to start or deepen their work in equity. But our purpose this morning, I think, is just to really share our story with you. So I really want to point out how important it is for us in our beliefs to build equity as a system-wide process at Stevens. We feel like this needs to be everywhere. If it, it can't be in pockets, it can't be in silos, it's got to be across the whole system at our school. And two areas that we've really done that so far is in restorative practices and in social and racial justice. So I'm going to talk about the social and racial justice part of it this morning with you, with my amazing colleague, Mr. Kabakungan. I, I just want to point out also that the work that we're going to talk about this morning is happening in every single classroom at Stevens with every single teacher. And we believe that that's the way to really address this and make a change. So why now? I mean, this was felt like a little bit like maybe a crazy idea to address this right now with all that's going on. And what I feel like happened this summer is, and when we were on lockdown, is that we saw things that we couldn't unsee. We saw things that changed our lives forever and we didn't have the normal distractions that we usually have, so we had to face them. As Will Smith said, racism is not getting worse, it's getting filmed. So we knew that the time was now to address racial and social justice, injustice. Even though that we're still in the middle of a pandemic and in distance learning, it was a lot to tackle at once. But we couldn't stop thinking about how those eight minutes and forty-six seconds changed our lives forever. And we will always be eight minutes and forty-six seconds too late for George Floyd. We refuse to wait for the right time because the time is now. I want to credit our assistant principal, Darren Evans. We were brainstorming what we were going to do at our opening staff meeting and he said, would it be crazy to address the things that were going on in the world at the time? And I said, no, that's not crazy at all. So one of the big concerns that the teachers had when we started this work, they seemed to really enjoy it. We, we had built in about forty-five minutes of talking about what had been going on in the world and how that was impacting us and our kids. And, but one of their concerns was, this might be too hard or too scary for the students. These concerns were valid. I felt, you know, we were like, yeah, we don't know. We don't know how the students are going to feel. So we thought, what do we do? We asked them. So we gave them a survey and we said, do you think it's important that school provides us with the time and space to talk about racial and social injustices? I don't know if you know many middle schoolers, but they are very, very honest. And it's something that I love the most about them. They always tell the truth and they don't sugarcoat. And ninety-seven percent of our students said that they wanted to do this in school. Ninety-seven percent. This was about four hundred students who answered the survey. So as Mr. Evans said, we had a student mandate. It's not that it's important to do it, it's that we must do it. So part of this process is we keep collecting information from our students and our teachers because we really feel like we need to know how they're feeling and how things are going. So after the first two advisory discussions we had on race and racism, and Mr. Kabakungan is going to share a little bit more about that, we asked the teachers, like, I mean, we asked the students, how's it going? Did, was it beneficial? And again, ninety-three point six percent of students said they felt the discussions have been beneficial, which is a lot. So, and then, oh, another part of that survey was we, we did an open-ended question at the end. And we just said, do you have any other feedback for us about how these are going or how you feel about having these? And this is what they said. And it was just said, do you have any other feedback for us about how these are going or how you feel about having these? And this is what they said. Ooh, she sounds smart.
It's very uncomfortable to talk about, but it's a topic that we should talk about.
I think that it's very important to take the time and talk about these important events that are going on in the world.
The feedback I give our school for advisory discussions are a hundred percent because they don't play around and they focus and make sure that everything is great. They make sure no one is hurt.
It's like a normal discussion, except about bigger matters.
These discussions are all good and very helpful and I am thankful to the school for that.
I think it is right to take time to talk about racial justice and stop racism for once.
I think you guys are doing a great job, especially the teachers and how uncomfortable they must feel to talk about this. You all are doing this a great job.
We had over one hundred positive comments made by the students about the equity work after just two discussions. We also had some other feedback, it was very little, but it was, it was kind of sweet and I wanted to share it just to be very authentic. One student said, it's great, but it's kind of weird talking about it. That's fair, right? One student really called this out and I thought, I think this is worth sharing because I think we need to potentially own up to things like this. This student said, I feel like, why are you guys starting all this stuff right now? And this racism stuff been going around for years. It's because you see it all over the news and you feel like you need to do something because you don't want to seem like the bad guys not talking about it. Right? I, I, I appreciated it. I really appreciate the honesty. And what I heard from that is this has been going on for years and it's just reminded me again, the time is now. And then one student said, I think we should have longer passing periods. So maybe not sure what feedback about advisory discussions meant. So we kept asking for input. We actually gave seven lessons, or seven discussions on race and racism, intersectionality bias, a lot of wonderful, amazing stuff, deep, deep work. And then we decided, okay, I think it's time to check in with them. How's it going? Do you want to continue with this or what do you want to talk about? And I, I just, I love getting the information from the students and this is something that we really committed to on our building equity team is to hear the voices of our students and, and act on that feedback. So the next round, the students asked for the next round of advisory discussions to be focused on mental and emotional health. And I think I really just wanted to make sure I shared that because I wanted you to hear from them about how much they're hurting right now. So and they, I just, and I also am proud of them that they reached out and said, we need help with this. The second highest preference was to continue with the racial identity, intersectionality and racial justice. So I was really happy to hear they weren't done with that conversation and neither were we. So we're going to figure out how to entwine those as we continue through the years. So another thing we did, obviously, is we need to get feedback from teachers. They're such an important part of this equation in this work. So it was bumpy at first and I'm going to talk about that a little bit later. But the feedback in the last couple of months from the teachers includes some things like this. This is Mr. Wastafaro. He said, I want to say thank you for the work you have done with the equity team. It has made a huge difference, not only in my life at work, but the students' lives. Really, I cannot say enough for the work you have done. It's really touching. Oh, middle school teachers also like middle school students, really honest and not, don't sugarcoat, which I also really love. So it, it really reminded me of my restorative justice hero, Principal Suzanne Caverly. She said, RJ, the art, an important RJ understanding is that you do things with people, not to or for them. So this was really important to us, that we were doing this with the teacher, teachers. So and some other feedback that was really powerful. We, we've been embedding staff meetings about, around this work throughout the school year, which has been really hard and interesting to fit it in around all the distance learning strategies and instruction and excellence around that. We're just, we're a powerhouse school and it's, it's been really fun working with this team. So Ms. Madrona said, the notion of care is the root of racial proficiency. And I just read in that like how, how deep her understanding is getting about how important this work is. Ms. Behringer said, what stood out to me this morning is something that Mr. Evans said. There's pride and shame that comes with identity. Moving forward, I want to make sure that I remind students to be proud of who they are. Also from the article, I want to know who you are. You're not fully caring for kids if you don't know them. Isn't it awesome? Okay, sorry. Alright, so I wanted to just really express how important it was to have a team. So this isn't like Megan's thing or Darren's thing or Eric's thing, it's our thing. And luckily, I found a team of awesome allies and co-conspirators and this is them. So we've been doing the work together. They do this all outside of the school hours like we do, maybe lunchtime, after school. They were just really committed to doing this work and they're a wonderful team to work with and we couldn't have done what we've done without them. So I'm going to hand it over to Eric and he's going to talk a little bit more about the process of developing the curriculum. I'm going to wipe this down for you because I love you.
Hi, everyone. So like what Megan said, our team are just so collaborative and they're so flexible with their time. And we wouldn't have produced what we had if it weren't for them being open meeting during their lunch, meeting after school and keeping the lines of communication open via texts and calls. We just have such a wonderful group of leaders that helped made our equity work a system-wide effort. Now, this is just a diagram to show you how our work has evolved. So if we start at the very bottom, there was this collective urgency to address racial and social injustice, right? And this led our team into exploring different topics, important topics to cover with our students and staff. And it made them talk this over with our staff. They even modeled and presented these discussions with the staff before they had it with the students. And we got feedback from our students and our teachers and we use that feedback to drive our work more and continue the development of content. So as you can see over here, the first few topics that we agreed upon for race and racism and Black Lives Matter. So our team really dived in. They really dove in with courage. I mean, the first topics, again, race and racism, Black Lives Matter, very crucial topics. And they were able to address these topics by sharing the resources that they've had, that they've researched. And some knew more than others and that's okay. We learned from each other, right? So we adopted even a few things from the BLM curriculum from the NY City schools. So this is something that some of us didn't know about, but our wonderful teacher, Chelsea Spiller, introduces to us. And again, we use this to help out with our work. So in the midst of planning, this is something important to, to mention. In the midst of our planning, we recognize the importance of building tolerance. And by tolerance, I mean the ability to handle oneself in uncomfortable conversations, knowing that it's okay to experience discomfort, to expect and accept non-closure and to really just create a space for everyone to participate in these hard discussions. So this led to the development of courageous conversation norms and these norms could be found at the beginning of every advisory discussions that we have. So this is something that's reviewed to our students. So these are all the topics that we've covered so far. And I want to point out that these are topics that evolved over time. This, these aren't topics that we came up with right away. An important part, I mean, I just want to say again, like this was a process, right? An important part of this process was designating time in staff meetings for our team to present and model these advisory discussions with our teachers so that they are better equipped to facilitate and handle these discussions with students. So as Megan also previously mentioned, we use these feedback from staff and students to develop topics and to continue our work with our slide decks and our discussions. So again, it became a system-wide effort. So I want, this is very important. I want to say that words matter. At the very beginning, our advisory discussions were not called advisory discussions. We call them advisory lessons. And we gravitated towards that name because we had such a handful of advisory discussions in the past. So that's what we call them. But there's a certain connotation to the term lessons, right? There's this obligation to know most, if not all, of what that lesson is about. But that's the thing, these aren't lessons. We don't need to know everything. We don't. We are creating a space for ourselves and students to discuss what has been going on in our community and around the world. So we really just want to encourage our staff and students, let's just learn from each other. We might not be on the same page about certain things, but let's just have a space to talk about this. And again, it's the students' mandate. They do want to talk about this. Ninety-seven percent of our students want to talk about racial and social injustice. So this is not about pushing a political agenda. This is about just opening a space for our students to talk about what they want to talk about. So our work led to affinity groups. Our wonderful teachers came up with these clubs. We have so far the LGBTQ plus club, we have the Black Student Union Club and we also have the Latin America Club, that is our most recent. These are three of the seven affinity clubs slash groups that we have at our school. So these are just wonderful. By the way, aren't these flyers beautiful? These flyers are ju, I just want to point that out. It's not that I made them or anything. I did, I did, I did, I did. Okay, so we are doing the hard work. I want to say that we are doing the hard work. Our team did the hard work by collaboratively creating these slide decks for discussions and our teachers, our teachers did the harder work by using these slides decks to facilitate these discussions with their students. So this slide, for instance, is from our defining racial identity advisory discussion. It encouraged teachers and students to reflect on the various parts of their identity and acknowledge the differences and similarities that everyone has. It encouraged teachers and students to share their stories and really reflect, really reflect on how parts of their identity have made their lives easier or harder. Students reflected on systems that harm their identities. But more importantly, students were encouraged to think about ways to prevent our identities from being harmed and value diversity because that's what it's about, right? At our schools, we want to value diversity. So the advisory discussions are helping to create this environment of courage. Students are continuing to develop their courage as they continue to participate in these advisory discussions and share their thoughts and feelings. Exploring each other's racial identities, stereotypes and talking about bias and BLM are not things that are easy to talk about. But the fact that our students and our staff are taking the risk to just create this open space to discuss them, show their valiant character. And I also want to say that this also proves that this work is possible and it can be done. Now, it's not all glamour, but it's the important work. So it is possible and I really do believe that this improves the quality of education in our schools. Alright, I'm going to go ahead and defer back to my colleague, Megan Traver. Do you want me to wipe? Alright, I will wipe. Alright. Safety first.
Isn't he awesome? I'm biased, but I'm right back.
So I wanted to make sure that I did take just, just a little bit of time. I didn't want to act like this was all unicorn dust and rainbows and fluffy pillows and whatever. It's, it was not. It was very hard. And in fact, And in fact, we really got off to a great start in September. We had a team. I invited everybody to join. The people joined. We talked. We had a vision. We shared our why. I mean, we just did great work. And it was, but it was behind the scenes because it was in this group, right? But, it was time to share it with the staff. So, what we did is we created two advisory lessons is what they were at the time. We actually created three. We only got through two at that staff meeting, cuz you know what happened? Oops, crashed. Like, we got derailed because people kinda freaked out. And I just wanna be honest, this is not easy stuff. And we didn't really exactly know what we were doing or how to do this. So, we were just kinda putting one foot in front of the other. But, the teachers really reacted to the first two lessons cuz we went hard. We talked about race and racism. We talked about systemic racism. We talked about tough stuff. We had videos that were really intense and, like, important and correct and right and true. But, I didn't think, so, they kinda were just like, "We're not ready for this." And it was, it was very surprising to see the people who really felt not ready for this because we thought they were gonna be like super excited. That's always a hard thing for me when I hit that wall with people. Like, I'm like, "You're gonna be excited" and they're like, "We're not." But, so what happened was, you know, I made a lot of phone calls that day and I find like that's a really big part of my job is talking to people and just listening to them. And it was really, really eye-opening. And what I found out is that they didn't know we were gonna be jumping into the deep end. They thought we were like Equity Lite, you know? They didn't know we were going all in. And I was like, "Oh, you didn't know we're going all in?" And they said, "No, we didn't." So, once we kinda talked through that, they just, it's, they were like, "Okay, well then, we're going all in. Let's do this." And honestly, it just took that day. But, after, it was one of the toughest staff meetings I'd ever led. I just didn't really know what to do. I felt like, "Oh, my gosh, do we have to throw in the towel on this?" It was that tough. But, you know, luckily, I had had those conversations with those teachers and I realized they just needed to kinda talk through it and have some more time with it. And that, and then now, it's just they're really on board and they often quote like, "I'm really glad we're in the deep end." So, also, some teachers said they didn't feel well-equipped enough to lead these discussions. So, and that's when we really shared and imparted this perspective of, "You don't have to have the answers," just like Eric was telling you. It was just opening up space for the conversation and it was really about listening to the kids. And that's where it kinda shifted. And then, we were also excited for the teachers to get this experience of learning from the kids and learning about this experience, like that student who said, "This has been happening all along and you haven't been talking about it." So, it was time to listen. And then, Chris Itzen will remember that our work made its way to social media. Not in a good way. There was a slide, we were talking about some potential implicit biases and a student took a screenshot of it and then something got all over social media. And they were like, "What are they doing over there? They're teaching students how to be biased." It was really like, "Oh, no, that got misread." And then, we realized too, every single slide now, we know could go into the public. So, that was a good learning. It actually ended up being a really great thing. One of the groups that was really concerned is the Westside Group on Facebook. And they were very concerned in what's happening at Stevens. And so, I actually joined the group and then responded and explained what we were doing. And it opened up this really broad, wonderful community conversation and then a lot of supports from parents, like they were really like, "Yeah, my student came home, you know, my daughter, not came home, sorry. My student, my daughter finished up school for the day and was talking to me about this work and what they were doing and how it led to a conversation at their house about it." And it just, it was amazing because it ended up having like a much higher level of community understanding. So, I guess you gotta hit some bumps before you get where you need to go. So, where are we at now? So, this is, you know, it's been an exciting journey this year, all at once, huh? So, we've run ten school-wide advisory discussions since October, which is a lot, right? That's so exciting. Teachers have been, become increasingly confident and competent with the discussions. And I just wanna give a huge shout-out to them because they have been so courageous and they've been willing to take risks and do this work even when it's really, really hard. So, I'm so grateful to them. I think they see that it's paying off and that the students like it. The students are engaged and invested in the work. And we've asked for and acted on feedback from students and staff and I think that's really critical. So, what's next is we need to do some more surveying. So, we're at, we've done another round of discussions. So, we'll ask everybody, "How's it going? What do you need? What's next?" We need to keep the work alive. I really keep thinking about George Floyd. I just have to hold him in my heart cuz we're getting to the point where we can get distracted again. We can start going out to dinner or talking about the logistics of having kids in person. I don't wanna lose the importance of this work, so we must, must keep it alive. We're also preparing to have these discussions in person and addressing that that might feel a little bit different and look a little bit different. We're also looking forward to doing a deeper dive with the teachers. We need to really talk some more about implicit bias and privilege. And then, another thing we're really excited about is we'd really like to have students to create and lead some of these discussions. So, it's time to hand it over to the students cuz they're amazing and they can do it. So, this is a quote that Eric brought up for us and it says, "Creating the space to talk about race can open the way for some of the most powerful learning and change that you and your students will ever experience." That's it, friends. Thank you.
Megan, before you leave the podium, let's entertain any questions that the board would like to ask you and then you don't have to keep cleaning.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, we are gonna make it about you, Megan, even though you said it's not about you and the team. Megan, I love this presentation, first and foremost, because it's a good example, not the only example, but a good example of the difference between lifting up student voices and centering student voices, right? So, although it's necessary to have spaces, right? It's what comes out of those spaces that really upholds the commitment, right? To centering around student voices. So, one quick question and then a bigger question. What's the demographic makeup at Stevens?
So, we're about eighty percent Latinx, ten percent African-American, and ten percent Asian Pacific Islander.
Okay, I thought so and I actually cheated and asked Chris before asking you.
Did I get an A on my quiz?
You got an A+.
Yes.
And you can tell the person that put the video together that they got an A+ as well. Thank you. So, I think the importance of this intersectionality, right? The approach as a part of, that's why I asked the question about student makeup at Stevenson, as a part of our conversations around race and racism, is that that also becomes a space, and this is, I'm going to the question here, conversations around ableism, around immigration status, right? Around other social constructs. But, we have a large percentage of our students with a disability, right? And so, I'm thinking of a part of this approach is, and it's related to what's next. What would you share, not just about the bumps, right? In terms of the environment of courage with other principals and other school teams? If we wanted to, as Dr. Lund started off, sort of either scale or take best practices, what do you need from us, right? Either as a board or as a district, to have those spaces of courage, right? Appeal to, but also nurture those tough conversations at other schools? And as important, what comes out of those tough conversations? So, you have the floor here, principal. What do principals need and what would you like to share in us taking these things into account?
Well, first, I really wanna thank you for that question because it's a very kind and generous question. And a really big part of doing this work was knowing that you had our backs. And I honestly, I can't say enough for that. Because I've had, I think, just one parent concern this year, I mean, about the equity work. And it was really easy to be, you know, I just, we never, it's, we didn't get to the point where they had to go to you, but I knew if they did, that you would be there for us. And that equity is so important to you. So, if you can please just continue having that voice about our district and our priorities that really supports our work and it supports us in taking risks. So, I did have a teacher, you know, ask me, I think because the work was really difficult. He said, "Is this a district policy? Is this district work?" And I got to say yes, cuz it was. And I just really appreciate that cuz it's so important. Does that help? Okay.
I just wanna say how wonderful it is that you had a student-led conversation and you were literally listening to the student voices. And I think the evolution of the discussion from being something the teachers were behind to now you're gonna be kinda handing it over to the students also is a testament to the work that you do, that you value the students, that you trust them to kind of drive their own learning, their own education. And I just wanna say thank you. Thank you for taking that risk. Thank you for being strong in that. And I would like to see this happen at all of our schools. I think this is something that should happen at all of our schools. And like you said, it's not something that we talk about once and we put it behind it like, "Check that box, we did that." This is an ongoing conversation and this is something that ties right in with having books that reflect the communities at our schools. It's also having those discussions that reflect the communities at our schools. So, thank you very much for doing that work.
It's my honor. Thank you.
And I just wanna echo those comments. Yes, Eric, and I wanted to address your flyers. Because while it seems trivial, you put together something that was beautiful and engaging and caught students' attention and honored the affinity groups to which they belong. So, it wasn't just that you put out information. You invited visually students into a space to have conversations and welcomed them there. So, thank you for the beauty of those flyers. It wasn't trivial.
Yeah. Yeah, we don't wanna lose him to graphic design, so. I just, I told him he could get another job, but it'd have to be outside of work hours. Cuz we need him. You can see why. Thank you. Anything else?
Could you, could you give us some examples of courageous conversation norms?
Yeah. Come on up.
So, some of the norms that our students are consistently reviewing, one being staying engaged. So, being present mentally and emotionally. Another is expecting and accepting non-closure, and I had mentioned that. So, letting students know that, "Hey, we might not finish this conversation, but there will always be space to continue it at a later time." So, expect and accept non-closure. And also, it's okay to experience discomfort. That was also one of our courageous conversation norms. And I believe the last norm is to just honor privacy. So, what is said in this space is confidential and we need to respect each other and we need to be open to these discussions. So, those are some of our courageous conversation norms.
Great, thanks.
Thank you.
We giggled cuz that was one of our slides, but we took it out cuz of time. Anything else?
Yeah, I was very much humbled at the work that's going on at Stevens. I was unfamiliar with the classes or the workshops that were being hosted, but it resonated with me pretty heavily as I could say that my most poignant racist interaction happened to me when I was in junior high. And I can still feel at this moment the emotional unfamiliarity on how to address it. I mean, it was humbling, to say the least. And so, for me, as a young man, I was probably eleven or twelve years old at the time, having this very visceral interaction with somebody who disrespected me and my family due to a childish mistake, really left me in a space of frustration, left me in a space of disappointment, left me in a space of distrust of people that didn't look like me. In all honesty. And so, I was fortunate enough to have a parent who recognized how much that interaction affected me. And my mom did a very good job of, in some strange way, giving me a landing spot for those emotions and knew that, unfortunately, this wasn't gonna be the last time. And knowing that this moment was going to be a moment that I'd remember forever. Regardless, I've recognized in that moment that at minimum, the skillset that I was taught was the accepting of non-closure to a certain extent. And so, my question is, is that when we're talking about these discussions with kids between the ages of, as young as, I'm assuming, ten to thirteen years old, how are we providing them a landing space and/or at minimum, the skillset to accept non-closure, I guess? That's my question. As, I think that these are very important topics. I just wanna make sure that if there's young men and young women that felt anything like I did and they're experiencing these in their lives, that they're also getting some form of tools that they can take into the world on an everyday basis.
Yes. So, thank you. And I thank you and I'm really grateful that you have a seat at the table. So, we're ready to talk to students about having a seat at the table and how empowering that is because that's how we're gonna really start to tackle systemic racism. Is we need our students to be empowered. We need you at the table. And as far as providing a landing strip or a landing space for those emotions, I think right now, we're really just making space for them in terms of having those feelings. Because when you said that, you know, I wonder, you know, how many people had had an experience like you had? And then, unfortunately, I feel like a lot of our students have. So, we just need to first make some space for it and then we are providing tools. Like, where do you go with that? You know, and I think, we're trying to make a connection right now to education because that's a way to be empowered and have a seat at the table and really making that, right? Cuz it's kinda living in the moment. When you're twelve, you're in the moment. That's, your brain's not even fully developed. So, it's making those connections and long-term connections and the importance of being excellent and showing up and working hard and we're here to love you through those things, like all your teachers and all of your administrators are here to support you. And I think that's, that's the kind of thing that I felt like would be our first step in that. I don't know if that answered your question. Kind of. Well, how about this? I'm working on it. That's a real, I mean, I don't really have all the answers, but I think what you do, what you really are bringing up is a wondering about what we can do next. So, I appreciate that.
And Board Member Miller, I'm thinking too, that toolset, I think, can be part of that conversation amongst principals, right? Given, again, the different demographic makeup of the schools. But, I think from a community perspective, that we as a district can affirm that education is indeed a political act, alright? And that when it's done right, it can be a revolutionary project, right? And again, the, how we, again, frame and define that, you know, yet, yes, our educational system is a political act. I'm sorry, a political project. The act of it are spaces like this, right? What we do about it, to Mr. Otto's point, is where, again, the policy, the budget considerations to be able to support this work if we're truly committed to equity, not just in that space, but district-wide. So, you know, I'm thinking about that, Eric. And to me, that's where we uphold that, we affirm that education is a political act.
I also kind of wonder what the students would say, they would need. So, you triggered my thinking around asking them. So, thank you. Alright, thank you.
Let me just wrap up by thanking both Megan and Eric for sharing the Stevens story. Obviously, if we had more time, I would invite other stories from our other middle schools that have taken similar, yet different approaches to this topic. I think the building relationships part of this has long-term positive effects. Creating the space for students to lift up their voices and create a stronger relationship, that rapport, that teacher-student rapport, that can then carry over into the classroom. So, these are their classroom teachers leading this work and it's across every classroom. So, I'm very excited about the systemic aspect, that the way that Megan and her team have approached this. We know that there's work that we're doing as leaders, as both Brian and Megan alluded to in terms of what we do as a leader to build our own equity framework around our leadership dispositions. Then, there's also the work we're doing with staff. And I think Megan alluded to that in terms of the bumps that you engage in and that the work has to happen with staff first to be able to have those conversations with students, to create the space for students to have that voice. And I think you see that progression in the work we do as leaders, the work we do with teachers, then the work we do with students and how we carry it into the classrooms. So, we've addressed this at our level through, of So, we've addressed this at our level through a variety of different means. So, Megan was part of a quit that was working specifically on restorative practices. We've had quits on social-emotional learning around self-efficacy and self-management. We had a chronic absenteeism quit. So, this is part of our systemic work of building capacity of leaders to then share best practices with each other. So, know that the sort of experimenting that we're doing across schools right now is going to be shared, so that other principals that are ready to move into the work, when they feel as a leader that I'm ready to move into this, they can find that pathway with which they can take that next step. So, that's really important. So, know that that is occurring at different stages throughout our schools, depending on where the leader is and where the staff is in the work.
Okay.
Dr. Lund, do we know how many schools have begun the work? Is it just Stevens, or do we have other middle schools?
No, it's a large number of schools. I think it's the specific work that, you know, Suzanne Cavali's doing at Stanford with her staff. I think about the work that Dr. McGee's doing at Jefferson with her staff. So, it's, once again, it takes some different forms, that the way that they've addressed it. And I think, just like Brian's story with Nicole and how she's addressing it through curriculum, you might have, you know, that occurring in certain schools versus addressing it through these topics of discussion. Jefferson does a Weekcare Wednesdays that they've built out to address social-emotional learning and equity. So, it's taking different forms in different schools, depending on the stage of the work that they're in. And oftentimes, with the amount of time that you've had with the staff. So, this is Megan's second year at Stevens, and it's a little bit easier to address when you have at least a relationship you've already developed with a staff. So, I would say it's part of that progression. But it is occurring across a majority of our schools right now.
Dr. Lund, you talked about quit teams. Could you just explain that in laypeople's terms?
Quality improvement team, that basically principals taking on the lead to teach each other, reciprocal teaching, if you will, of leading the work and best practices within that work. All right, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Camarino and his team from Renaissance.
And as Jay's coming up, just want to acknowledge a couple of things. First of all, thank you, Megan and Eric, for being in the room with us and to Nicole and Deanna for the excellent work. It is really important that we see the partnership of how teachers and principals lead together. That doesn't always take place, but these are great examples of how important teacher leadership is. It's why part of our leadership pipeline cultivates teacher leadership. Eric's actually a person who has gone through our pipeline program, so just to see that as part of this system. And I think to your question, Deanna, how much is this going on across schools? So, I do want to go back to something that Megan shared, the backdrop of working with our administrators first around implicit bias, around their own leadership dispositions, and how that work also led us in to every single school, elementary, middle, high school, having a problem of practice around equity that they were working at, specific to their school site, every school, which then created the space for collaboration across schools. And so, what you heard and what Chris talked about, these quality improvement teams, there's a version of that at each level. There's collaboration across schools. So, Megan's leading in this area, someone's leading in another area, and the way that each level brings principals together, and that we do also at a K-12 level, is that teaching and growing practice inside our own district with a belief that we're building our own capacity. And oftentimes, the answer is in the room, in the local context for doing the work here. Sometimes, small scale to large scale. Sometimes, we're going at something all together at the same time, is a really powerful signature of the work that we do in our district. And by the end of today, you're going to see this next generation around working with teachers in that same way. All right.
Thank you, Dr. Baker. She pretty much had a little bit of my introduction in there because one of the things that Dr. Baker has reminded us of since the beginning, when she was Deputy Soup, working with a level office is that notion of coherence. And so, there is a lot of that work in the buildup that our elementary schools do, our K-8s and our middle schools to our high schools. And I'm proud to be a part of the culmination of the work that we're doing together. And just always to remember that in this work with social-emotional learning and equity is our other level office, other departments that are also leading the work with data, Dr. Cale's department with looking at our unit guides, especially when I look at our freshmen, their first semester, first quarter unit guide talks about American voices and what it means to be American. So, Dr. Cale and her team have really, again, just building upon what's happening from elementary through high school, really building the work that we're doing together. And I want to commend her team for doing that because the conversations that we've had, the privilege to sit in on as principal supervisors and walking classrooms with our principals, the dynamic discussions that all of these students are having from elementary through middle, it continues on in high school. And the one thing I will leave you with is that, you know, the one thing about equity that we want to make sure everyone understands is that when we ask our pathways in our high schools to be certified, whether they're silver or gold-certified pathways, it's not a mandate from the district, but it's really equitable experiences that our students are going to receive when they're in our pathways at all of our high schools. So, really, that certification of our pathways is really a key piece in ensuring that all of our students have those equitable experiences in all of our pathways. I wanted to highlight that. So, as well as our team, as mentioned, from elementary, middle, and K-8, we have a lot of schools that are really showing the work that we want them to be doing, not just during a pandemic, but especially during a pandemic, of how challenging it is to reach out to our children, our students during this time. So, I'm proud to have Renaissance and the team come up to really share what they've done, to reach out and really connect with our students during a global pandemic, with Mr. Tran and his experiences. Ms. Itzen and Mr. Navia are going to talk about how they were able to bring the arts alive during a pandemic for the students and how they communicated and engaged the community and the students. So, Mr. Navia, I believe you're going first, so I want to welcome you to our presentation.
Good morning, Madam President, distinguished board members, Dr. Baker, executive staff, and community. Thank you so much for allowing us to represent our high schools. And as we talk about Renaissance, I consistently absolutely want to say that all of our high schools are doing this work. I talk to our principals regularly and many of the other teachers. And I know that there's amazing, great work happening in our classrooms and across our entire district. My name is Michael Navia, and I am the Principal of Renaissance High School for the Arts. And before I went further, I wanted you to know a little bit about Renaissance. We are currently about 460 students. We have arts in dance, drama, chorus, art, instrumental music, costume design, creative writing, and we are adding film. Our demographics, as you could see up there, is 62% free and reduced lunch, 52% Hispanic. Well, I'm not going to read it to you, but it's right up there. Our A-through-G rates, we're very proud that they are rising. And our graduation rates up there is something that is really a cornerstone for us. It says 95 and 96, but the records that we have as a school is 100%. I think that might have been for maybe a couple of schools, or excuse me, students that may have gone into alternative education. But for the last about three or four years, we've had 100% graduation rate. One thing that I wanted to definitely point out, that, again, we're really proud of, is that according to U.S. News and World Report, Renaissance is one of the top, in one of the top 10% of high schools in California and number three in Long Beach Unified. So, we're very, very proud of that. Okay, so, a year ago, as all of you know, our worlds were absolutely turned upside down, and we all had to adjust to the new normal. We were initially informed that we would be out for five weeks. And I remember that, and I think all of you do. And we didn't really have a lot of answers to so many things. There were just questions. And students asked me questions, parents and staff members. I didn't have a lot of answers at the time. I don't think any of us did. But, you know, of course, it was, what is COVID-19? What is distance learning? How long will our students be out of school? One student asked me, and I thought was actually the funniest question because they said, what happens if we run out of toilet paper? I don't know. I don't know what we're going to do about that. But with all those questions, Dr. Baker has consistently reminded us is that the one central question that we want to answer as a school and a school system is how are the children? We went on a lot of home visits. During our first quarter, we saw, you know, a large dip or a large rate of Fs. And I think many schools did that across the nation. And we were really concerned, obviously. What stood out is many of our students who really had high GPAs, you know, 3.0 or higher and consistently getting multiple Fs. We needed to get to the bottom of it. And one of the first things we did is just really, we wanted to engage with our students. One big thing, I went out with our counselors, our school psychologists, and we did home visits. And it was so incredibly enlightening. It gave me, after, even after all of my years in education and 21 years as principal, I think it was probably one of the most eye-opening experiences that I've ever had when I would walk into their space and see the struggles that some of our students had to have, where it was, you know, five other siblings there trying to learn together in one space. And, you know, I immediately knew that their English grade or their math grade wasn't the number-one priority. It really was the social-emotional learning part. How are we going to get through this? How are we going to eat? How are we, I want to see my friends. I'm really disconnected with school. To see that firsthand was shocking and really made us put a priority into how are we going to take care of our students? So, in the beginning, as, again, most of you know, and I'm sure experienced, they struggled. We all struggled with so many things. I won't go into detail, but I think we know that it was tough around this time last year and into the beginning of the fall. What really stood out to me, and especially when I spoke to kids, it was that much of the joy that our students had from school was taken away. So, you know, of course, we put a lot of time and energy into, in our curriculum and what we are learning, and we're working on that. I'm a part of a committee with Dr. Cale about cultural-relevant curriculum, and I knew that was incredibly important. But for our students, right now, it was the social-emotional learning. So, Renaissance doesn't have a demographic neighborhood area. We get students from all over. It's a school-of-choice school. But what that means for our students is maybe one or two students from many different middle schools come to our school. And when they come as freshmen, they don't know anyone. And what we do, I think, well, I know very successfully because of the amazing staff that we have, is we really integrate them into our school culture. We do a lot of activities with them. You know, we really emphasize the caring nature and the love that we have at Renaissance together. Many of our students, obviously, are there for the arts. Some of our students just want to come to a small school, and some are just very unique and didn't really want to go to a big school and just wanted the comfort of a small-school setting. We didn't get that opportunity to be able to integrate them into school. And as you'll see a little bit, we've done some activities with them in a different way. So, gone were the time with the friends, the lunchtime with friends, the sports, musicals, dances, all kinds of performances. And two really important rites of passages for our seniors, which was, of course, prom and, of course, graduation. So, it was tough. So, again, we've made absolutely teaching and learning a priority, but we really wanted to take care of the whole child. And I wanted Mr. Tran and Ms. Itzen to talk a little bit about some of the fun stuff that we've done. Again, when we talked to our students, it was that motivation piece. Yes, they, you know, they're in their Zoom class, and they're learning, and they know that it's important. But all the pieces, and I say this often, I said, if you look back at your schooling and you look back at high school in particular, I don't, I mean, even though I was an English teacher, I don't think that I would have said, oh, this, it was a very specific lesson that I learned in that specific class or in my English class or anything. It was really, so much of it was part of that social aspect that really helped our students with the social-emotional learning. Again, I want to make sure that everyone knows that it's not happening just at Renaissance. It's happening all over, and I'm really proud of what our high schools are doing all throughout our district. All right, Mr. Tran, come on up.
Good morning. Can you hear me? So, this is a little bit different because usually, the students are making the presentation for me. And I'm on the other end of it. So, I use this as a teaching moment for my students. And I told them, so I've been sharing this slideshow with them and telling them that the presentations never stop. So, can I make it full screen? Okay. Uh-oh. So, good morning. My name is Mr. Tran. I teach at Renaissance High School 11th and 12th Grade English and also Creative Writing. I have a little bio I'd like to share with you. Thanks. I am a K-12 LBUSD grad. I forgot to put Bret Hart on there. I think I went to a little bit of kindergarten there. So, that's my school background. That's me at 15, by the way. Okay? This is just a random slide, so I don't feel so nervous, but I really, really love basketball. And that's me playing at Pauli. Okay? My guiding question for this presentation is on the board, but what has the pandemic been like for teachers and students and how has it affected teaching and learning? The first word or adjective I could come up with was isolating, both for the teachers and for the students. I miss them dearly. I miss my staff. Any opportunity where we can come in to do the site visits or last Friday, we had an honor roll celebration, I will come in just to get glimpses of them. There's like a magic energy that you have with the students. And without it, it's hard to create an environment of joy and excitement. But on the positive side, it's just been also a time for empathy, experimentation, and creativity, even more so. And I've actually had a lot of fun, like tweaking the curriculum. And you know right away if the students are engaged or not, just like you're in the classroom, and how can you make it more so? I just want to give you an example of what we see regularly. So, here's an email I got from a student, let me think, last week. But I get this regularly. And I also got a message that was so recent that I couldn't even put it into the slideshow. So, I'll read it to you. This is from yesterday. "Hi, good morning. I'm so sorry, but I won't be able to make to your class today. I'm switching hotels today, and I won't have Wi-Fi until 3:00 P.M." So, what have we, the teachers, been doing, or at least myself? This is my priority every day. Prioritizing just their well-being, like Mr. Navia said. And the second bullet point I just added because I think it's important to be really intentional and obvious, in Zoom especially. Sorry, I didn't expect to get so emotional talking about this. And being direct and sharing, like, are you okay? And asking it regularly. And so, I ask, we do check-ins. And I just wanted to add, like what Mr. Navia said, following up on any irregular behavior. So, if students are absent a couple of times in a row, it's a canvas message or a phone call. If they're missing assignments. Something Mr. Navia pointed out was really interesting to me is sometimes it's those 3.0 and above students, and it's really dramatic. And of course, you would notice it because those are the students, I've been teaching them for three or four years, and you see irregular behavior. It stands out more. Yeah, and I'm thinking about those too because we just go through our, we're going through our tutoring lists and our who we want to follow-up list. So, it's hard because I see their faces. So, I know that this is a strategy for English-language learners, but I think it applies to English, or excuse me, to learning in general. So, I wanted to talk about, you know, why we prioritize the social-emotional learning and lowering the effective filter, which just goes back to my slide about when you're not in Zoom school, when you're not in Zoom, school's like fun and enjoyable. And that's how you get people to create the inputs. Okay, so, strategy number two. Because of our pathway, which is AME, arts, media, entertainment, I do think we have a distinct advantage or blessing because... I do think we have a distinct advantage or blessing, because I've just been trying to prioritize creativity, group engagement, a lot of listening and speaking because of their lack of social interaction. And I've always thought it's cool, as a practicing artist myself, that on Bloom's taxonomy, create is at the top. Right? Like, I don't know if it's ever emphasized that create is at the top. Create is where ingenuity comes from, whether it's in the arts or business or medicine. The highest level of showing your learning is to create something new or more effective. So some of the things we've been doing, or I've been doing, is I've had, I should actually change it to a guest teacher. We had a Zoom poetry reading. So on the left is really cool. If you see the highlight, that's actually Kathy Lynch, a Jordan grad, but by sheer coincidence, she volunteered to come teach our class. She's a published poet from the district. She runs a pretty well-known nonprofit arts organization in New York now. So it's cool because you can get a lot of talent to come into your classroom because they don't have, you don't have to pay lodging and airfare. And then on the right, that is our poetry reading. And so every student shared out, I think, a minimum of three poems from the unit. And that was really exciting. And it felt very formal and everybody got to share out their work and have a space to create. Number two is I used to do this event, I've been doing this event probably every year I've ever taught, so mock interviews, but this year we moved them online. And it's a great way to prepare their, it's only for seniors, prepare them for the job market and internship market and scholarship market. But why I really appreciate it is those are parents interviewing, school admin, district staff, and parents. I don't know if I said that again. And the ELA department will come. So I just want to shout out Stacy Leica and Jen Crockett. They've just been the best during this time, like, the best. So I don't have the Zoom shots. These are better shots from the year before. This is something that's happening right now. This is also ERWC unit. The unit is on fake news. And so I had them actually make fake news broadcasts in a comedic, you know, satirical style. They're really, really funny. So on the left are actually two of our valedictorians, and on our right is a student who's obviously camera shy, and she did it by puppet show. Yeah, the whole thing. And she had her nephew voice it. So it was like really, and they're coming in. The other one was a podcast, so it wasn't as visible, so I couldn't show it. So more evidence. So this is a ERWC unit on gender, gender, language, and culture. The students were given an opportunity to make art. And I always try to link our artistic units to writing or listening and speaking. So the writing component was a little more professional this time. Oh, there's some of the art, excuse me. I don't know if you could take a look, but on the left are album covers and songs. They're really funny. And then the writing component was to make museum placards. And there's actually like a standard form to it, that that was really cool, that they actually learned it. I just wish we could have printed them out and put them up in real life. Okay. And my data is, except for one class, which is an elective, my attendance is usually 90% or above. Some days, when I hit perfect attendance, on my odd days, I'll text Mr. Navia, like, today I hit perfect attendance. And that's for three periods. Yeah, it's shocking, right? It's just shocking. Can we play two minutes? It won't queue up? Oh. Well, it was just a testimony from a student about the staff and prioritizing the social and emotional learning. Is there more? Oh, there it is. And I think one of my takeaways from this in my years of teaching, I've been a teacher for over 10 years, but I've worked with young people for over 20, is this. And what I mean by that is so much of teaching is marketing. And I hear that phrase, this is your job and you're supposed to do it. And I don't know if that's the best marketing for school, if that makes any sense. Because it's not a really true analogy. We have a job. We all have jobs. You go to the job and you get paid, right? And so there's this direct corollary where even if you didn't want to go, you would, you have to, right? Because you have to pay your bills. So what I wanted to talk about is how I talk about school to the students is school is these things, right? It's a responsibility and investment. And what we've learned in the last year is it's a community, and that was what the pandemic took away from us. So jobs are part of the community, but it's not the whole thing. Is this going to queue up? Oh, my God, I'm afraid. So hold on, hold on. So Mr., we had a honor roll, honor roll, honor roll celebration last Friday. How many students do you think showed up? Like, over 100 students drove through our parking lot. We cleared out the lot. We passed out certificates. We played music. We cheered. We celebrated honor roll, perfect attendance, and all E's. So all the teachers, not just myself, we made a video. This is my video. And Mr. Navia kind of strong-armed me into putting it in. So this is a student video. Okay, I just want to say that. Cruising down the street with a 4.0, feeling real goofy because I'm honor roll. Went to the library to get some books, fresh backpack, always getting them looks. A car pulls up, who can it be? Renaissance squad taking all the APs. He rolled down the window and started to say, it's all about making that GPA. Because the kids in the quad study hard, need a good lawyer for killing a report card. Want to be something in life and be legit. Quote me, son. Phoenixes just don't quit. And entertain my students. That, I told myself, don't spend more than 15 minutes making it, because I'm going to be the new film teacher. I thought I should model that for the students. And so that was filmed, recorded in 15 minutes at home. So just two more slides. One is, I just want to just echo what Mr. Navia said about our teachers. I learned a lot of technical stuff in school. I just want, I just have to say this, but I've gone to school with Brian Moskowitz since elementary school. And, you know, he was actually my sports page editor. And you learn a lot of important technical skills in school. But when I think of my teachers, these are all LBUSD teachers. It's all about, like what he said, was how they made me feel. And This is so hard. Just having people believe in you is amazing. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Is it okay if I make a comment before we continue? I just want to mark the moment. And I'll get emotional too, because I'm a good crier. I want, I want to acknowledge and thank and lift up the teachers and staff and administrators. You shared some of the trauma that our kids are going through, that we have been listening to and we have heard from far away. But we know that teachers especially, and site staff, have not only carried their own trauma for what this year is for them personally, but you are carrying the trauma of sometimes hundreds of students in your hearts. There is not a day that teachers go by without getting messages like that. And I just want to lift up and acknowledge the sacredness of that. And thank you collectively, thank you out there and our teachers around the district for carrying so kindly and passionately and compassionately the lived trauma of our students this past year. I think it's super important, just in this really heavy, beautiful moment, to thank you for bringing it to us again, and to thank you for carrying those burdens this year.
Thank you very much, Board Member Kurt. Those sentiments are absolutely what we are all feeling, and we're here to communicate today. And obviously, we're looking at everything through a lens of excellence and equity, but we cannot ignore what is happening in every one of our lives and, and just the monumentous change to our norm that took place this year. So, and I do see that you're asking something, Board Member Miller.
Just really quick, since Megan already broke the rules, I might as well piggyback on it. Just to provide a little bit of levity here, that presentation was fantastic. And your video, I can't, I would be remiss if I didn't talk about that music video that we just saw. That was hilarious. And if you were shy about it before, I want you to know that now, not only is it public record, but now it's on YouTube. So.
I have to say as well, like, what you saw in that video is the real Mr. Tran, because this is a much more subdued version than the person that interacts with students that I get to witness on a daily basis. And I think that that's appropriate, absolutely, that he had that subdued nature. But truly, like, the video is Mr. Tran. So you know, and, and what is so important and what we're here to share today is how we've been engaging our students in this way creatively and differently than what we're used to. So I will take a moment to introduce myself. I'm Andrea Itzen to those of you who don't know me. I am the dean and pathway coordinator at Renaissance High School for the Arts. This is my first year at Renaissance. I have been at another school in Long Beach Unified for quite some time. I was at Milliken High School for, I think, 15, 16 years. Yes, go Rams. And I served as an arts teacher, as well as an activities specialist there. And so for me, moving to Renaissance was really exciting opportunity because now I have the opportunity to blend the arts, which I love, and the community and culture building, which I feel like I have a great level of background and expertise in. And so it's been really exciting to come and kind of take those two worlds and mesh them together at Renaissance, even in the midst of what we're going through. So what I wanted to do today, what we wanted to show you, is sort of how we've tackled some of the more creative challenges that we have faced. So we're all very much in tune with what's happening in terms of trends on social media. And again, being a person who's steeped in high school culture, we know that our students are on social media all the time. They're complaining about fatigue, but they're also on social media regularly interacting because what else can they do, right? This is how we're interacting. So I noticed a trend in social media. It was this idea of how it started and then how it's going. And this was typically sort of ironic and humorous posts where you have the how it started picture of like a happy, you know, person, and then how it's going, and the person looks like, you know, a pandemic hit them. And it's a way to sort of add some irony and humor to the actual challenges that we're all facing. So I wanted today in my presentation to kind of give you a taste of how it started and then how it's going. In the middle of that, how we've faced some of the challenges, how we've tackled some things. But most importantly, and what I'll talk about after you see a little presentation, is where we're going. Because I think that's super important. We have to keep hope. We know we will be back, and we want to be back bigger and better than ever. So I have prepared a short video recap today to kind of visually show you all of the things that we've been doing. And then I'll talk a little bit about those pieces once we're done watching the video. Fair warning, just like Mr. Tran, I'm not afraid to make a fool of myself if it will get a laugh and if it will engage students. And Mr. Navia is at expert level of this as well. So just fair warning, as you watch this, you are going to definitely see a sillier side of us, but I will give that a little context when we, when we come back.
Art is the freedom to create whatever you want to and whatever your mind desires, whatever you can create is art.
We always going to have art in every society. So that's also important to cultivate that with the kids. It enriches our life, personal lives and our community as well.
Everybody sing. All right, artists. It's up to you now. Your first year of high school can totally still be an amazing experience. You learn creativity, passion for our craft, and most of all, we have fun while we're doing it. We can't wait to meet all of you once we're finally on our campus together again. But in the meantime, we thought we'd introduce a few key teachers and staff members.
Well, I'm not much afraid of much. I am afraid of, but I do hate liars. I can't stand liars and cockroaches. Cockroaches, they kind of go hand in hand.
Hated the dark. I watched too many scary movies. I watched The Exorcist one time, and I never could sleep without the light on. It was, I hated the dark.
Big bugs and snakes and
Monkeys, like with a passion. I can't stand them.
Just having a water bug fly at you when you didn't know that they flew.
But cats, don't bring them around me. Thanks.
Welcome to Renaissance. Ms. Itzen here. Today, I'm not your dean of students. I'm just an Instagram influencer. You are dying to know what the expectations are for your Zoom. And don't worry, I got a certified young person who's going to lead you through all of the scenarios. Seriously, it's very, very, very important that you respect other people in your Zoom classes. And you're not doing things like taking pictures of them or like taking pictures of the teacher or something like that. Like cyberbullying is no joke. And it's a serious, serious offense. So don't get caught up. Don't, even though you think it's funny, don't get caught up taking pictures and texting them and doing all of that stuff. Because like, seriously, you really should just put your phone away while you're in your Zoom classes anyway.
Renaissance High School for the Arts Visual Arts Department is one of the best in Long Beach Unified. Students are offered many opportunities to exhibit their artwork within the Long Beach community and even beyond.
Renaissance High School is proud to offer an exciting course of study, the art of filmmaking. In this program, students will learn to produce visual stories that are artistically beautiful and technically brilliant, while gaining hands-on experience and skills using industry-standard cameras, lighting equipment, and expanded technical training, industry professionals.
Here in our program, we teach young designers to understand the importance of expressing their self and their creativity in everything they create.
We want you to be given real-life experience and exposure by successfully preparing you to enter the world of fashion and costume design.
Renaissance, where creativity meets passion.
All of you that, just so that you can obviously see how it started, how we've addressed challenges, how it's currently going, and obviously where we're going. So this is
So this is sort of a mixture of a lot of video work we've done all year in an effort to connect with our students and obviously to be silly with them. One thing I think that's really important to note is that Mr. Navia started at Renaissance last year. I started this year. Ms. White, another one of our counselors, just started this year. So these, some of the students literally have never met us. And their first touch with us was this. I think that's a good thing and I have the evidence of that because following this and we're talking about trying to connect with our students, we have, as Mr. Navia stated, made home visits. We've made weekly phone calls, home to students, emails, popped in on Zooms to speak with students directly. And so this was sort of our way of introducing ourselves and kind of breaking that ice down so that they knew they had a safe space and also people who were willing to be silly with them and to open up with them and to have fun with them, even from a distance. So that was sort of our, our way of introducing ourselves to the students. You also got to see our honor roll celebration, which we felt was super important this year, maybe even more than in years past. Because number one, how hard has this been for our students? How hard is it for them to achieve? And how just defeating to not feel that there's even a recognition on the other end? Like that you're not recognized for how far you've come and how hard you've worked and the challenges you've faced. So we wanted to make a big deal, which we did. We made, we had music and we had obviously pom poms and people dancing and we drove the students through and almost every student came through with a parent and almost every parent videotaped and cried. And so I think that that says something really special. Some of them were getting a perfect attendance award and not even an honor roll award, but perfect attendance or all ease. And celebrating those accomplishments of our students, I think, does so much for their soul right now and lets them know that they're seen, that we know how hard they're working, we appreciate them. And so I think it's been a really, as difficult as it has been, it's been a really, really encouraging year. We've had a lot of opportunity to reach our students in a way that we hadn't before. And then I think the most exciting thing, and that's the last piece that I will talk about, is where we're going. So when we talk about the questions of equity and excellence, when I arrived at Renaissance, we had to take a deep look at our school. We had to take a deep look at link learning. We had to take a deep look at our CTE courses of study. And we did recognize that we had some issues and some ways that we were maybe not providing equitable experiences to all of our students. That's a difficult topic to address. But I must say, if I can use the word unprecedented, we did have the unprecedented opportunity to have this time to really do that deep dive and the deep work and to really look into our data and look at where our students are needing the structure that we can build. And so that's where we came up with the idea of building our pathways. So for a long time, Renaissance has been seen as one pathway, which is the arts. But in that, you end up with a lot of students that that sort of do buffet work, like they try out a couple of different things, but they don't necessarily complete a full course sequence in one particular path of the arts. So again, we looked at our data and we saw that we are attracting a lot of visual arts students. So we were able to easily start to build courses of study in our Costume Fashion Design Program as well as our Visual Design Program. And then we had this one other little thought. We have media and marketing services on our campus. The opportunity for students to receive real-life work with another department within Long Beach Unified is not something we can pass up. It simply isn't. So that is where the advent of adding in a film pathway came. So now Renaissance will have three linked learning pathways. Beginning next year, we actually recruited for those three pathways this year. And we actually exceeded our number of first choice requests, which is really exciting for us with the incoming ninth grade students. In that, we are not losing our performing arts programs. We still are able to, thanks to a block schedule, offer robust performing arts programs where students can kind of do both. And I have to say, just myself, as an artist, I was that student who, obviously you can tell I am not shy. So getting up in front of people and singing and dancing was wonderful and I love doing all of that. But I also love to go draw or to do photography. And so we're able to really market to the full artist this way while providing them through link learning and through pursuing certification, as Dr. Camerino mentioned, an equitable education for every student that walks through our doors with the hope that they will go into arts industries, particularly film, fashion, costume design, or visual arts. So that is what I wanted to share with you today. One thing that I think you saw in the video, Renaissance is, we are phoenixes. And so when we were coming up with what are we going to kind of slogan our school and how are we going to package this about marketing our school? We really came up with that, that Hamilton theme of rise up. And we are phoenixes, so we plan to rise up and we are not going to throw away our shot. Thank you.
Again, I want to say thank you to Renaissance, Mr. Navia, Mr. Tran, Ms. Itzen, for all the great work and really highlighting the work that our staffs have done to reach out to students. And again, as everyone has mentioned and Ms. Kerr has mentioned also, thank you to all of our high school teams, middle school, elementary, and K-8 teams that have done so much that we couldn't capture in one board workshop for all the work that they've done to reach out to our students, our community, and bringing in our students during this pandemic. So we're happy to, again, conclude this portion of our board workshop and are open to any questions if you have any for us.
I don't have any questions, but I would like to thank you for presenting today. I want to thank you for everything you do that exemplifies the fact that our work is a work of heart. That to hear Mr. Tran that you are generally more, more dynamic and maybe less emotional than you presented today is wonderful because it just shows how much you care about your, about your students. And I have the good fortune of knowing Mr. Navia and Ms. Itzen from Milliken because you guys were there when my daughter was there. And I'm looking forward to a time when there will be a Renaissance graduation in person because I know what you were able to do at Milliken on a grand scale and how you impacted that ceremony. And, and that was just one of many aspects of the school culture that you impacted. So I'm very excited to see what will happen. I am so inspired by this morning's presentations, the, you know, the information that we've received, but mostly just being witness to the passion and compassion for our students. So thank you again for coming.
Oh, I just wanted to piggyback on the sentiments of Ms. Craighead in the sense that this was fantastic. I really appreciate you all going through the different dynamics of each component of our district. And I really appreciated the Renaissance presentation as well. A couple of days ago, I took my daughter to the beach and as we were driving home, we drove by Renaissance. And my wife saw the campus and she was like, what, what school is that? So I explained to her a little bit and some of the things that went there. And she was like, how in the heck did you not go there? That's, that sounds fantastic because I was talking about aspects of the arts and I like to consider myself at least a previous thesbian here. So when I talked about all of the great schools of that campus, she was quite impressed. I guess the part that I also appreciated about this presentation was when we were talking about student achievement. And I think that we often look at the district from a lens of aptitude and I don't want to take anything from that. But I do think that there is something that needs to be said about the experience created in the school district. And I think about my times in choir or in the, with acting and all of those great opportunities that enriched my experience within the Long Beach Unified School District. And I think that the Renaissance campus in particular does a really good job of that as not only, I wasn't a graduate, but with my previous work with students who graduated from Renaissance and their testimonials about the things that they experienced on that campus. It's definitely a great added component to our district. And so really proud of the work you all do. Thank you.
Well, thank, oh, go ahead. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, Mr. Miller, it's, it's even harder for me. I'm four blocks away from Renaissance, but it feels like it's like in another world, right? During this last year because there haven't been any students on campus. I want to go back to what Mr. Tran was sharing and what Mr. Navia also shared about visiting households. I think our community has heard from us, has heard from our executive staff. And as Board Member Kerr expressed, that experience of going to visit students, of reading emails about students having to change hotels and not have access to Wi-Fi, about students sharing that they have an aunt or an uncle that's been struck with COVID and they're going to have to take care of little cousins. We are still going to have a large percentage of our students virtually for the remainder of this academic year. And so I'm wondering, either Dr. Camerino, Mr. Navia, Ms. Itzen, Mr. Tran, this is an important moment for us as we are pivoting and celebrating in some ways, the return to in-person instruction for those households and families that were able to make that decision. Given what you just shared, right, the powerful perspective that you shared, can you talk a little bit more about those students that maybe didn't have the option or have things going on at home and how important it is for us to also not lose sight that yes, we're putting time and energy and resources into in-person instruction, but we have students that may not know where they're going to get their next meal, may not know where they're going to live tomorrow. And at the end of the day, on the ground floor, we still have teachers and staff interacting with those students. So, you know, kind of an open-ended question that as we're, you know, deploying every resource to in-person, how do we not lose sight of those powerful emotional perspectives that all of you shared?
Thank you for that question, Dr. Benitez. And I'm, I'll take it for the team here because I think we're all very much on the same page. Mr. Navia, myself, Mr. Omai, and Ms. White sort of make up our leadership team. And what I see, I think what we all see is absolutely what you're saying. When we have teachers back, they're going to be very focused on this transition and, and teaching in this sort of dual model to students that are on Zoom and then also students who are in the classroom. And the, the weight of that is going to be very heavy. So I think for us, we are, a lot of that work is going to fall to us. A lot of the work of continuing the home visits, continuing the reach out, the touch to the, the students who are at home, that is definitely going to be heavy on our plate as we come back. And considering the fact that typically when a school is in session and you have all of your students there, there are things that, that get you as an administrator or a leader, you, you get caught up with, right, during the day because you have supervision or you have these different things. But we know that that's going to be on a much less scale. So I think for us, it's like our cup may only come back half-full and it's our job to fill the rest of it with that deficit, with, with reaching out to those students, those families in the community. We also have a school psychologist who's with us two, two days a week? Yes. Who also is super strong in this. And one of the things that he has actually started that I'm going to be helping him with is art therapy sessions for students that are at home because we are artists. We have feelings, lots of them. And our mode of expressing them collectively has been taken away. So how do we, how do we address that? How are we going to fill that? I actually think it was a really genius idea that Mr. Lingan, our psychologist, and his interns came up with, is holding these virtual art sessions where we will actually go and deliver materials to the students' home with some instructions and then together on a workshop on Zoom, be making art with them just to give them the therapy that they would typically be getting on campus when they're creating. So I think to answer your question, and maybe I'm a little bit roundabout, we have ideas, but a lot of that's going to fall on us to be creative, to continue to look for creative ways. Because we know our teachers are going to be very, very weighted with their work and their responsibility. So that's on us, like then that's where we pick up the slack and where we fill the cup. So I believe that's, that's the answer that I would give. I think we're, we all agree, yes.
And Dr. Benitez, what I will share too is that in our online, online program and also in-person programs is that our students still have opportunities to come after school for whatever other extracurricular activities there are for students. So whether it's going to be intervention, whether it's going to be an activity, performing arts or a sport, students are still eligible to come on campuses to receive extra supports. We have a lot of schools who are opening up Saturday school programs for our students that won't be able to go during the school day per se. And also the other part that really has been essential is the work that we've done already with our work around male and female academy, our most, you know, at-risk student, at-promised students through the Urban Math Collaborative. So those are fostering as we move forward. The repurposing of our Dean of Students and they're working with our We Rise curriculum to help really move our students ahead that have been connected to or need to connect with the school. And what Mr. Tran also mentioned is that, that, you know, the first line of looking at and really checking in on our students is our teachers' recommendations to their counselors and our pathways, by pathway to check in on students and have those visits done, whether virtually or in person as we make home visits.
I think I heard your question and I'm processing it now. And we just, I think it's, we don't want the students on Zoom to feel like second-class citizens, second-class students. So I want to prioritize that and create the same environment we had when it was just online only. And just trying to be creative is how can we get the live students to interact with the home students and vice versa? So whether it's, hey, you're on Zoom, ask a question to a person in the classroom versus, and then the other way around, having the live students talk to the people at home. I wish there was multiple cameras now that I'm trying to envision it as a teacher because for the last three weeks since we've had the news, I've told the students at home, get used to seeing this because I'm going to have my computer turn this way and I'll talk to the live students here and you'll get to see hopefully my good side. But if there was another camera, that one was on us and then one was on the students because we could put the Zoom on the projector so that live students could see them. But there's no way for the home students to see the live students. I mean, I'm just trying to, you know, but definitely fostering interaction so that one group doesn't feel isolated or, you know, second-class for sure.
Well, anything's possible, Paul. Especially a little, an extra little camera. That certainly sounds like a possibility.
I just wanted to say one thing before I left because I don't obviously have a lot of opportunity to speak in front of all of you. But thank you. Thank you because I see it every day. I'm there and I know what all of you are doing for the students. I know unfortunately with, with so many unanswered questions, it's a lot of things are falling on your lap and, you know, why can't we do this? Or, you know, all those questions. But I will tell you, all of us know at Renaissance and all over the district and the city that everyone in here has the absolute very, very best interest at heart for our students. There's no doubt about that. Of course, we may disagree on how that's happening. Yes, that, that absolutely happens. But we know, and I want you to know from a principal's perspective, from our staff's perspective, that, that we thank you. We thank you and we know the hard work that all of you are doing and, and we truly appreciate it. I wanted to put that on public record because it's really important that everyone out there knows the support that we get in schools from all of you. So thank you.
Well, thank you, Team Renaissance, for closing what was just an amazing morning of getting that firsthand from the field perspective about teaching and learning through a pandemic and also getting such strong glimpses of what's to come in terms of when students return and into the years ahead. So thank you very much for closing us up. We're going to take a five-minute recess as Ms. Diggs prepares for the next presentation. So please stand and move around a little bit and take five.
All right, well, I guess I get to bring people back from breaks today. That's my job for today is to bring us back from breaks. So welcome back. It's my pleasure to introduce in a moment LaShelle Diggs. Before that, this year I had the great honor of adding our CDC and our Head Start programs to our elementary office. And so we're now the early learning and elementary schools office. And so with that, we've for several years now have been building some great collaboration between our pre-K programs in our district and our elementary and K-8 schools. So it's just nice to be able to continue that work. This is, as LaShelle comes up, this is kind of an annual opportunity for her to engage with all of you around the great work. around the great work in Head Start, but more specifically with the refunding application, there are some things she needs to share. And all of you know Ms. Diggs, for her many years, as a great principal in our district. She's, it's a steep learning curve to learn all that's required in Head Start and she can tell you that better than anybody. But she's doing a really wonderful job and so it's my pleasure to introduce Ms. Diggs and she can take it away from there.
Okay, thank you, Brian, good morning. I think I can still say that for a few more minutes. President Craighead, board members, Dr. Baker, executive staff and fellow colleagues in the room and to our community. First of all, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to share with you today. And it was really nice hearing all of the presentations before me, very inspiring work that's going on in our district. And I'm glad to have the little scholars join in that, in all of that work that we're doing. And we will also be continuing in the world of Head Start. Today I will be sharing with you our refunding application. But first I'll share a little bit about Head Start. And as most of you may already know, Head Start is a federally funded program and it's comprehensive early childhood program that supports the mental, social, and emotional development of children prenatally, so zero through the age of five. In addition to the education services that we provide, we also provide our families and children with health information, nutrition, mental health, social services and referrals to social services, excuse me, and other services. So Head Start is responsive to each child and family's cultural and linguistic background. Our overarching focus is to prepare children to enter kindergarten with the required school readiness skills to be successful. So that's the why we exist. And I wanted to share that we have been listening about equity this morning and Head Start was founded on the premise of eradicating poverty and building equity for more families in our world. So I'm really honored to be a part of such a great effort and in our district, working together to make sure that happens for each and every student. So for our refunding application, each year the Head Start program has to submit an application detailing how the program will operate, updates on the community assessment, the progress we've made on our school goals, our school readiness goals, and planned use of funds for the upcoming school year. It is a five-year grant, but each year we submit an application to show the Office of Head Start how we plan to use the funds for the remaining years of the grant. And for 2021-22 school year, which will be year three next year for this refunding application, the program options that we will offer, which are no change to the current programs that we offer, we thought that was really important in a pandemic to keep some consistency. And also for our full day, we will have 618 students in Head Start, that's ages three through five. Early Head Start, 248 students. And our part-day programs, which are the AM, PM, half-day, 326 slots. And early Head Start, those are full-day programs, so you will not have a AM, PM. And extended day CCP, those are our childcare partners, families who would like extended day, who may work evening hours and need childcare after the instructional day, those programs exist. And that's also an opportunity to work with the community childcare partners. And we do have two agencies we're working with, Child Lane and Children Today. And you'll see those slots are for them. We have pre-K 64 Head Start and 36 early Head Start classes in those two programs. We also have for our early Head Start, that's our zero to three, I mean, zero to two, home-based. So you see a zero under Head Start because it's for early Head Start. We have 48 children that we will have slots for next year. So that's 1,008 Head Start slots and 332 early Head Start slots, which is 1340 children that will be able to serve next year. And I just wanted to put this slide here just so you know what our current enrollment is. We, the slots are the same, 1340 at the bottom, you'll see in a parenthesis. But currently we have 965, obviously due to the pandemic and some of the enrollment shifts within our family choices. But in early Head Start, currently in-person, we're serving 168 students and virtually 59. That has just changed. We had a lot of families when elementary announced that we were going back March 29th, a lot of our families switched from virtual to in-person, so that's a good, good thing. And total heads, early Head Starts, 227 right now. And in our Head Start, in-person, 509, virtual, 229, with a total of 738. And that's where we have our total enrollment right now as of today is 965. These are our goals, I won't read the whole slide. We did not change our goals. When the grant was written, it was written with five-year goals and we just each year update the goals if necessary or if we wanted to add any new objectives. So if you see towards the middle where it says early Head Start, we have a school readiness goal. All children birth to age three will make progress across all the DRDP and you'll see that in a moment, that's an assessment tool. Infant taller areas of development with at least 85% at or above the expectations for their age on the rating scale, which is exploring later or higher. And for Head Start, same goal, 85% on the DRDP, but at building middle or higher. Same tool, just different views for the different ages. Program goal two is to support and enhance the overall social, emotional competence and wellness of children, families, and staff. And in that goal, you'll see at the end it says and staff. We have performance standards in Head Start that says not only do we provide support in mental health and social, emotional wellness to our families, but we also are mandated to do that with staff, which is really important because in our district, we have already had the importance of self-care. In Head Start, it's something that we're expected and held accountable to doing. So we have an actual wellness plan for our staff. We start our staff meetings with mindfulness. We have activities throughout the month for wellness for our staff to make sure they're able to serve our students best because they're at their best. Our progress toward our goals, in a moment I'll show you some slides from our assessment tools that measure quality for our program. One is the DRDP, the desired results development, sorry, developmental profile, and the class scoring system. Now this is the class data. We have two cycles of class data, you will only see the data that we just reported. And you'll see, let's see, the green, having to look a little further, it's a little. Oh, emotional support, classroom organization, and instructional support. You'll see the little red dotted line across the top, that shows the national average. So the green is the national average and blue is where Head Start rated in all of those areas based on observations in our class tool, which measures student interactions and teacher interactions in the classroom. So very proud to say that Head Start is performing above the national average in all three of those measures, even in a pandemic, so we're really happy about that. These are the different dimensions, I won't read through all of them, but class, those three domains that I just read, they're broken down into different dimensions that observers. And in this time, we use an agency called Child 360 that did our ratings for us. So we had objective opinions as well as our internal observations. And these are the scores that they reported for this first round. And it's just broken down more, but you'll see again, this time the color is switched, sorry about that. Head Start is green and the national average is blue on this slide. So above a national average in all areas. Approaches to learning, this is, these are our DRDP scores. There are eight domains, we only rated on six. The Office of Head Start gave us the flexibility to change some of the measures because we had lots of virtual students, especially in the beginning of the year. And it's really hard to do observations in the homes of the students. So we were able to decrease some of our measures to make sure we were able to at least rate the measures that were written into our goals. And as you'll see here for approaches to learning and self-regulation, we have two cycles, three of fall, winter, and spring. You'll see reported the first two cycles. The green was cycle one, the blue is cycle two, which we just completed. And you'll see significant differences in this area from our students. Two-digit gains in this area. And in this area is approach to learning and self-regulation, how the student attends or engages in the instruction as well as how they're able to control themselves emotionally in the classroom so they're ready for learning. Social, emotional development, also again, you'll see a significant increase from rating cycle one to rating cycle two. Social, emotional, we measure the relationships that kids have with each other through play and with the adults. Language and literacy, as what you might call the foundational reading skills in the elementary world. But we look at all the areas that help students to become emerging writers and readers. And again, a lot of gain and progress in all of those areas. English language development, yes, English language development is for age four and five. We do have an increase, but not a significant increase because as you know, with language acquisition, it takes a little longer than from fall to spring to really show that you've made increases in the acquisition of the language. And each child is very different depending on how much exposure that they have to the language at home and at school opportunities. So this is a slower increase with maybe one digit, but each child we're rating based on where they are on the language continuum at that moment. Cognition, math, and science, as you'll see here also, double-digit gains. And physical development and health also gains. And another thing that we have to share in Head Start is how we plan to continuously improve. And in our refunding application, we have to list ways that we are doing that and plan to do that in the upcoming year three. And one of the ways is our team data analysis protocol. We have a set of questions that we answer by teams and in each center from the school readiness data that you just saw presented to develop next steps. Also ongoing monitoring, we monitor not just the curriculum fidelity, but also the health and safety protocols on the H center because we also have to adhere to licensing practices and regulations as well as Head Start regulations. So ongoing monitoring for a lot of different systems. QI network and leadership team coaching, that's what we're currently, we're currently working with an organization, Early Intel, for coaching of our leadership and administrative team in leading through change and managing data processes for continuous improvement. Agency-wide professional development, I won't list all the professional development we have, but we do have to turn in a training and technical assistance plan to the Office of Head Start. And some of the areas that we're working on is multicultural perspectives, which looks at cultural relevance in our program. Teacher coaching is also a part of our program, especially after analyzing all of our data, we give teachers an opportunity to be coached, not just instructionally, but also in SEL. We have students that need behavioral support and teachers learning how to provide that so that students are able to learn and we continue to have a positive environment. And we have the data that I'll show you at another time based on teachers receiving coaching from PBS coaches, which are the Positive Behavioral System coaches, and their scores going up in the area of behavior management. So it was really awesome to see that. Leadership development, this is something we just started within the last couple of months. Professional development for our current Head Start staff, instructional aides that would like to be teachers in the future and head teachers, or teachers that would like to be head teachers. So we're working in partnership with our leadership development in the district for the Exploring Leadership Program for some of our Head Start teachers to be a part of to understand the dispositions of a leader of equity. And we will be training them on the job-specific pieces in their jobs. So working in partnership to develop more leaders in our ECE system. Also for Head Start refunding application, each year we have to do an update to the community assessment. When their grant was originally written, there was a full, thorough community assessment done, so we don't have to go through all of the data and details for that. But for year three, we had to identify some things that have changed and what updates we wanted to share based on choices we've made in our program. And one of the areas, well, the area that we collected data is special education because we've started the CCT program. And in that program, we wanted to share, wanted to show the need to expand classes within the Head Start system. First, I just started with CalPAS data from the District Research Office. They've shared ages three through five, where our, in pre-K, three through five, special ed. 546 students total. Speech and language, which is the highest eligibility of the students that we have in Head Start. Well, not just in Head Start, ECE, 283. Autism, 194, other health impairments, 24, and intellectual disabilities, 13. And then moving on to Head Start specific data. Last year, we had 181 students that had diagnosed disabilities, which is around 14% of our full population. And of that, 11% were speech and language. And then just looking at the amount of students that have autism as an eligibility, in 2019, 20, there was nine. And this year, we currently have 22 and counting. So I just found out we have seven more students to come into the CCT program. So the reason of collecting this data was to show an expansion for the CCT program, which is collaborative co-teaching with our specialists in special ed. So it's full inclusion of children with special needs in preschool classrooms in Long Beach Unified. Our general education teachers working alongside special education teachers to provide services to meet the needs of students with special needs in the least restrictive environment. You've already, as the board approved, our selection criteria and that it included CCT. But I just showed some numbers of the increase in the need for placements in CCT. 2019, last year, there were four classrooms in CDC as a pilot year, 32 children. This year currently, we have 22 classrooms, five in Head Start and six in CDC. 66 children are in-person at both campuses, at both programs. 70 children are still, continue to be virtually, virtual based on parent preference. And next year, we're planning now, so I don't have an exact number of students, but we will have 32 classrooms next year across 16 sites. And the newest site for Head Start would be Smith Head Start, which is written into our refunding application. And there's approximately the capacity of 250 or more students that could be placed in CCT programs if everything goes well as far as securing classrooms for the 16 sites. Family engagement is also in our performance standards. It's something that we're expected to do to give parents a voice and to engage and so they know how to be successful in making their students ready for kindergarten and beyond. And I just listed some of the things that we do in Head Start in the area of family engagement. Our policy council, which is where parents have an opportunity to hear about Head Start regulations and decisions they're making and also vote on some of the major decisions we have regarding applications and budget. Each center has parent meetings, we have a variety of parent classes and workshops, which are listed on the right. And we do have home visits twice a year and parent conferences. Right now, they're virtual. And then our annual health fair, which will also be virtual. Listed just a little bit of the parent survey data, you sent out a Google form recently just so parents could let us know if they're satisfied with the topics that we're offering for our parent workshops as well as the interactions they're having with our staff. And as you can see of the parents who did respond, they were all 90% or above as far as their satisfaction with the program. And the last question even talks about the students being, if they felt that their students were ready for kindergarten, was it helpful as parents to go to those workshops? Just another parent survey, so the question was to please select the most convenient time for parent workshops. So we use this information to help us to determine the times of workshops. And most parents ask for workshops during the day, at least almost half of our parents. And next slide is post-pandemic, how would you like parent workshops to be conducted? And most parents say they would like a combination, so we will continue to offer virtual workshops as well next year and in-person. And last is the budget. This is the budget and the allocations for next year, year three. Head Start and early Head Start base grant is $25,833,153. And Head Start T and TA, that's Training and Technical Assistance, our professional development, And early Head Start T and A, we break those down because of the different needs and professional development, $87,829 for a total of $27,829. development, eighty-seven thousand, eight hundred and twenty-nine, for a total of twenty-six million, one hundred and fifty-eight thousand, eight hundred and fifty-nine dollars. And on our last slide here, it just shows how we plan to use those funds, all the categories that we've placed the money in now. For most of our budget goes toward personnel, to pay all of the teachers, administrators, support staff, classified staff that work in Head Start, benefits, travel, even though there's not much travel going on right now, we do keep that in our budget because the Office of Head Start has lots of conferences in Sacramento. So if we need to have that, if not, we use it for regular professional development. No money for equipment as far as large purchases, supplies, contracts. We have a lot of contracts in Head Start. I won't go over each of them, but our mental health consultants, nutrition consultants, a lot of consultants in our program to help us do our work. Other, I just listed some of those things like licensing, maintenance, indirect costs with the district, and it lists our total again. And at the bottom, non-federal share, we have in-kind donations. And the way that we make up a lot of the money in in-kind is for parents to read to their students. We actually get to track that for in-kind hours and donations. Okay, thank you for listening, and I'll take any questions about our refunding application.
Ms. Diggs.
Oh, thank you. A quick question about the parent engagement part. Now that everything is kind of virtual, do we have resources to help those parents that might not have the right equipment, computers or hotspots, that type of thing?
Yes, we do a lot of communication with our families, our family service liaisons, our FSLs. They communicate regularly with families for check-ins. And so far, we have either allowed parents to borrow or the technology that we have in our department, or they share with us how they access. We have a program called Ready Rosie. I know you're well aware of that we get funded from the Mayor's Education Fund. And families even use their cell phones, tablets. They let us know that they have a device, and if they don't, we do find a way for them to borrow a device from our centers or however we're able to secure one. So if there's families out there who do not have a device or haven't communicated that to us, we try to find out and help them with that. But yes, so just through inquiry and parent surveys and the face-to-face drop-offs, we can ask those questions too. Any other questions?
Thank you, Ms. Diggs. So given that Head Start serves a younger demographic for our district, and as you know, the research in early care and education, particularly by groups like the Advancement Project, points to very specific reasons that households and parents consider in enrolling students in early care and education programs. So apart from cost, since this is a subsidized program, the things that they point to are quality of staff, which you shared, there's a lot of professional development, quality of the facilities, and then also just facilities being accessible. I'm wondering in Long Beach, what you've been hearing, given that there's a high satisfaction rate from those parents that are participating, particularly in the workshops, what you're hearing in terms of households that are doing one of two things, either not enrolling, and again pandemic, you know, being considered, but also those parents that are opting for to continue the virtual option? What data do we have from parents as to, you know, what they're considering and choosing what option is best from their families?
Right, for next year, well, in the, later in the spring, we'll be sending out a new survey asking that. And that will determine for the slots that I shared with you, which ones will continue to be virtual and which ones will be in-person. So right now, we have a hybrid, and we will probably continue to do that and assign some of our teachers to be virtual teachers. Until we have that specific data, because it is changing, parents, even as last week, changing because, like I said, the opening of elementary. So we'll send out a new, fresh survey to ask parents what are their choices for program options. And that will determine how we configure Head Start for next year. And we will have all of those options.
So maybe if I can ask it a different way. So apart from asking them what their, what option they're selecting, do we have any data on why they're selecting to stay at home?
Oh, actually, if within the survey, we ask them their option, but we, that would be a good next step to see a little deeper into why they consider certain options. But we do ask those questions in other surveys that may not be program, program option surveys. So for instance, I didn't share that data today, but last year, we did a family outcome survey at the end of the year, and it asked a lot of specific questions about the pandemic. For instance, one of them was, were you happy with the services we provided to you during the pandemic? Because we had some families who had, who were in crisis, who needed food, were homeless and needed to be referred to services. So we asked those kind of questions, and we asked questions about your job, if someone lost a job or your hours cut. So we have a lot of data that families did share about some of the needs or the crises that had did come up. And from that data helped to determine some of those options being available. So both of those surveys will go out again later in the spring. The family outcome survey, which is very specific about the pandemic, and one that just asks for program options. So did that answer your question, Dr. Benitez?
Yeah, and it's related to your question, Diana. Just wondering what challenges parents are having and what they're considering to either make the determination to enroll, whether that's virtual or hybrid or in-person. But, you know, I'm curious about the number breakdown, right? Given that we're reopening schools in-person, given that a lot of the working families, it's really an accessibility issue and that the facilities are virtual in this case, we take that out, we take cost out, what other considerations are households using to determine, one, if they're going to enroll, but two, if they're, if they want to do it in-person or virtually? For that age group, I think would be important data for us to note.
Right, thank you. We'll definitely put that in place.
Yeah, it's a good question for family service staff to be asking that couldn't help inform future efforts, so. I also wanted to mention too, this, obviously, the focus of this is not Educare, but LaShelle has the responsibility and the honor of supporting Maria Harris, who's the principal at the Educare School, because Educare is primarily Head Start funded. It does have district funds as well as some private funds that go into it, but they are the primary authorizers. And the significance of that is that there's, Head Start only allows for research-based practices to take place in their preschool setting. It is highly prescriptive, highly monitored at a very, down to the student data level, which is important because everything is thought of as something that impacts students and part of a study. So Head Start informs some things that go on at Educare. Educare is then the really big version of studying these high-dose treatment, longer day, very specific practices in a preschool for those one hundred and eighty students. And then things that we learn in Educare can be used to influence things that are done in Head Starts. That's one thing I wanted to mention. And then secondly, in particular, for Doug and Eric, is just to know that most Head Starts are not authorized by their own school district. So we are incredibly fortunate that years ago, I think actually about two decades ago, the district made a decision to go for its own Head Start authorization and since then has been running some upwards of twenty-six million or more program for our Head Start students. The significance of that is it allows us to be very, as Brian mentioned in the introduction, to think about not just what happens in preschool, but how is that blended? How are the lines blended when students leave a preschool and go into a TK or a K? And so again, not the focus of today, but a really significant thing for us. It also allows us to take someone who's been a successful administrator in our district in elementary and a K-8 school, and then to think about all that LaShelle knows as an administrator in the district to further bring those connections. And lastly, we know that when you focus, when you have twenty-six million dollars to focus in your local community, it really allows you to be very focused. And so, Dr. Benitez, I wasn't sure, one of the questions that you asked, so LaShelle mentioned expansion to Smith. That community assessment that was done a couple of years ago under Dr. Sosa Valderrama's leadership, that is how decisions are made about where to place classes and so that we're targeting those highest need areas and families in their neighborhood location so that they can easily, mostly in walking distance, often at an elementary school where they're also drop, a family might also be dropping off elementary students to target the resources where the students of greatest need receive them, including for infants. So, yeah, just wanted to add that. Great job today, LaShelle. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more questions? Thank you for your time and opportunity.
Thank you. Mr. Miller, did you want to ask something? Go ahead. No, okay, you're just giving thumbs up.
Just giving a thumbs up.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
So we are at lunch, and given the time that it is right now, I'm going to suggest that we reconvene at one fifteen and just start a little bit later than expected. We'll take a recess until then.
Uh, Dr. Baker?
Thank you, Mrs. Craighead. So I am pleased to kick off this afternoon session that's continuing a day thinking about student data and teaching and learning across Long Beach Unified School District. We are a little bit behind schedule, so just want to remind all of us, we're fifteen minutes behind. And I'm sure that staff will attempt to catch up, but also just think about, we're going to try to end at three. So if there are questions that you can hold or think about asking tomorrow, then I'll just welcome the opportunity for you to do that. And so this afternoon, you're going to hear three staff members give a reopening of school update, starting with Dr. Camarino, who's going to talk about the high school instructional program with Mr. Samuels, the director of high schools. Dr. Simons going to be talking about students with disabilities and the return to in-person instruction and assessments for them. And Dr. Brown will give a little update on health and safety. And then we'll make a transition, a quick transition, to Dr. Kale and Dr. Lovett, who are going to be talking about excellence in equity and curriculum and instruction. So I will turn it over to Dr. Camarino.
Good afternoon again. Thank you, everyone. I am following up on our reopening of schools presentation that our elementary, middle and K-8 schools had at the last board meeting and share a little bit about our opening of schools, reopening of schools with the high school. So Mr. Samuels and I are proud to be up here to share a little bit from our slide deck here of what it looks like for our reopening of schools for our high schools. So first, as you all know, we've had our parent survey open from March first through March twelfth. Our students, our teachers will be returning on campus after spring break, which is April twelfth, with our seniors returning April nineteenth, and the rest of the campus coming back together on April twenty-sixth. The two models that we have or options for our families are, one is our distance learning program that utilizes the Canvas learning management system along with Zoom, and basically just continues the work that our students are in at this moment. So that's option one. Option two is a hybrid in-person instructional program where our students will attend school at least two days a week, and the other days would be online and follow the student current instructional program. This option will continue to utilize Canvas with our students too. So Mr. Samuels will give us a couple of examples of what it will look like at some of our schools, because as some of you may know, our high schools are on block, eighty-eight-minute block schedules, but some of our schools have all-period meetings, days that they meet on Mondays. Some of our schools have Friday all-period days where they come together. And then a couple of our schools have odd and even days that alternate during the week. So Mr. Samuels, welcome aboard.
Good afternoon, everyone. I have the pleasure of sharing a little bit about how it will look. We, all of our schools drafted a letter for their families. Those letters were sent out at the end of February, and included in that letter was a schedule so that we can try to minimize confusion to ensure that every student knew when they would come on campus or when they would remain at home for those who chose the hybrid model. And if you notice on this particular slide, it says that students will attend at least two days per week with the meeting days determined by their school. And so that determined by their school, it basically depends on what type of block schedule the school is on. So as Dr. Camarino stated, some of our schools have a, have a one variation of a block schedule where the students attend every one of their eight classes, if they have eight, but this year, we don't have too many students with eight classes, but eight periods in, on a Monday. But then on Tuesday and Thursday, students will attend the odd-numbered periods. So that's periods one, three, five and seven. While on Wednesday and Friday, they will attend the even-numbered periods. And so we have four schools that are on that particular schedule. And so with this particular schedule here, if you look at an example of a schedule that was sent out by four of our schools within their cover letter in February, the schools being Cabrillo, Jordan, Lakewood and Renaissance, in that first column, you have the day of the week. And so what our schools did, they tried to outline the first three weeks for our families to make sure that they were very clear on which days they would, will come on campus in-person or they will be at home with distance learning. That second column has the odd or even periods, and as you notice in this particular example, this is where kids attend every period on the Monday, so you'll see the word "all," so they go to all of their periods, and then it alternates from odd-even, odd-even days. So for example, if a student is in Group A and this student is a senior, because for high schools, seniors are coming back on April nineteenth, and that student's a senior and they're in Group A on that Monday, that student will come on campus and will be in-person. Group B students who have chosen the hybrid model will remain at home online. And as you notice, for this, for this particular model, in order for students to attend all eight periods, we have to have them attend in-person back-to-back. And so for this particular first week for our seniors, Group A students will be on campus Monday through Wednesday, because Tuesday and Wednesday, they have to go through their odd classes, and then on Wednesday, they go through their even classes. And then it flops for the remainder of the week. And so our, so that following week on the twenty-sixth, our remaining students will come on campus, that's ninth through eleventh grade, and then of course, the pattern continues. And basically, what it amounts to is a Group A student will be on campus every Tuesday and Wednesday, but on Mondays, it would alternate whether or not they're on campus. And so as you notice, if you look at Group A on April nineteenth, they're in-person. Group A, April twenty-sixth, at home. Group A, May third, in-person. So it will alternate. But they're always coming on campus on Tuesdays and Wednesdays for this particular variation of our block schedule. For our schools who attend all their periods on Friday, it's just like the Monday one, except now they're attending all their periods on Friday. And so if you notice on the Fridays, you'll see the alternating pattern for Fridays, and then you'll see that they have their in-person back-to-back for Group A on Mondays and Tuesdays. And so the schools that have an all-day Friday schedule, that's Browning, Camps and Sato, and again, these schools had already sent, they sent out letters to their families, and they also translated those letters, and we posted them inside Parent View to try to make sure that parents and families had access to those. And then our last schedule is just our regular alternating block schedule where students attend their odd and even classes on alternating days. And just as before, it's back-to-back days. In this example, we start off with our even days. And so on April nineteenth and April twentieth, students will be in-person if they're in Group A. If they're in Group B, they'll be online distance learning, and then it will alternate every two days thereafter. And this, these schedules are for our students who have chosen hybrid in-person. Our students who have chosen the distance learning will remain online, and they will connect in these classes at the same time. And Dr. Camarino is going to talk more about that a little bit later. Our goal was to try to ensure that all of our students kept their schedule. We did not want to change their schedules. We want them to remain with their same teachers. And we also wanted to try to see if we can try to ensure that they were able to learn as much of the content as possible. And so particularly to try to keep them at pace, if you will. And as you saw, we're keeping our regular schedule. Some students may have on a given day, maybe two classes or three classes. Overall, out of an eight-period day, some of our kids have six classes, some have five. And so you may, so some kids may only attend on two classes a day or three classes a day depending on the total number of classes that they have. Students who have chosen to remain at home remain at home, they, their schedule will not change. They will be able to keep their same schedule with their same teacher. As you heard from Mr. Tran from Renaissance earlier today, with connecting with that teacher virtually, and, and teachers are working on some strategies to, to make sure that there's quality instruction going for our online learners and our in-person learners. And then, as Dr. Camarino stated earlier today, is that our students who are distance learning will be able to participate in extracurricular activities, they can come on campus for tutoring, for clubs, for sports, ASB, et cetera.
Thank you, Mr. Samuels. I was a little paranoid. I want, most of all, in us just presenting these models, I really want to thank our teachers and our administrators who are working really hard in be, being able to provide the, the best model, which we know is not always the most popular model, that our students can be a part of, and our teachers. This is going to take a lot of work, and I want to commend our research office and our OCIPD team in always providing systems of support for our teachers in this transition that we're going to provide as students come back on campus. And so this takes a lot of work, easier for me and Mr. Samuels to be up here to present this, but a lot more work happening behind the scenes in giving them the support that they're going to need as our students come back in doing this work. So, thank you. And our counselors have been working feverishly to getting, making sure that we have the right schedules for our students, balancing them into these classes that have those A and B models. So counselors, hats off to them. They've all just been working really hard on that master schedule. So during the pandemic, we really have, and I want to kind of share with all of you here in our community, is that there's really three different ways in which we had the Zoom instructional delivery for our high schools. Really, it's three buckets of a digital platform, a document camera, and traditional way that we delivered instruction. In the digital platform, we engaged in tools that have Jamboard, Google Slides, NearPod, Perdeck, Kahoot. So that's where students were doing some of the work that were in that digital platform of how teachers did their instructional delivery. The second one was just like a document camera. So sometimes the teacher would have their document camera mounted, and they can see real-time modeling of a note, piece of paper, notes, mini whiteboard. They'd put a textbook underneath the, the document camera, or even showing students how to do particular labs. So that's the second form of instructional delivery our students received during this pandemic. And then the last one is traditional, which is teacher-facing, whether it's a lecture, using, using a real whiteboard, again, using labs in, in particular. So those are the three different ways that I'm going to go into, what it will look like when our students come back to in-person, and what it will look like when they're at home in distance learning. So in the first model, we have the instructional delivery of a digital platform. Really, they're engagement tools, Jamboard, Google Slides, NearPod, Perdeck, Kahoot. So for, in order for our students to be in-person and receive this instructional delivery from the teacher, the teacher will have to be able to project in his or her classroom. So students in the classroom will be able to see all these pieces, and have Chromebooks too, to be able to, you know, use the Chromebooks in class, but really being able to see what the teacher is sharing on, on their, on their classroom wall, whether it's a whiteboard. Students at home are just going to do the same thing they've been doing now. They'll be able to watch everything via Zoom. The second model, making sure I'm on the right one, is a document camera. And again, that's the real-time modeling, a note paper, teacher taking notes, writing on a mini whiteboard, or using a textbook. For students to be able to see that all in the classroom, they just need to have that projected in the classroom, and for students at home, they will still watch that document camera via Zoom. So there's the second model that we discussed earlier. And the last one will be the real-time, sorry, a traditional delivery, teacher-facing lecture, whether it's using the real whiteboard or doing a lab. Obviously, the students who are in the class will just be observing the teacher, and in a virtual model, the teacher will need another camera from a computer or another device to be able to share. That picture up there is really small, but you could see a teacher who's there teaching to students in the classroom, and students from home being able to zoom in and see what's happening in the classroom. So those are the three instructional delivery models that we are looking at for our teachers as they come back. And then why are we using this model? This, this model maximizes the amount of in-person learning for all of our students. So they're all going to be with teachers throughout the whole day, every day till the end of the semester. High school students have the developmental ability to attend the teacher while connecting online. The third point is this model allows us to keep all of our instructional minutes, thus providing students with full access to the curriculum, and all the students will have equal amount of time with their teachers. And the model works really well for our high schools, because again, we have 88-minute blocks, where teachers, again, who are highly qualified teachers, have the opportunity to take time to really check in, check for understanding, check for modeling, or just check students' work while they're in the classroom, and be able to check, check on students while they're in the Zoom at the same time. So the model really lends itself to be able to do that work with an 88-minute block. And so for those, that high school model, I, we're open to questions, Mr. Samuels and I are.
Jay, can you speak just a little bit to the maintenance of the pathways and part of the decision related to the instructional program and keeping your pathways in order?
Definitely, yes. I'm sorry, I didn't cover that part of it, yes. So there's a lot of particular, in any way of changing classrooms or schedules, there's a lot of buildup in their pathways of having certain CTE or elective courses that are really important to be able to have those senior capstone projects at the end of their pathway course sequence from ninth through 12th grade. So any delineation of that pathway really could kind of hurt our pathway work. So this really helps to support keeping our students in that work. Again, to the point that we mentioned before already, we are looking at having bridge courses, Saturday courses for those hands-on robotics, project lead-the-way courses that our students may have been lacking, even culinary work. I know Browning had a lot of great things that students were doing where they were picking up food from here and trying to cook from home, but still maybe not having the resources to do some of those activities. Now they're going to go into a higher level of a cooking course that maybe they didn't get too much of that, that exposure their first year. So looking at having those bridge courses over the summer, Saturday courses even now, and really a lot of work after school for some intervention work for our students. So again, keeping that course sequence of those electives and, and their, and their course schedules to maintain as much as they can during this pandemic. Dr. Benitez?
Dr. Camarino, just a quick question in the interest of time, and part of this maybe Dr. Brown's going to cover when she goes over health and, and safety. You, you put the why, why this model up there. Could you go back to that?
Sure.
So my, my assumption is, this is the why based on two factors. One is that we have limitations in terms of how many people we can have on campus and within each classroom. Am I correct in, in that?
Yes.
Okay. The second is that we're still providing the at-home option, so we need to make accommodations for those students that will remain at home. Is that also the?
Yes.
And I don't know, again, if Tiffany, you're going to cover this, or Jay. That also assumes that whatever health protocols we need to continue, if, if, if they remain the same, we may have this scenario going into the fall if we have space restrictions, capacity restrictions. So I'm not sure if we're going to cover that today or not, Tiffany. I can wait if you are.
Not specifically.
Okay, okay. I, I just, for me, it's, not only is this the best model, but it's the best model given the limitations that we have at hand, right? So just want to be able to respond to questions from parents and community members that this is the why, but the why is based on these two big factors.
Correct, yes, thank you. Strato? Oh, Mr. Miller, sure.
Did you give us the numbers regarding the percentage of people who selected options one, two, and three already?
Yes, we do. As we closed, I was ready for that question. So we, based on percentages, we do have schools like Renaissance who are choosing to be in-person, and percentage-wise, it's 42%. So our highest school percentage that is asked to be in-person at the moment is schools like Renaissance, Sato, or smaller schools, Browning, 49, 50%. So we're at 50% pretty much from some of our schools. Our highest number is going to be Wilson High School with 1,588 students asking to be in-person as of now. Now, remember that our window closed on Friday, so this is the week that our schools are reaching out to any of our families who have not submitted a survey. So we still have some students who have not submitted a survey. So we have about, we have 63.5% of our high school students that have finalized their, their surveys. 6.3% started it, and we still have another 30% that left it blank. So we still have 30% of our population that we're going to have to reach this week.
Got it. And then just one more comment in regards to our high school students in particular. You and I shared a small conversation about the experience of even like the kids at Browning, right? And so for this graduating class, this is going to be the first graduating class of Browning, and it would be disappointing, to say the least, if we couldn't find a way to at least give them a graduation. I mean, they weren't able to have all of the fantastic experiences that come with being an 11th grader, now their entire 12th grade year has been necessarily moved to a Zoom experience. And so when I think about, once again, as I shared earlier, the high school experience, I, I agree the importance of aptitude, but creating an experience, I think that it would be something to keep in mind. And so I don't know if that was something that was going to come up, but I'd be remiss if I didn't say something.
Yeah, kudos again to our ASB directors for the last two years who have been pivoting from our, you know, graduation parades that we had last year, that we didn't think we were going to have anything for graduation, to having those ceremonies every Friday night, honoring a class of 2020 at 8:20 every Friday, lighting up scoreboards on, on, you know, for the class of 2020 last year, just doing a bunch of things for our students. And our ASB directors have been pivoting left and right, depending upon what we're allowed to do, to be able to have something for our seniors for sure. And also, just to your point, Mr. Miller, is that we are going to have Link Crew happen the next couple of days for our freshmen who have not stepped on our campuses. So our freshmen will have an opportunity to be on our campuses in the next two weeks to really have the opportunity to see the school, meet some staff, meet some senior leaders, all outdoors, obviously, social distancing and following all protocols. So we are, you know, our ASB directors, again, have just, again, stepped up to really have the opportunity for our students in these last few weeks of school to feel some normalcy and being able to experience the great things that our high schools provide. Thank you. Mr. Otto?
I had two grandsons who were going to Wilson who wanted to, who, the decision by the family was to stay back. They were doing so well with online stuff that they didn't want to do it. But they found out that they couldn't have their teachers, that it just didn't work out. They wouldn't have the same teachers, so they're going to go back, and they're happy with doing that. I assume that there are blips like that. We, look, I, I looked at this schedule, and I thought, this is like saying, this is March Madness, and this is the team that's going to win, and you pick it correctly. I mean, I'm, it's mind-boggling how sophisticated this is to try and get everybody happy, but I assume that things like that happen. You can't.
Yeah, definitely. With the difference, because at our high schools, we try to meet the needs of all of our schools, yes.
Got it, okay.
Thank you for the information. I know probably for some of those parents who haven't finished the survey hearing, something like this out loud helps because they can contextual, can contextualize potentially something they couldn't before about what a return would look like. So if we have 63% of folks who have filled out the survey, do we anticipate being able to accommodate all who want to potentially return to campus at various sites?
Yes.
In terms of space?
For sure, yeah. So to, Mr. Samuel said earlier today, in the, at last March when we closed for the pandemic, we actually met with our counselors, our head counselors and our admin teams to make sure that we scheduled students in the least amount of classes that wouldn't hurt their pathway sequence. So most of our students are scheduled for six classes, so they don't have the all, all eight, obviously, and some of our seniors have five classes. So we limited the number. So even with those numbers and not having full courses, per se, our, even with half of our student population, as we've walked our campuses, or early in the first part of the semester in September, we know that we can definitely, if all of our students decided to come back, most of our schools, except for Polly and Wilson, being that they're an older campus and classrooms are a little bit smaller, and some of our CAMHS classrooms, 97% of our students, if they all decided to come back, our classrooms can fit half of our students in each of our classrooms. So even if we had a higher percentage of students, or if all of a sudden all of them said we can come back, we can fit our students back into all of our classrooms, again, for the most part, except for our smaller classrooms that are older camp, on our older campuses. And, and to your point, Ms. Kerr, I really want to commend the elementary team and their administrators, because what they've been doing is modeling for middle and K-8, for high school as far as the communication out to our community. So we've been very sequential and very coherent in the communication that we've been sharing in the sequence of information, everything that we're sharing about, you know, what, what Dr. Brown's going to present later today, and even just making sure that everything goes out the same way from the elementary team to the middle and the high school teams. Our communication has been very, has mirrored the way that they've been presenting, so all of our parents get information that's going out.
That's great, and I appreciate that. And I think that's one of the things that I've heard is some, is that potentially, students who want to come back don't have the opportunity to come back. And what I'm hearing from you is that that is not the case. I would assume that our other levels, that is the case as well, that any family that has requested to come back to campus, there is space for them.
Yes.
Okay.
And I think the significance of your question, Megan, also is just the grouping of the A group and the B group. That's why, is to accommodate. The question that you're asking of how do students physically come back if they want to, is in that A group, B group model, it allows for that. It's less, it's less in-person time than we would like, but it allows by those groupings for, for them to all come back if they choose to.
So, yeah, with 30% being our lowest of our high schools to about 50%, you're talking about a quarter of our students, so our classrooms definitely can fit a quarter of our students that are in there when you consider the A and B model.
Dr. Camarino, not for today, in the interest of time, but might you be able to include in the slide deck an explanation of the difference between group one and three? I know that we went by one, two, and three. Why, again, if it could be done on one slide, that'd be great. Sort of the logistics of why with the block schedule, I don't remember if it was one or three, which one of the, the block schedule was. Not today, but
Yes.
if, if we could include a slide that just explains the difference between one and three at those high schools.
For sure, yeah. We can go for that. Basically, the point of having the all-period days either Monday or Friday was for dual enrollment purposes. So for our students who are taking a class at City College on Tuesday, Thursday, the other schedule, the third one that has the every day is odd and even alternates, I can maybe go to my class at 2:00 on Tuesday, Thursday this week, but I wouldn't be able to next week. So what our schools who have an all-period day Monday or Friday, is so that they have the same consistent Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday schedule, so they can do the, the dual enrollment at City College. So we're looking at having that potentially be something that our other schools have to look at that aren't in that all-period day. Sure, definitely. Yes, for sure. Okay, it's my pleasure to bring up Dr. Simon, to bring up some of our special needs return to school.
All right, let me raise this up. Can you hear me? All right. Well, first of all, to President Craighead, members of the board, Dr. Joe Baker, members of the executive staff, and to the Long Beach community. As always, it is a pleasure to be with you today. I mean, for today, I will be providing an update of a few pertinent topics as they relate to the return of in-person learning for our students with disabilities. But before I begin, I think I would be remiss if I did not pause just to say thank you to all the parents and guardians who have shown so much patience, who have asked questions, and sometimes some very hard questions, and also who have collaborated with the team, right, in order to get this right. So I just want to give a shout out to our parents and guardians. Also to our teachers and staff, to our transportation department. This has been a huge, you know, undertaking, but as a team, we've worked together to bring this back to life. And I think, thank you. So before we just move forward, I want to talk about face mask and covering, just because I know there has been a hot topic around how that's going to be monitored, and even what the guidance is telling us around face coverings and math, and masks. So, in essence, the California Department of Public Health, CDPH, says that students, right, we're saying that students in all grades, pre-K through adult, are required to wear face coverings at all times at school unless they are exempt, right? And within that guidance from CDPH, it does provide very specific guidance about who are exempted. And it states, children under two years of age, students with a medical condition that would obstruct breathing, and it gives you an example of what that is, students with a mental health condition or disability that prevents wearing a face covering, and then also students who are hearing impaired. But I want our community to understand that we are providing clear masks to those students who are within that category. So also, it says, when deciding if children with certain disabilities should wear a mask, determine if they can. This is what we're really asking our parents via conversations. Use a mask correctly, avoid frequent touching of the mask and also their face, limit sucking, drooling, or having excess saliva on the mask, and then also remove the mask without assistance. And so we're telling our parents, if you believe that your child or your guardians, that your child would not be able to tolerate a face covering or mask, please contact your school nurse as soon as possible. We're asking for at least one week prior to school resuming, and for our elementary schools, that would be from March 29th. and for our elementary schools. That would be for March twenty-ninth, so please a week prior to that, just so we can have conversations and also discuss accommodations. I also want to just express to our parents as well that we've done this in conversations too. Although we're asking our parents to, and our teachers are working with their parents and guardians in this way as well, practice wearing the mask at home, but we realize that sometimes it's about the environment. So just getting an example to put myself out there. I can't wear a mask at home for longer than an hour, maybe thirty minutes, right? Drives me crazy. It's almost like wearing shoes. I don't wear shoes in my home. So as soon as I get through that garage, I spray down my shoes with alcohol. Those shoes are coming off for me. Now, when I'm in an environment, in the workplace to where I have to wear shoes, right, I'm gonna wear shoes. I'm gonna rock my shoes, whether they are pumps, right, Jordans, tennis shoes, whatever it may be, right? I'm gonna wear those shoes and wear them right. The same thing with masking. If I'm in a condition or environment to where I have to mask, I'm gonna have to mask. So we're asking our parents and guardians, our teachers and staff, please show grace, please show patience. When our students get there, we're going to continue to work on reinforcing how to wear a mask and how to do that properly. School bus transportation, another just conversation that has been a pretty hot topic. In a short, we're telling parents that we have a new Google screening app that we're going to be releasing to our parents and also to our staff. Those screening questions must be provided prior, completed prior to the child boarding their bus. The temperature checks will be conducted at school. So as soon as that student gets off of that bus, right, the temperature check will be conducted. Students will be required to wear a mask on a bus unless they qualify for an exemption and they're given an accommodation. There is social distancing that will happen on that bus, at least six feet. Only one student per bench unless there are siblings. If there are siblings, a guideline state, they can sit together. Natural ventilation, hopefully if environmental conditions allow, right, windows will be slightly lowered. Air will be circulating. For our ambulatory buses, they will accommodate up to ten students per bus. And for our wheelchair buses, they will accommodate two persons. So that's one student and one aide if needed, right? So a smaller number just based on social distancing. So the next few slides, excuse me, will highlight a few special education bins, as we call it, such as school schedules, the district-wide restart of assessments and also related services. I mean, before we delve into that, I wanted to give even our board and even our community a better understanding of how the information, right, funnels as far as special education. So we start from whether it's CDE, the Centers for Disease Control, the Department of Public Health, right, that hits the district. And then from the district, we have conversations with our level offices just to make sure we have things into, to play. From there, then we have special education and then we have state laws and federal laws, you know, that hit us that we have to adhere to. And then that information is funnelled down, channeled down to our site, to our class teacher. And then based on that, that informs our individual education plans and also our distance learning plans, which our students are in right now during distance learning. And now we have our special ed bins. So again, we're going to talk about our services, our assessments, and then also the hybrid schedules. And I know that Dr. Camarino highlighted the high school schedules just moments ago. And then last week or two weeks ago, we heard from Brian Moskowitz, our Assistant Superintendent of Early Childhood Education in Elementary Schools, and then also with Dr. Christopher Lund as far as middle schools and also K eight schools as well. And so first, I wanted to, to lead our parents to our district webpage as far as our district resources. So the meeting of the board to where the elementary, some of our health and safety items were discussed during that time. Then also with our COVID nineteen dashboard to where they can find always our reopening updates, information on social, emotional, behavioral health-related support, COVID nineteen presentations, learning hubs, so on and so forth. And then as far as site resources, we always have parents who's, who contact us and ask us more about just site resources, again, that are very specific to their child's school. And we inform them that there are principal presentations that are taking place. And although we're just very special ed-specific, more site information as far as classroom schedules, cleaning schedules, lunch will be presented by our principals and also in their regular updates. And then for hybrid schedules, just broke it down just for purposes of this presentation. So for Buffen, Buffen will be returning on, in March as well. Super excited about that. It gives you the, the days per week, the hours, and will, if lunch will be a grab and go situation or if it's a hot lunch. Same for elementary, middle and high school and ACT, our Adult Community Transition Program, which is actually located right at Tucker, which is a mile or so down the road. We just have students who are just very excited and their parents to return back to in-person, and we are excited to see them as well. So services, there have been just many questions about services as well. And so for our parents to understand that even with services, we want it to happen with the least amount of interruption to direct instruction. Many of our students are only going to be on campus for two and a half hours per day right up there in preschool or elementary. Due to time limitation, there is just not enough time to provide such services always in person. So some of those services are going to continue in a distance learning format. And again, some services will be able to be delivered in person, but again, many services will remain virtual due to the limited in-person time. And for in-person services, that is only going to be for our students who select the hybrid option just based on asymptomatic screening and other multi-layer approaches to keeping our students safe within our school sites. And I know that Dr. Brown will speak about that momentarily. And then for assessments, you know, there was a point in time to where our COVID numbers were extremely high and we had to put somewhat of a pause in our assessments. And although there were some sites and some folks who continued with that based on a volunteer basis, we are happy to announce that we're going to begin, again, a district-wide implementation of those assessments on March twenty-second. Through those volunteers, we've been able to tweak some things within our guidelines for assessments to keep our students, staff, students and staff safe, which includes maybe higher levels of PPE, gowns, distancing and just guidelines around that. So again, we are resuming, we are restarting assessments from a district-wide standpoint, although we have been doing some of those on March twenty-second. Within those protocols, we have a parent notice and acknowledgement form. We are very specific about who can accompany that student and how many adults can accompany that student, again, to keep our students and our staff safe. There's going to be a testing schedule just so we don't have too many folks come in and we're able to disinfect our areas after each assessment, again, to keep our folks safe. And then in-person assessments, which is going to be different than the actual hybrid schedule, will be more so for our students for hybrid and online. So let me rephrase that. For our services, our services, in-person services are really for those students who selected hybrid. But for the assessments, just because we have so many to get through, our staff wants to get through those assessments as well. They'll be offered for students who are in the hybrid and also students who elect to remain online. And I want to announce this, just for our parents and our community to know and also just for our board to know as well. We have a lot of catch-up to do, right? We have a lot of IEPs, Individualized Education, education programs that are overdue, that need to be completed, meetings that need to be had, assessments that need to be conducted. And so we're going to offer that time to our assessment team members, our related service providers, to be allowed to conduct and complete those assessments during the summer and also conduct those IEPs as well when our students return to school. Any questions?
Dr. Simon, thank you. And thank you for the thoughtfulness and the, the time and energy. I know that it's been taking to prioritize our students with disabilities. I want to lift up a concern that I know that you and our executive staff are keenly aware of. And it's a communications concern. And I'm going to try to just express it as candidly as I can. And, and I've been in these meetings with you, Dr. Simon, so I know that you know.
Right.
Right. There seems to be, and this is coming from parents, many of them non-native English-speaking parents. So there seems to be, I've been redirecting and all of us have been redirecting folks to their school, all right, for, for information. And what's been expressed is a concern around either principals, school site staff or teachers not knowing the information or parents receiving different information than they hear about either at a school board meeting or at a CAC meeting or at one of our workshops, right, that the, that the information either is, is not communicated or it's different information. Some of it, and I know we have our language and accessibility and translation update tomorrow, some of it is related to just some of the challenges right now virtually where a lot of information being lost, right, particularly with regards to students with disabilities. However, others, and you've heard this, Dr. Simon, I'm wondering what we can do to help at the school site level, given that many of our parents and families don't know another point of contract for our district. And quite frankly, I feel like they have lost the sense of investing time and energy to be engaged because of the, of the frustration with either not having the information or not receiving consistent information. So I wanted to lift that up, not for us to resolve today, but more that I think with this information that you just shared, with the talk about returning to in-person, with the priority around our students with disabilities, much like I've been sharing my concerns about students that are, you know, going to continue at home, that we don't lose sight of that. I know that the summer is catch-up time, but for those parents, that's a long time away, right? So I'm just, I, I want to lift that up for us because I know you've been in those spaces. And, you know, if, if I could clone you, Dr. Simon, and just have, you know, a hundred more meetings where we could share this information, that would be the ideal. I would love to hear from you or any other staff, sort of our thoughts about how we can use this as an opportunity to, to address that concern.
Well, I'll say for one, I, you know, if, if parents want to, I would say even contact me personally, contact my office. Many parents have, right, until where I've sat, you know, in my office until six or seven PM at night, or maybe even contacted some folks over the weekends, just so those questions would be answered. Just because I know there's fear, there's anxiety, there's frustration, and sometimes there is confusion when so much information is being delivered and communicated to our parents. And sometimes things just get lost in translation. So my office will continue to be a support for that. I know that we are in conversations, even more deeply consulting with our principals. I know that, you know, Mr. Moskowitz asked us to, you know, schedule one-to-one meetings with principals. We have. We'll do the same for our middle school office and also our high school office as well just because we believe the information that we have is highly pertinent, you know, for our parents to make a very informed and educated decision. So I'm going to put myself out there. I'm looking at the camera. Parents can call, contact me directly. I'm always open to those calls. If I'm not, you know, we have Dr. Rachel Heenan. We have, you know, our SEAs, our special education administrators. We are always welcoming our parents, you know, to contact us as well, especially during this time because it is a very critical time and our parents need information in order to make informed decisions. So I'll, I'll put that out there on top of the teacher meetings that we have. There's actually another one tonight for our teachers. Our meeting last week, we had about three hundred and fifty teachers who were present and also some principals. We've also conducted some parent meetings. We have one more next week. If we need to offer more, right, my staff, right, the team, I don't want to say my staff, the team is willing to conduct, provide, you know, more of those offerings for our parents and guardians as well. Also, this is our connection that we have with, with Long Beach Forward. I know we've connected on some things about how to engage more of our parents. I mean, so for us, right, anything that's needed, and I, and I mean that wholeheartedly, in order for our parents to make an educated decision, we're more than willing to do that.
I also take it as a point of input related to, you know, we'll be coming back to you many times this spring about the use of CARES money. And when I think about things that we'll need short-term, there may be something in that that we can do short-term as we transition all of our students back to in-person instruction and really think about liaising with families in a different way. So I appreciate it from that perspective as well.
Thank you. Yes, Dr. Simon, thank you for this information. I know you shared a lot of it at the CAC meeting last week. I want to thank you for that and for your staff being so quick on their feet with some of those questions that came. I'm wondering, I don't recall if you announced that the in-person assessments would continue, would start to be offered March twenty-second. I don't remember that from the meeting. So just from a perspective of somebody who's hearing that for the first time today, what can they expect or to whom, or whom will they be hearing from as the next point of contact for that specific piece?
For most of the assessments, it probably would be the school psychologist, right, depending on the type of assessment the student needs. So I know with our preschool assessment team, they're doing more things to where they do things more as a group, to where at our elementary, middle and high schools, right, just based on limitations with spacing. Sometimes they're contacted by a different assessor. So just know that it's usually the school psychologist, but it also depends on other services that the student may have qualified for.
So they don't necessarily have to reach out to your office this afternoon to ask the question
Correct.
of when. I think that's, but that they can expect to hear from someone from the team.
You are correct.
Regarding those assessments.
Your assessments. You are correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Simon.
Thank you. I'm a germaphobe, so I'm going to make sure you are good to go.
Good afternoon. Nice to be with you. I'm low tech today, just with a few health and safety updates that seem important to share. So since we were last together, we had submitted the health and safety checklist and guidance plan to the city of Long Beach. On Monday of last week, March fifth, we received full approval of that plan and all of the requirements. That plan has been posted to the district website as well as the approval letter that the health department wrote indicating that we've met all the necessary requirements. So that was a huge team effort and something that as we move towards the return to in-person instruction and more people on our campus, we want to lift up that we have met all of the necessary requirements for both health and safety to be able to do that moving forward. Also, since we were together, we've moved into, as a county, into the red tier. And that's a source of tremendous celebration as we continue to see a declining adjusted case rate. I understand that today, an update, we as a county are moving into the low fours. So we are in the red tier and well on our way towards the orange tier. And that feels like, again, a real source of excitement and hope for the things that are in front of us. But also just a caution to continue as a community, doing the things that we're doing to allow for that to happen. One of the other things I wanted to highlight, just as a talking point in a health and safety update today, is that alongside the elementary office, we have put out a frequently asked questions list regarding the asymptomatic screening that will be taking place. And I know that that has been the source of questions and wonderings. And so we put out a guidance document to answer some of those frequently asked questions that was sent out to staff last week as well as to the community students and families that will be returning in person to make sure that we're communicating information that is of interest. And I wanted to make a distinction in terms. We've learned a lot in this process. And sometimes we've learned that the way we refer to things actually reflects what it is. So in terms of the use of the term quest, testing, asymptomatic testing, that's not what we're doing. Testing is what we do when a person is symptomatic or when a person has been exposed. Testing is what we do when a person is symptomatic, or when a person has been exposed to COVID. We are doing asymptomatic screening, and that is the process by which we go through to determine if somebody who does not have symptoms is in fact positive for COVID. So the distinction in terms is something that we want to highlight. Testing is what happens when a person is symptomatic, or when they've been exposed. Screening is what we are doing as another precaution. I also want to highlight that when we originally planned to do asymptomatic screening, we did that in the depth of the purple tier and at a very different time in our community. And we did it at a time when the California Department of Public Health was requiring it. A lot has changed since then. And so to the community member who's saying, "Why are you doing this?", or the staff member who's saying, "Why are you doing this?", there's a couple of responses to that. But the first is, at our initial planning, we were in a very different circumstance as a community, and we were really wanting to consider every possibility of what we could provide as a preventative health and safety measure for our community. Recognizing that we are moving into a different time already, and hopefully going forward to an even better time, our hope is that this asymptomatic screening will be a very brief point in our history. It'll be something that does not last for very long, but something that we committed to long ago, and that we are moving forward with in the changing climate that we're in during this pandemic. One more point to make is that you may hear another term. The term is COVID captain. And going back into the fall, we have trained COVID captains on each of our campuses. And alongside Mr. Zaid and a number of other colleagues in the Human Resource Services Department, as well as our Student Health Services Department, we have trained a COVID captain on every campus and in every department. And that person is to be the most knowledgeable of all things COVID on the campus, to include the person who's leading contact tracing efforts. And that has been a way that we have made sure that our sites are aware and informed of all of the changing health and safety guidance, and that we have a conduit for communication to the sites for all of the varying updates that come. And boy, do they come. They come readily. In fact, one more point to make is that this last week, there was some new guidance around the need to quarantine. And this felt like something that was celebratory from where we've been to where we've come to. So the new guidance around quarantining that Mr. Zaid actually communicated to our COVID captains at the end of last week, is that there are a couple of reasons why we would not need to quarantine. The first is if a person were COVID positive in the last 90 days, if exposed, they would not need to quarantine. And that's important and new guidance. The other thing that's particularly pertinent in our system is that if a person is fully vaccinated and exposed to COVID, they do not need to quarantine. So that's a really piece, important piece of new information that we received that feels really important as we celebrate the fact that about 6,200 members of our staff in Long Beach Unified have been vaccinated. So that information going forward, in the context of a classroom, could mean that if we have a fully vaccinated teacher, and there's an incident of COVID in the classroom, that that staff member does not need to quarantine. And from a community perspective, and for the instructional continuity that we want to have moving forward, that's something, again, that we're really celebrating. We're celebrating it alongside our partners at the city, who have created a pathway for us to offer vaccination to our staff, and that we continue to be very grateful towards. And so in communicating with our colleagues over at the health department this last week, I realized in their voices that they were as celebratory as we feel about the opportunity to return students to our campuses. I offered Dr. Davis personal tour of any of our campuses that she would like to visit once there are people younger than 18 on them, and so she was really excited at that opportunity. I welcome any questions that you have, but just wanted to come to you with a few updates that are pertinent to our conversation today.
Thank you for that update. I would only add that in addition to feeling celebratory about having our kids returning, that as a community, we remain vigilant, that even though we're making great strides in this pandemic, that, and even though a lot of people are becoming vaccinated, that we continue to wear our masks, that we continue to take steps to keep everybody safe, so that we can return to a more traditional school year in the fall. The spring, to me, I feel like it's a kind of a beacon of hope, kind of a light at the end of the tunnel. And I know that having elementary kids in school for, you know, two and a half hours for having our secondary kids come back two days, two and a half days, that type of thing, might not be ideal, but for a lot of people, it's a lifeline. It is one more step towards a traditional school day, and one more way of saying, "Things are getting better, and we're on that path." So thank you. Thank you for all that good news, but I would caution the community, you know, please keep our kids in mind. Please make those little sacrifices of, you know, wearing our masks and social distancing. To me, I feel a little apprehensive about, you know, indoor dining and all these other things, maybe because we haven't been able to do that for over a year, but let's do it carefully so that we don't lose any traction.
And as a part of that, Madam President, that not everyone in our communities has had an opportunity to vaccinate either, and that we have disparate vaccination rates across our districts. So although your particular household, my particular household may have had the opportunity to vaccinate, many of our neighborhoods still have very high rates and have not been able to vaccinate yet. So we encourage folks to vaccinate, those that have the opportunity to, but precisely because of the point that you made, that our communities also have disparate vaccination rates through no fault of their own.
And I think that also speaks to the asymptomatic screening that you talked about. It's a continual acknowledgement because of the vaccination rate. Not everybody's had the chance yet, and some communities are disproportionately impacted, as Dr. Benitez said. So that screening helps us serve our communities better and be aware of everyone's health.
Dr. Brown, can you just briefly address the question about notifying community members about teacher vaccination? So I've been asked a number of times, "Will you let us know if my student's teacher has been vaccinated?"
Sure, that's a question that's come up. It's actually, it's come up in a couple of different contexts, but health information is to be protected, and we do not communicate about anyone's health status, nor about their choice to be vaccinated. So when we communicate about the vaccination that our employees have received, it's in the way that I did it. Approximately 6,200 people, I don't know who they are, nor would we share who they are. So that's not information that our community would be privy to. It's something that we are asked, but we want to make sure that we're moving forward with the health and safety privacy rights that we all enjoy going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, all three of you, for just really great updates on the reopening of schools. Okay, well, I am pleased to introduce two members of a very important team in our district who are representing the Office of Curriculum Instruction and Professional Development, Dr. Kristi Kael and Dr. Pam Lovett, who are going to close the day this afternoon, talking about a really important topic relative to our excellence and equity work, and that is an update on equity audit and planned training for teachers and administrators.
All right, good afternoon. I am thrilled to be here today with my colleague behind me, Dr. Pamela Lovett, who is our coordinator of Equity and Excellence. And then I'd also like to, could you guys just give a wave? There's some other colleagues in the room who've been contributing to that work. So we have Angelica Gonzalez, our director, Nader Twal, our program administrator, and Carrie Wiley, our administrative assistant. So I just want to start off by saying that this is a team effort, and while Pam and I are here to present, it's taken a whole lot of people to put the work together. It would not be, it would be not responsible for me to not start by acknowledging the rest of the team in OCIPD that has been really knee-deep in the work to get our schools ready for the return to in-person instruction, and also planning for very large-scale summer acceleration programs. And while I'm not here to talk about those things today, I did want to mention them because they're really important in supporting all the work that you heard talked about with my colleagues who came before me. But what we will talk about today are a few things around our goals and plans, around our equity agenda. We'll talk specifically about the audit process, introduce you to our curriculum advisory committee, and then provide some explanation and overview around the equity training that we are working on and have already begun to deliver. So earlier this morning, Dr. Baker mentioned her goals and all of the alignment that's been taking place across the district around those goals. In OCIPD, our number one goal is to support teacher and leader development in the eight competencies for culturally responsive teaching and ensure a culturally relevant curriculum. So this presentation is really going to unpack that goal. And what I'd like to focus on here is, the word up there is "systems". That's the word I'd like us all to take a look at. And when we look at systems, we're talking about policies and practices that have created advantages for some and disadvantages for others, specifically Black, Indigenous, and other people of color, those experiencing poverty, and others marginalized by gender, sexual orientation, religion, and/or language. So a question that we like to ask ourselves is, how well is our curriculum currently serving these student populations? This is the work that we set out to do for this school year, and I wouldn't be honest if I didn't say it's been a challenge given our current circumstances. But I'm going to start today by sharing with you how we are establishing a set of recommendations for curriculum changes based on a curriculum audit. And then Dr. Lovett will come up and talk about how we are creating and deploying a professional development plan that incorporates training for both principals and teachers. And then those two bodies of work simultaneously come together around us defining what a culturally relevant and responsive classroom looks like. So when we talk about equity as it relates to curriculum instruction, we're thinking specifically about equity-centered approaches, and these approaches do things like disrupt racism, promote justice, feature fairness and inclusion, ensure that all students have structures and systems and practices that are responsive to their needs, provide student access to reach their highest potential of personal and academic success. So the idea of a skills-only curriculum is not what we're talking about when we're talking about equity. And curriculum audits really help us uncover those inequities and inform the development of policies and practices so that we can address them. So to help us with this work, we hired on Dr. Goldie Mohammed and her colleagues from Hill Pedagogies. She is the author of Cultivating Genius. Some of you may know that book. She's also a researcher and a curriculum expert. And in Dr. Mohammed's research, she examined abolitionists and 19th-century education among communities of color. And she found that Black readers and writers and thinkers held five goals or pursuits for learning, and those five pursuits are listed up there on the slide. So beginning with identities. Identities is about teaching students to know their histories and identities while also learning the truth and knowledge about others who are different from them. The second one is around skills. Skills and proficiencies are often measured on quantitative assessments. So it's all of that data that we tend to look at as a system. They're central to the way we do school, and they typically define things like standards by subject area and grade level. The third pursuit is around intellect. And intellect is about the capacity for knowledge. So it's what we learn or understand about various topics and ideals, and it's knowledge unto action, and involves learning to think deeply. Now, as we get to number four, we start to see maybe a larger shift in our thinking about our curriculum, and that is in the area of criticality. Criticality is the ability to understand power and oppression, and calls for teachers and students to understand the ideologies and perspectives of marginalized communities and their ways of knowing and experiencing the world. And then finally, fifth, we get to joy. And I think we heard that a lot from our speakers this morning, this idea of how critical it is that students can find joy in the curriculum. So joy is about advancing students' happiness and triumphs by elevating beauty and truth in themselves and within other people's stories and histories. And I love the way Nicole Houghton-Chiles was quoting the name of the seminar she attended, which was "Know My Name, Know My Face, Know My Story." That's the kind of joy that we're talking about. So what is going on now for this audit is Dr. Mohammed and her team are looking at our English Language Arts documents. So that includes our unit guides, it includes the materials, it includes course outlines, and they're doing the same for history, social science. And they literally gathered up all those documents, and they're poring through them using these five lenses. Preliminary feedback, so what you see on the slide there is, number two, skills, is in the green, and that means that they found, and again, this is very preliminary, they are finding, as they're looking at our documents, that we do a great job of outlining the skills that we want our students to learn, so the things we want them to know and understand based on those content standards. Now, when we get to the yellow areas, one and three, identities and intellect, those are areas that need a little more development. And I should mention that in the presentations earlier today, you did hear mention of some of the work that's already been done around unit guides in our department. So we've already intentionally infused in our unit guides texts that lift up student voices and stories from diverse cultures, so beyond just the holidays, that has been intentionally built in. But according to the feedback that we've been given, we haven't done enough yet. And we know that, and it's something we want to work on. And then finally, in the red there, you see criticality and joy. So what we know right now is that it's, those things aren't very evident in our curriculum and may require some deliberate revision. All right. So as you can imagine, all of this work requires a lot of new learning, especially on part of the OCIPD curriculum staff. So under the guidance of Pamela Seki, the staff has been reading, studying, attending webinars, workshops for a while now on this topic, and so they're a pretty knowledgeable group. What we're working on now is just adding to this collective and individual knowledge, and really trying to build our internal capacity so that we can continue the work beyond the consulting contract. So Dr. Mohammed and her team have been training OCIPD staff so that when they're finished with this audit, we'll be able to carry out the work, because there's curriculum that goes way beyond just English Language Arts and history, social science. Those are just our starting points for this year. I would like to mention very quickly, we had a wonderful opportunity. We were invited in by our colleagues at Long Beach City College. They have been undergoing a curriculum audit for quite some time now, so they're pretty far ahead of us in the process. And while we don't look exactly like them, there's a lot of learning that takes place when we partner up. So they invited a team, and the team is listed on the slide there for you, so Becky Afghani, Jennifer Crockett, Pam Lovett, Amy Pendray, and Nader Twal. They all attended a learning series in tandem with folks from Long Beach City College. They went through three weeks of Zoom training and then independent work together so that we could start to build our internal capacity of understanding how another organization is conducting an equity audit, because we figured more is better, we can learn more from lots of folks. So it was a really beneficial experience for us, and I just wanted to share one little thing that came out of it, because I think this illustrates the kind of, the kind of work that we really have to do. So, uh-oh, did I do it? Oh, it's got a, it's got a animation on it. All right, so the first thing is, they had an opportunity to take a syllabus, a core syllabus, from any course that they taught, and including whatever letter they give to students or give to parents introducing the course content. And that's pretty typical at secondary, right? If any of you have been parents of secondary students, I know I get those letters, and much to my children's horror, I write all kinds of notes back to the teacher on them. Many parents, though, don't do that, right? I'm one of those embarrassing moms. But what they did was, is they used a particular framework to analyze what they had written, and to take a look at what was in their letters. So they looked for things like excitement and welcoming language, they looked for things like student support, resources, statements about belief in students' ability to succeed, appreciation for racial and ability to succeed, appreciation for racial and cultural diversity, use of diverse content, focus on equity and justice. So they looked at their own courses through that lens. And one of our brave curriculum leaders allowed us to share her reflections. And this is actually her opening syllabus and letter that goes out to her family. And what you can see is it's been color-coded. So everywhere you see yellow is excitement and welcoming language. And there's not a lot of yellow there. Everywhere you see blue is student support, resources, and belief in the ability to succeed. Again, we don't see much blue. Appreciation for racial and cultural diversity, use of diverse content, focus on equity and justice, we see a little bit there. And then this idea of, or, excuse me, we don't see that. And then "rule, policy-driven, disciplinary, or intimidating language" is in red. And if you've read any of these letters lately yourself as a parent, you know what I'm talking about. They're filled with rules. And so the question becomes, how do we communicate our values, our interests, and our attitudes when we're talking about the curriculum to the people that we serve? How are we engaging students and families with our communication around our curriculum? So this was a great learning experience for us and something that we hope to share with the teachers in our own district. All right. So moving right along, to support the larger curriculum audit, we've also established a curriculum advisory committee. They started to meet in January. And that committee is made up of principals, elementary teachers, secondary teachers, and a teacher librarian. And the role of this committee is to do a few things. First, they're going to be looking at some student data. We will be surveying students. Actually, the piloting of those surveys has started right now this week. And they will be analyzing our student survey data so they will have an idea of what our students are telling us about our curriculum. They're also helping us with our focus groups. They're going out and listening to stakeholder groups. And then finally, they're going to be making actual recommendations for changes. I threw in this slide just because I wanted you to see them. This is a snapshot of them yesterday. This is our third meeting. They are, I just want to say, they're volunteers. They're not doing this for any pay. They are a working group going out and talking to different folks. And I should mention that Michael Navia and Nicole Houghton-Chiles, who you heard from earlier, are both members of that committee. All right. So with that said, this group of volunteers is going out, and one of the things they're doing is focus groups. What you see on the screen in front of you are our parent and student groups that we are doing our outreach with. So there's a whole list of them, and the ones with the green checks, we just finished. So we started the process last week, I believe, and are about halfway through. We should be finished up by the end of April. It sort of depended upon when groups had their meeting dates so that we could fit ourselves in. But this has been a wonderful process for the committee. These are a couple sample questions that we ask. So we ask our parents or students to tell us about some of the ways that you've learned about people who are like you and people who are different from you. And we also asked them why it's important to learn about people who are like them and different from them. And we asked them, what would a classroom look like if all cultures were valued? And then we also asked that question that you see on the slide there. If you could ask the district or your school to make one change next year, what would that be? And we, now, these slides are very preliminary. So this is just us doing some quick analysis, really, as of yesterday. So some emerging themes around the question of ways you or your child learned about people who are like them or different from them. We heard things like, for example, from the Harlem Renaissance, learning about that, going beyond slavery is something we heard. We heard about learning about struggles of others and ways that they can relate. They talked about heroes who looked like them. And they mentioned frequently, history in foreign languages, history in foreign language classes seem to be the place where we provide most of this kind of study. And then we also did hear from some folks that we really don't do this in school except for holidays. So we heard that, and we heard that loud and clear. And then, if the district could make one change, what would that be? We heard things like teaching respect for other cultures, building cultural identity beyond holidays and food, expanding the scope of culture and historical figures that we prioritize, using books, music, and art that reflect the students you teach, providing perspectives that are not just the white point of view, adapting or challenging assignments that do not affirm multiple identity groups, and including parents and community members as resources. So resources for the curriculum specifically. And we know that our students' and parents' voices really help us understand their experience with our curriculum, and we look forward to hearing more from them to help shape our work. So the next steps in our curriculum audit, we are moving into what we call Phase Two. So as I mentioned, we're conducting those surveys. We're putting a pause on the elementary surveys because of the return to in-person instruction and all that's happening at schools. It's probably a good thing because our preliminary feedback on the sixth-grade survey is that some of this stuff is hard to, it's hard for students to understand the knowledge. Sorry, I'm making, I'm getting feedback. It's hard for some of our students, let's try standing over here, to understand some of the language. So we need to unpack it a little bit. So we're going to learn a little bit before we launch back into elementary. We are going to continue our parent and student outreach through those focus groups that I mentioned. And then the OCIPD staff will complete our training with Dr. Mohammed. So she's providing us with eight hours of training to help us better understand and do the work ourselves. And then we'll move into Phase Three in April. We will complete the audit process with Dr. Mohammed and her colleagues and start planning for next year, including ways to extend to additional content areas. So I have been talking about establishing the set of recommendations for curriculum changes based on a district curriculum audit. And so what I'm going to do now is I'm going to pass the torch to Dr. Pam Lovett, who's going to talk a little bit about creating and deploying a professional development plan that incorporates training for principals and teachers. So I'm going to call you up. Let me just do a quick wipe.
All right. Good afternoon, everyone. So I will be having you participate with me a little bit, if that's okay? I know it's the end of the day. I thought it would be nice for you to experience some of the things that we're going to have the teachers and administrators experiencing in the training. And then I'm also going to be giving you just some general summaries of some of the information that we'll be providing in the professional learning. I wanted to share this and give a big thank you again to that collaboration with Long Beach City College with their curriculum audit because they shared with us these community agreements that they were using, and we very much like them. And we've been hearing a lot about, from our teachers, you know, our kids are wanting to talk about race and maybe perhaps them not being comfortable, and so how do we do this? And also, not just with students, but how do we do this with each other? So this is the framework that we're going to be starting with. So I'm just going to go over them quickly, and we're going to use them this afternoon. So they're community agreements, not just norms. So we want to make sure, and we make clear when we conduct our professional learning, that everyone knows this is a space for learning. We're a community of learners. We are learning together to figure this out. So number one, we need to make this a brave space. So we need to be able to share our perspectives, share our questions, hear from each other because we all have different backgrounds and experiences so we can learn and grow. We had the Zoom there because sometimes it's hard to read folks on Zoom, right? So we want to make sure that just as if we're face-to-face, we're going to type and behave in Zoom as if we're having face-to-face conversations with folks. We are going to use "I" statements rather than "you" statements because we want to make sure that when we hear something, we're sharing our interpretation of what was heard so we can ask questions and explain. So that way, it's a sharing of our thoughts, not a pointing towards what you did. Again, to help in making that a brave space and people share. This goes with the next one, and the rest are kind of looped together. Know when to step up or step back. So we're all going to be sharing our points of view. Some of us are very intellectually courageous, and we have no problem sharing a lot. So we want to make sure that we hear from everyone. So not only do we need to be intellectually courageous, we need to be intellectually humble. So we want to make sure we give space for everyone to share. And this is important. When we hear something that we feel might be problematic, or it might be unfair, or there's an equity issue that you feel, or, I'm going to go in reverse, we're going to say ouch, and we're going to explain, again, using those "I" statements, why we think what was said might be a problem or how I'm interpreting it. We are also, because equity work is messy, we are going to mess up. We're all learning and growing. So if we realize that we misspoke, we could phrase things in a different way, perhaps we don't understand, and we're trying to figure things out, we say after, we say oops. And then we explain how, you know, we're trying to learn and grow and perhaps help, ask for help in better explaining. We want to call our colleagues in rather than call them out. So again, we want to use compassionate questions, questioning. So when we hear something that we believe is perhaps unfair or an issue of equity, we're going to go ahead and use compassionate questioning. I heard you say, this makes me feel or think, could you explain a little bit more about what you meant? All right? And then, this was important, and this has been important because we've been using this since that audit, because people will be sharing personal experiences that sometimes things are emotional. We want to make sure that what is said in the space stays in the space, right? Especially if we're dealing with people's personal perspectives. But what's learned, the information that we learn, needs to be spread, right? Across the site, across the district. So those are our community agreements that we're going to be using when we're having discussions in our professional learning for equity. All right, we ready to go? All right, next slide. Ooh, look, hello. All right. So I just wanted to share with you this piece. This is by Faith Ringgold. This actually, Sunflower Quilting Beads in 1991. Not 96, it's my fault. But I want you to look at that piece, and we're just going to do a notice and wonder.
Quick point. The community agreement statement or page, I don't have in my materials.
You know what? We added that today. So we'll make sure that we get copies to you. We'll make sure copies are emailed to you. Thanks for asking that question and bringing that up. So I want us to take a look at this piece. Again, if we are working with our teachers and with our students, we want to make sure we analyze all four corners. We're going to, just like if we were at a museum, like look at each section, look in the center, look at it as a whole. And we're going to do a notice and wonder. So what do we notice? What do we see here? What do we see happening? And also, what are we wondering about? What questions do we have? And I am going to give you some think time because good thoughts take time.
My first question is, where are the fellas?
Where, okay. Where are the fellas? So what do you see?
A lot of historical, which I'm going to assume are African-American women, which is often a symbol of passing on historical knowledge through the African-American community. Or at least, I know that that's been a tool. So that's what I'm assuming that this image is supposed to be symbolic of. But still don't see any fellas.
You don't see the fellas?
Yeah.
Okay. So focused on women, African-American women, and passing down tradition. What tradition would you say they're passing down? What information do you see them passing?
I'm going to say times in this sunflower garden.
Yeah, spending time, spending time together. Okay? Anyone else want to elaborate on that? What do you see? And what do you wonder about? Could be either one.
Well, I just wanted to point out to Mr. Miller that there's one guy.
Okay. There's a fella.
The fella, yeah. I see, I see, yeah. His name might be Van Gogh.
Okay.
I do see one fella in there.
And President Krakhag, what is he doing? What is that fella doing?
He's gathering up flowers.
Okay. Any other ideas?
Or maybe presenting flowers in a vase.
Okay. Presenting flowers to these women. Do you, why do you think he would be doing that? Van Gogh, who is famous for his sunflowers paintings. What message do you think he's giving? I'm sorry, Mr. Otter, could you say that again?
He's saying, you have plenty of sunflowers, here's some other flowers.
Okay. Here are more flowers to add.
Different flowers.
Different flowers.
I don't know. I think it's kind of using, using beauty to change the world.
Okay. So they're working on something beautiful, and he's presenting more of that. Okay? Any other ideas?
For me, he's presenting his art, and they're displaying their art. So the work of quilts in history as an art form, honoring that they're both art.
So they're all artists, right? And traditionally, Van Gogh, who is considered one of the masters, we usually think of that as high art. But historically, we have not thought of the work that women have done as high art. So with that, what story do you think, and I want to say, Faith Ringgold is known for her story quilts. She likes telling stories with them. What message do you think that she is wanting you to understand about Mr. Miller, the time that went, these women are spending together and what they're creating in comparison to Van Gogh? Mr. Miller or anyone else?
Yeah, I think that, and once again, this is just my interpretation here, that going through this dialogue here, it's expressing the fact that there's two ways to express beauty, right? Where your style of art is fine and I appreciate it, but there's also a different genre of art that needs to be just as celebrated and appreciated. So that's just my personal interpretation.
Thank you. And that's leading us into the work ahead. So from what we've heard from our curriculum, our parent surveys, from the curriculum advisory, and what we've been hearing from our students, we've been hearing that we want to make sure that we're hearing more perspectives. We want certain communities elevated that have not been elevated before. And we want to learn about these different groups that we've historically marginalized, right? So we traditionally haven't learned about, a lot about these different women. And usually, when I show this piece, most people don't know who the women are. So Mr. Miller, they are famous African-American women.
Yeah, I see Rosa.
You see Rosa Parks.
MacLeod Bethune. I see a couple of folks.
You see a couple that you know? And so I just wanted to highlight a message that's come across has been that they want to learn more about these people, not just at an introductory level, and also expand the scope of who we're introducing. So really, this is the work that lies ahead, us learning about and uncovering these different histories, different strengths that come from various communities. And as you said, thinking about making sure that we're presenting different points of view and ideas in our community, right, and nationally. So this quote, for me, really encapsulates the work ahead. Can I have someone read this for me?
We have a powerful potential in our youth, and we must have the courage to change old ideas and practices so that we may direct their power toward good ends.
And so, again, one of the women in that story quilt, famous educator, Mary MacLeod Bethune, who we could learn a lot from, is letting us know, we have, our students have power, and they have great potential. We're not here to give them power. It's already there. We need to get to know them, and our job is to tap into it, right? And use that to enhance what they're learning in schools. So with the professional learning that we've worked to design, what we've done is really dug into the work that the district's done for the last several years. And we started with looking at, this year, really, systems of advantage and disadvantage, looking at an institutional level, and also looking at, as an institution, how that impacts us individually, right? And how we can internalize oppression and how that might manifest, how that might manifest in how we decide to teach, how that might manifest in the materials that we select, that we consider appropriate. So, really looking at, from a, a systems perspective, and then digging in to, um, looking at the individual, looking at teachers and in the classroom, and again, how we're teaching, what we're teaching, and how might our biases impact what we select and offer to kids. And that's so important, because if we don't dig into, um, this understanding that all of our ki- kids can be successful, and make sure that's clear, and give, um, folks tools to understand that better, um, it'll be challenging for us to really utilize our teaching learning framework and Understanding Six. So Understanding Six is the only, um, understanding in our framework that has a foundational belief. So we wrote this some years ago, and I'm, I'm pleased that we were very much on target, because we, um, discussed that all of our students come with culturally linguistic assets. It's our job to create a warm and demanding learning environment, and have high expectations for all of our students. And what's key in us, in our ability to do this is confronting our own bias and our own assumptions. Many teachers have asked, um, about, um, could we talk more about what it means culturally linguistic assets? How does, how does that relate to me as a teacher, and what I'm offering to our students? So that's a major part of the learning that we're going to be engaging in this year. And what we've done was connect back to the work of scholars, and we started with Gloria Latson Billings. She is not the only scholar that we will be utilizing in our training, but her theory is foundational, because she did work with historically underserved students, and a lot of her work has been done with Black and Brown youth. And she studied teachers that were highly successful with these students, she said, and she said she found three things. So this is really what we're advocating for, learning about, and teaching in these ways. So number one, academic success. Academic success is not just about achievement. Academic success is building that culture and climate, uh, where students feel they can be highly successful. And they're choosing to be successful. Why? I see myself in what you're doing. I see that you care about me. You're using information that's important to me and engaging me in the learning. That's what academic success is about. So that helps me to choose to be successful because of the materials the teachers using, the way the teacher's teaching, right, not just directed, maybe some Socratic, maybe some inquiry, right, making it, um, relevant. Um, these teachers had high levels of cultural competence, and you saw it in the selections in their classroom. So the materials that they used reflected the students in the classroom. They felt it was highly important that, that kids see themselves. So when we do our training, we talk a lot about mirrors and windows, so kids can see themselves reflected, which makes them feel like they belong in class. I belong here in this class, and I know my teacher cares about me. But I'm also learning about other groups. So it's not just about me and my identity, it's, we're doing investigations of multiple identities, and all the different ways that kids identify. And then lastly, she said, these teachers who are successful with these youth, um, knew it was important to teach for critical consciousness. So teaching for liberation and justice. So, these children have come from a history where people have had to advocate for justice. So we're gonna practice that in class. I'm gonna take those skills that they're learning. They're gonna learn how to engage with each other and about each other, and when we see unfairness anywhere, we're going to address it with the skills that I'm learning in class, with the arguments that we're developing, with the letters that we're going to write, with the presentations that we're gonna put together and possibly come speak here. So these are the three areas that we're really, um, building our training around. We also want to make sure, in just thinking about the last year, that we're integrating social emotional learning, um, into the training. So, we actually, um, see really great alignment with Gloria Latson Billings' work with academic skills, cultural competence, and critical consciousness. When we look at really what, um, researchers in, focused on social emotion, social emotional learning say about what kids need, um, it's really around some of the same things. So if kids know, um, that they can make a change in the world, right, that allows them to see possible selves, that allows me to know that the work that I'm doing in class, um, is meaningful and I can make a difference, and that allows them to move forward. So as the teacher is utilizing materials that the kids care about, and the kids that are seeing themselves, we're developing their identity. As kids are seeing themselves, they know they belong, the teachers are giving them strategies and structures for engaging with each other and working together with each other on problem-based and project-based learning. Again, that's increasing that identity, um, affirming and their sense of belonging. And then that all comes together again for the students to see that, um, when I see something wrong, I can do something about it, about it, and I can make a difference. So it supports their agency. So the pillars of culturally relevant pedagogy, and we call them the expressions of, uh, social emotional learning, really work together well, and are gonna support our students in class. And it will look like this. So in the lessons that teachers have been working on and developing, we didn't want teachers to think that, okay, culturally relevant pedagogy and social emotional learning, those are two separate things and they're not aligned. So we're trying to really make sure that even at the lesson level, uh, we worked with our colleagues in OSSs, and really looked at how this looks in a lesson. So the recommendation is, um, again, we start the learning where we're connecting in with kids and checking in on their heart. How are you doing? Using materials that the kids are interested in to engage them. Making sure that the teacher's not just talking at, but the kids are allowed to engage and make meaning with each other. And again, the teacher giving structures and processes for that. And then lastly, um, as the lesson closes, we're gonna be connecting out to applications to the real world. So how do these skills relate, um, or what you learned today relate to, um, your own experiences? How could they help you with, uh, solving a problem? How can they help you, um, or your family or your friends in your neighborhood? So again, really merging the work. So what's nice about this, again, as I said, our administrators have been doing this work for several years now. And so we surveyed them because we know this cannot be, this work cannot be a one and done. Right, it has to keep going. So we surveyed our administrators and asked them, um, you know, my, if their teachers are ready to engage in this work. So this was their response. So, a high percentage of our principals are ready, feel their teachers are ready to go with this work. Uh, we have a few that need additional supports, and we're ready to do that. We also asked them, once the teachers are trained, how will you feel about supporting, uh, your teachers at the site and continuing this work? And again, you'll see the high rates of strongly, strongly agree and agree, um, that they'll be able to do this. And again, small numbers of administrators who have already asked for that additional support, which we're ready to go. So this is a description of the Equity Professional Learning Series for this year. And again, this is an introduction. Our goal is to make sure we are clear and everyone understands asset-based pedagogies. So for a long time, um, I think we've looked at what we need to do to, or we focus on the child instead of ourselves. So with asset-based pedagogies, the first thing you, you do is really reflect on your own practice. Think about what the kids bring. All of our kids have assets. We're looking at different approaches, um, looking at, I'll just say, the wealth that students bring from underserved communities, right? There's different ways to have wealth and joy and value, like in that painting that we saw earlier. Um, and so, you'll see a series of modules for modules that we'll be implementing this spring with our administrators. Um, and then later this year in the summer, we will have a five-day teacher institute, where we're going to implement these modules with all of our teachers. This work, planning the professional learning, started, um, at the very beginning of the school year. And I just wanted to share with you the cycles of feedback that we've received. So we started the training, um, actually in October, and what's been nice for us, OCIPD has worked to plan this together. Um, we've trained all of OCIPD with this, starting in October. They've given us feedback on the modules. We were able to go to executive staff and present this to, um, our superintendents and directors. They've been able to give us feedback. And then our first module will be next Friday with our principals. They will be experiencing the modules this spring, and again, with that cycle of feedback, same cycle of feedback. Um, and then again, those modules presented in the summer to all of our teachers. With the continued work being done at the site, so, um, what you saw in that last slide was one year in a multi-year plan of professional learning around equity and excellence. So part of it is going to be around making us very, all of us comfortable, um, with discussing equity, learning language around equity and social justice, and being able to discuss that, look at data, but also look at teaching practices, because asset-based pedagogies is also about, am I providing those rigorous higher-order pedagogies to all students across the district? So that'll be another major piece of the training that we're going to be providing. All right? I think I finished on time. So are there any questions?
Um, I have a quick question about our principals that did not agree with this, um, approach, and what kind of supports do we have in place for those principals? It's only a few of them.
So I'll say the, the first thing that I think we've heard has been, how do I just even start the conversation? How, um, what structure should we put in place, like the norms that we have? Um, and I think, um, with the continued support, and I think what will happen, and Kristy can share, but I think what will, will happen, since there are so few, we can provide targeted to support to those sites, so it might not just be the principal. It might also be the principal and additional supports, um, from the level office staff or from OCIPD in implementing, um, the training at those schools, and helping facilitate dis- uh, discussions.
I would just add to that, that each, uh, each one of our principals has a supervisor who works in a coaching capacity, knows them, knows their site well, and can provide them with a lot of the support. Just know that when we ask those questions, we ask those questions after we told them about the training that was coming, and, uh, gave them a preview. And with the pandemic and everything else, sometimes when things come at you, your initial response is, I can't do this. Um, and, and I think for many of them, they're just at that moment saying, I can't do this yet. But we're going, we're going to get them there, we'll bring them there with support. And then when they hear the stories of their colleagues, like you heard this morning, those kinds of stories inspire them, um, to be courageous. But I, I'm really glad that they're honest with us, and they tell us when they feel uncomfortable so that we can start to figure out ways to support them.
And also, that survey is like a pre-test to the modules, so they haven't gone through the modules yet. And I'm, I'm sure you're going to ask again how they're, um, how they rate that question after they've gone through the training modules.
Yes, thank you both. Um, it's such exciting work. Um, and that we're having this, what I consider a bold conversation, is probably not a conversation happening in large districts all over, that this, this is the work that the community has asked us to do in ways that we have found out over a lot of years. And I think it's interesting, um, I could go on and on about the stuff that Dr. Kail talked about with Dr. Muhammad and how exciting that is. But I'm really reflective on the day, as we have to close out today, that this can look overwhelming for staff, for teachers, for parents, for folks in the community who are listening to what this looks like. And I always go, I go back to the way the day was presented, and I am always grateful for Dr. Baker's care of how she coordinates a day in the information we hear, but I, I think what I heard from Mr. Moskowitz and, uh, Ms. Childs from Dooley, is that they are doing this work in a way that is absolutely appropriate for elementary school learners, about seeing themselves in literature and storytelling and being given space. And that Ms. Travers at Stevens is doing it in a really appropriate way for really honest middle schoolers. And talking about the bumps with the grown-ups in doing the work. And that Renaissance is a place that welcomes community and folks find themselves. So it's about, the, the questions we've been asking is, is this happening all over? And this is kind of the answer, in the beginning of the answer to that question, or these are the steps we're taking to ensure that those good examples that we heard today are ways that can be replicated, um, with different communities across eighty-six school sites that are very different in their school community. And what happens at one school is different than what happens at another, and you're providing the tools for our administrators and our teachers to be able to do this work at the space where their community can enter into the work, because we all enter into it differently. So I want to thank you for the work. Timing-wise, I just had a question for Brent, and I asked him earlier. I have a feeling with tomorrow's agenda, we're gonna dovetail back and forth into some of this work that we've talked about today, in terms of how it fits into the budget and how it fits into engagement. And wanting to make sure, from the perspective of being open with the public, that if we, as we adjourn today, is this an item that technically that we should lay over until tomorrow? So that we can reference the work as an agendized item? Just kind of doing that, that work about making sure we're transparent, so that we're not having conversations about something we closed off today, um, if we wanted to reengage in some of this conversation in regards to budget tomorrow.
Yeah, since this topic was listed on the agenda, this is a two-day workshop. I think it's fair that the board can decide to go ahead and carry over, uh, portions of this discussion into tomorrow, because it was already listed on the agenda.
Okay, so I just ask Madam Chair if we can carry this item over until tomorrow so we can continue to have a discussion as we run out of time today.
Right. The, the agenda items that we have today, I mean tomorrow are, continue to be numbered. This is one meeting, I presume. Is that fair?
Yes, that's correct.
So I, so I'm saving my comments if there's more, because there's a, a million things for me to say and to question, but I also realize that it's
Well, you know what, take, take a few minutes. It can take a few minutes, really. I think stuff is here. We don't want to close down the opportunity for you to share, so let's, let's say, let's take nine minutes and go to three-ten.
Okay, I'll be quick. Um, Dr. Baker, just from a, so we're all on the same page perspective, if, if you could make available the book, um, Dr. Muhammad's book to everyone here, so that we can reference it and be familiar with the work, um, that she's doing, or that we're familiar with her background as she continues to do work. So if I understood correctly, Dr. Kail, she's doing almost a trainer of trainers model, where she's working with our staff now so that we can continue the work?
Something like that. What she's doing is she's, she and her team are actually conducting the audit around English Language Arts and History, and they will give us a, both a verbal report. They're, they're gonna meet with us for several, several hours to go through the, the audit results. Simultaneously, there, she's teaching our staff how we can look at the curriculum ourselves, knowing that we're not going to give them every bit of curriculum we have, but that it's important to build our own capacity to do this work over the course of the next couple of years. So it's, it's a train the trainers in the sense that she's teaching us how we can look at the curriculum the way that they're looking at the curriculum. But we probably won't ever have quite that level of skill, but I, but I think we're, we're already learning a lot, and we're, we're gonna be able to do a lot.
And I think that's important, though, Kristy, to not just pass by that, um, what you're talking about, because building internal capacity means that we change the way we think about things, not just that we audit curriculum. And so, yes, it will impact a curriculum audit, and it has the potential to change the thinking about many other things in terms of excellence and equity in the district.
Awesome.
And just to build on that, Dr. Baker, I think, um, I want to be honest here. One of the things that, that struck me from Dr. Baker's opening this morning is, and you just added it again, Dr. Baker. And I'm familiar with Dr. Muhammad's work, so let me start with that. I think that work is anchored, not, not wholly, but a big part of it in an acknowledgement that the whole point, the whole purpose, the whole intent behind a curriculum audit is, uh, a recognition that our curriculum didn't just get created in a vacuum to begin with. And I think as we build capacity in our own district, And I think as we build capacity in our own district, we can modify, adopt, develop new curriculum. But the most important piece is something that I didn't hear today. And I know that Dr. Muhammad's work is anchored in this. And it's an acknowledgement that our institutions, our public education institutions, have a long historical legacy that continues today around institutional racism, white supremacy, and that our curriculum reflects that. And I think oftentimes, and I hear this in higher education a lot, and I'm, you know, I'm going to caveat this by saying, I'm politically, academically, and culturally biased because of my background in ethnic studies. And I believe that we should all be required to teach ethnic studies. But I'm saying that because what we hear a lot in higher education is, we passed the buck. And by the time students get to us in higher ed, students say, why is this the first time that I'm learning this or that I'm hearing about this? And then in higher ed, we blame our K-12 education. Right, we say, you have to unlearn what you've been taught. And it takes accountability away from higher ed, that we're the ones that are training all the professionals, teachers, counselors, school psychologists, that then implement this curriculum. So I think it is important to acknowledge, particularly for our students of color, but as important, the research shows, for our white students and our socio-economically-advantaged students, that when we talk about agency, I'm not, I didn't just say, and I know no one here is saying it, that it's agency for students of color. It's agency for our socio-economically-advantaged and white students as well to dismantle the structures that are manifesting and perpetuating our racist, white supremacist education as reflected through curriculum. And that part of that agency comes from a reckoning around race and racism, and that school districts in general, but as a part of that, our school district, didn't just wake up one morning and say, we're going to revamp our curriculum out of the goodness of our hearts for all the good intention that's here. It's also coming from, folks had to risk their lives. They had to march. They had to boycott. They had to demonstrate. And that's what I took from the quilt, that if we're going to be intentional about it, we have to recognize that it was a white paternalistic, with all the things that go into it, that led to us having to intentionally showcase Black women are also creators and contributors, right? I think that's the piece. I'm speaking now to our equity leadership team. I'm speaking in broader terms here, that I think a reckoning comes with an acknowledgement that we didn't just all of a sudden decide it's important to revamp and audit our curriculum. And so I would hope that that would be lifted up as well, right? Because it is important for students, for staff, to reconcile that, yes, now we are going to have a richer, more diverse curriculum, but that doesn't take away with why we didn't have that in the first place. All right, that it wasn't coincidence. It didn't happen in a vacuum. So that's the part that I'd like to carry over for tomorrow as well, that it comes with an anchoring and a reconciliation that comes with that. And Dr. Muhammad's work clearly reflects that. So I'm glad that we're going through this curriculum audit.
Dr. Benitez, if I can just highlight, what you're raising is the work of the equity leadership team right now. And as we work to develop an equity policy, I strongly believe that that is going to be the umbrella vision around exactly what you're describing with the different prongs being the varying equity and excellence initiatives that you're hearing one of and have heard others of. So your point is well taken, and I can tell you that we're actively working towards a statement just like that.
I did have a comment, but Juan stole the words right out of my mouth here in regards to doing our equity audit here. I guess I was really intrigued with the, I mean, really simple exercise of auditing something as simple as a syllabus or a letter that goes home and breaking down each sentence. I thought that was fantastic. And so, obviously, along those same lines, I think that it would be advantageous for us to use simple exercises like this moving forward when it comes to the principles that we are claiming to represent and how we exude that information to the community. But obviously, Juan said it a lot more articulate than I did.
Well, thank you, you know, for all of the presentations today. Dr. Baker, did you have something else?
No, I was just going to encourage, kind of in the spirit of what Mrs. Kerr kicked off and thinking about tomorrow morning, as you have time to process all that you've heard today, we've been on a journey today. So when I stood up at eight o'clock this morning and kicked off around excellence and equity, when I think about where we've been, looking at student data, the stories from educators right out of schools, our youngest learners and the data that is coming out of Head Start, reopening schools, and then landing in this space, what a really rich journey we've been on in one day. And as we started the day, I also talked about that tension between managing and leading through this pandemic, being mindful of the children who we serve right now that are struggling, many of whom are struggling, but also pulling back and thinking about the aspiration of that equity definition that we've laid out that's going to also be a part of our equity policy in the future. And so I just want to express thanks to the team that's in the room now and those who came to share with all of you the authenticity, I'll say, the vulnerability, things that we're talking about. And I think, Megan, you said it, oftentimes, we don't talk about these things. And when you get into the conversations with large urban districts, you don't go there because it's scary and it, there's oops and there's owls and there's, you know, we have to be willing to go there. And so, on behalf of staff, I just want to say, thank you for going there with us. Thank you for leading as a board in a way that represents this work so that we can do this really hard and meaningful work. And so I appreciate the journey, and I hope maybe tomorrow morning we'll start with just bring a reflection forward that you're thinking about as a result of today and your own learning and thinking. Because your thinking helps us to be thinking too.
Thank you. I think it was Dr. King who said, it's always the right time to do the right thing. And so maybe in the words of one of our students, hey, these are problems that have been around for a long time. Why are we, you know, doing something about it now? Talking about it now? Well, it's the right time. So, Dr. Benitez, I appreciate your honesty. I appreciate you bringing us back to not just what's said, but what's not said. Our reasons why are sometimes as important as the work that's being done, as the reasons why we do it. So if there's nothing further, we will adjourn for the day and reconvene tomorrow morning at 8:30?
Yes, 8:30.
So, good afternoon, everybody, and we will see you in the morning.